Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Budget Work Session. We are calling the meeting to order 9:04 a.m. And Madam Clark, what is your suggestion? Should we recess now or wait a little bit? About thirty minutes?
Maybe thirty minutes or so.
Okay, right. Well, welcome, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. And will you please call the roll?
Mayor Williams?
I'm here.
Mayor Proton Middleton is in route. Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Caballero?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Present.
And Councilmember Rist?
Thank you so much. So at this time, I know we have breakfast. It's still being set up. We'll be ready in about thirty minutes. So we'll recess at that time. But Mr. Manager, I will now turn it over to you to get us started.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers and staff and guests, we are excited to have you here this morning to begin two days of what I know will be productive conversations about your proposed budget in advance of budget adoption in June. I don't have a formal presentation for you this morning. Just wanted to set up these two days a little bit for you. This budget, as of last Monday night, became your budget. It is obviously something we work on throughout the year and hope to deliver something that is responsive to the directives that council has given us, to the conversations you've had, to the feedback we've gotten from staff about how to lean into the objectives you've given us. And that all culminates in presenting a budget to you from the manager and the administration that you have now seen and that has been introduced to the public. As of that time, this budget really becomes yours and our job shifts. Our job now, as a staff and administration, is to help you understand what's in that proposed budget, to answer questions for you that you may have, to provide context around any issues or concerns that you have, and then to respond to direction from you as to whether or not you want to modify, change, add, delete. And that's really what these two days are about. So we have tried very intentionally as a staff to shape the agenda for these two days around what we've already heard from you. You all received individual briefings on the budget and you have now heard from the public, I'm sure, an initial round of reaction to the proposal. So we want these two days to reflect conversations that we think you want to dig into a little bit. So we've prepared presentations to that effect. We have deviated a little from the traditional format you may have seen in prior years as far as departmental presentations. I've really asked the budget staff to work with departments to try and focus the presentations very intentionally on the key issues in those departments. Heard from some of you that in prior years, you've felt a little bit of angst about wanting to make sure you had enough time to dig in on the issues that really mattered to you. So we really want these two days to reflect that. Toward that end, I have a challenge for the council or a request. And that is, I really urge you to use these two days as efficiently as possible to get the information you need to give us the direction that we need to make sure that we can prepare as best as possible to have the budget prepared and ready for your adoption in a way that mirrors your desires and objectives. So when we present today, please feel free to ask questions as we go. And maybe more importantly, as we close out a presentation, if there is some discussion you want to have with your colleagues or with staff about something in that presentation, my urging is for you to go ahead and have that conversation then and not to think about... We certainly will reserve time at the end of the day to come back and cover any materials you want. But feel free to sort of dig in and have the conversations that you want to have to give us the feedback on any particular proposal that you have seen. I'm sure, despite our best efforts, that we're not presenting something today that you may have more questions about. So that is also something I'd love for you to keep notes on as we go. If there is some element of the proposed budget that we did not feature in a presentation on your agendas for the next two days, please share that with me or Christina. We will make sure that we... If we hear it today, we might be able to add some more information to tomorrow's discussion. Otherwise, we can plan to make sure you either get additional information in writing or we can use the tentative third work session period for that. So don't be shy about telling us you'd like to see something that's not on the agenda and we will make sure to get that information for you. So with that, I think if you look through the two days, we have a list of agenda items, but we did not put times beside those agenda items because I really think we can move as quickly or as slowly as is needed by the council to get the information you want. So we tried to group the presentations to be somewhat balanced between the two days, but we did not try and hold to specific timeframes. We hope that that allows you to make the flexible decisions you need about how to spend your time to have the discussions about these topics that you want to have. I believe that's everything I needed to introduce. Does anyone have any questions about the next few days that either Christina or I can answer for you? I'm happy to hear what questions you have or requests you have about these two days other than making sure the coffee gets brewed as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I don't know how many times he's gonna say "your budget." He's really tossing the ball now.
Amen.
Councilmember Rist?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. City Manager. Just actually, one point of clarification. So on our calendar, we've got a hold from 9:00 to 4:30. Are you suggesting today's meeting is only going... We're only scheduled to get a one?
Christina, why don't you talk about the difference between the hold and the schedule?
Yeah, well, I think initially, when this was put on your calendars, we were in a transition to a new city manager. And so we had saved the whole day. I think we have prepared enough presentations to go till one, but obviously, we're also prepared to go beyond that if the council wants more time and discussion.
So if I look at today's agenda, so we got essentially seven big items. So it's like half an hour roughly per agenda item. If we divide it equally.
You were just to divide it equally and you were just to go at that pace, yes.
Seems like we'll probably need more time than that.
Yeah, so I do... What I have shared with staff is while the presentation portion of this probably would be complete by one, that I've asked staff to make sure they're available beyond one o'clock for conversation. So we can go as long as council would like to discuss today. That is our plan. But given the flexible nature of how much or how little time council may want, it's gonna be into the afternoon, but then adjourning at your pleasure.
For each of the agenda items, do you expect sort of presentation and then questions later or questions after each one of those?
I would prefer, at the mayor's discretion, that we go ahead and have topic-relevant conversations after each presentation. And if the council can reach some consensus or at least a majority opinion on budget direction that may come from that, we would welcome that direction as quickly as possible. We've got roomful of ears. Everybody's listening to make sure we can capture any direction that you receive.
That makes sense. I also will just note, on the two days of hearings, there's not a single... Housing is not on the agenda either of two days. I think that's a missing item. The other thing I think is clearly missing is some conversation about economic development, which we didn't have last year. We don't have this year. So those are two, to me, that look like clearly are not or big items that would be worth a conversation.
Thank you.
Last one more. I just want to make sure that I let my colleagues know I have a hard stop at 12:00 today, but I'll be fully available tomorrow.
Thank you for letting us know. All right, there are no more questions. Director Riordan, as we're going, we are going to probably recess in about fifteen minutes to grab breakfast and then we'll come back and keep going. So just as you're factoring in.
Thank you. Well, welcome, Mayor Williams, members of council. Christina Riordan, Budget and Management Services Director. And I am here today to welcome you to the first budget work session. I get the honor of starting with the first presentation, which is always our revenues presentation. So I will get started on that presentation and then we will kind of recess as we need to. So to start out... So I want to start out talking about the FY '26 budget. And I think that there were probably three factors, big factors that affected this budget and that you will see them in kind of our agenda throughout the days. But there is definitely, as we have all talked about, revaluation. We've also had a citywide reorganization. And then there's also been some changes in our revenue sources that I want to talk about as we go through this presentation today. So starting out with revow, this chart that you see here is showing you assessed value, our property tax growth, our property tax base growth over the last ten years. And I think what is kind of remarkable about this chart is what you'll see is that we have had steady growth for the last ten years. You will notice that in FY '20, that was the last time we had a revow. And then, as you can see in FY '26, there is a significant jump. And what that is showing in that chart, that blue line is our real property growth. And after our revow, our real property, the assessed value, has grown 71%. The overall growth in property tax is 62.39%. And so just kind of wanting to kind of give you a sense of the historic nature of this revow. That does not mean that our property tax is... Income is growing or revenue is growing by that amount. This is just the assessed value, which is how we set our property tax rate.
That's one question on that, Grace. Just that bottom, the cumulative growth? Let me describe that.
So the cumulative growth is taking the growth over the last ten years and kind of, you know...
It is cumulative.
It's a cumulative growth.
Every year.
It's not every year. So that is why you see such a large jump. But so if you were just to take from FY '25 to FY '26, it would be about 62%.
But also FY '25, so you're saying it's grown 77% in the last ten years?
Yes.
Last year? Got you, yeah. Okay, thanks.
So we've had very strong growth as far as property tax goes. And so I just wanted to remind you what our proposed tax rate. Obviously, you saw this at the manager's when he presented his budget. But this is the tax rate that we have proposed for FY '26. And just to give you a sense, we have our current rate is $0.5962. Our proposed rate is $0.4371. That is $15.91 below the current rate. Of course, we've talked a lot about and we spent a lot of time at our budget retreat talking about revenue neutral, which is the tax, what the tax rate would be if we were to try and calculate what we would get from the current amount that we're receiving right now. And that is calculated at $0.3823. So we are proposing to go above revenue neutral. And I'm gonna spend a little bit of time in this presentation talking about what those changes are. But right here, the rate is $0.548 above revenue neutral. We are dividing it among several funds, which is what we traditionally do with our tax rate. Our general fund receives the largest portion of the tax rate, followed by debt service, our solid waste, which we will be changing the name of to environmental services, our transit fund and our dedicated housing. So the funds that are receiving a rate above revenue neutral are our general fund at $0.244, our debt service at $0.251, and our solid waste at .53. And I'm gonna talk a little bit specifically about what those pennies above revenue neutral will be going for. And then also, as a reminder, our bid rate, which is our business improvement district. This is a district that was founded in 2013 to account for the city's activity in the downtown business improvement district. The assessed value in that area has grown by 54%. So this is a separate tax rate for folks in the bid. The current allocation is seven cents. The revenue neutral rate is $0.468. And we are proposing in our budget to go to keep the rate at its current allocation, which would be $0.2 above revenue neutral. And we do have DDI, Downtown Durham, Inc., coming tomorrow to talk about some of the proposals they have and the ways that they would use that extra allocation in the downtown business improvement district. So this, I wanted to just give you a comparison of... To kind of compare our tax rate from FY '25 to FY '26. So if you look at this chart, on the left, you'll see that our median home value in FY '25 was $239,000. Our median home value today, after revow, is $415,000. So what that means is, you know, we don't... When you're assessed, that your property value essentially stays the same. So that's, you know, those FY '25 would have been based off the FY '20 revow. And then with the new revow, we've grown that property median home value has grown 73%. Our adopted tax rate currently in FY '25 is $0.5962. The proposed rate is $15.91 lower at $0.4371. And so the taxes paid based in FY '25 would be $1,423. And then if we calculated a median home value on our proposed tax rate, it would go to $1,814, which is a $386 increase. And then as another reminder, the value of the penny. So the value of our penny will be increasing from $4.3 to $6.9. This chart is really here just to give you a sense of where we fall with some of our peers. I do want to caution about this chart. It really is... It does not include any fees, which can also impact some of the way that our tax bill or the... In other words, property tax is sometimes not the only thing that a taxpayer will pay. Some organizations have fees for solid waste. This does not include that. This is just a snapshot of the FY '26 proposed rate. And then also, some cities are going through revow, some are not. And so that should also be taken into consideration. Yeah, yeah. So there are some caveats with looking at this, but I just did want to give you a sense of where you are.
That's just not accurate for Raleigh based on information that was already provided to us because of the Wake County... Yeah, so I just wanted to flag that. The median home value is not $391,000 in Raleigh anymore. Sorry.
And we can, we will take a look at that and make corrections if we need to, so.
Probably be helpful to just put a date as...
Okay.
So that you're noting. Because if this is from December versus June...
Yeah, there are... And the dates, the source is kind of captured on that as well, too, so that you can see where we had gotten the information. Moving on to our property tax rate. So I did talk about how we split our tax rate across several funds. And I just wanted to give you a sense of, for the levy that we have for next year, where that tax rate is going. And so the biggest portion of our tax rate goes to our general fund. About 58% of the property tax that we collect is distributed in our general fund. So I'm gonna talk and spend a lot of time talking about that fund. And then the next would be our debt service fund. We will be talking a little bit about what the rate above revenue neutral for that fund is. And then we also have a presentation on our CIP. So our debt service fund is where a lot of our CIP projects. It is also the place where our revenue bond, the bond that was passed in November by residents will be paid out of. And then we also have our environmental services fund is the third fund, our transit fund and our housing fund. So moving on to the general fund. This is just giving you a snapshot of the different revenue sources in the general fund. One of the things that you'll notice is that property tax is the largest portion of revenue in the general fund. It's about 54% with sales tax being the second largest revenue source at 33%. And so then all other revenue sources only make up about 21% of the general fund revenues. This chart is really showing you a snapshot of the different revenue sources over the last four years, budget to budget, in the general fund. And so one of the things I wanted to point out, that last column shows you the change between FY '25 and '26 budget. And what you'll notice is that property tax has been very strong. It's increasing about 15%. Sales tax is, which I'm gonna spend some time talking about because it's our second biggest revenue source, is slightly under budget from where we are currently. And then the two revenue sources that are... We're seeing a decrease in next year is other local taxes, which is really our occupancy tax. It sits, it makes up a large portion of that other local taxes, which is something we knew about. A change in legislation is moving that tax to Durham next. And then other revenues really contains our appropriation to fund balance. So that varies a lot of times based on how much we are appropriating, how much fund balance we're appropriating in our budget. And so we will not be appropriating as much next year. So that's the change there. And then charges for services is also... There's a strong increase in there. And some of that has to do with some development fees that we will be talking about tomorrow. Some changes in those fees that will be used to bring on some more staff for that service. So these are the four largest revenue sources in the general fund. So I just wanted to kind of show you where we are as of Q3. I know you all received a Q3 report last week from our finance department. But this shows you where our adopted budget is, where we think we're going to end the year, and then where we are proposing for next year. So obviously, the largest increase is in property tax, which is part of what we're gonna be talking about today and over the next few days. Sales tax is essentially flat. There's a small decrease, about a little bit less than 1%. And that is because we are anticipating coming in under our FY '25 budget. And so we've talked a little bit about this. I'll spend a little bit more time talking about it. But we are proposing our budget for next year to be relatively flat to where we are this year. And then occupancy tax, we spent some time talking about. And then Powell bill, which we are proposing to keep it the same as where we ended the year or where we expect to end the year this year. And that pays for our street maintenance. And this chart is just another example of kind of how our general fund property tax... This is the actual property tax that we receive in the general fund. This is showing you both the budget to actual and then our end-of-year projection. We are projecting that property tax is gonna come in at budget. And then obviously, we have a significant increase in the budget for next year. Moving on, I'm gonna talk a little bit now about sales tax. So because sales tax is kind of the second biggest revenue source in the general fund, I did want to spend some time talking about it. As of FY '25, our gross collections are down about 1.3% year-to-date. And so our end-of-year, we are projecting to be $2.7 million lower than our budget. And so for FY '26, as I just said, we have a $104.2 million proposed budget. That is a decrease over where we are with our adopted budget. But I do want to point out that is 2% higher than where we think we're gonna end the year. So although sales tax is not doing as well as it has been doing over the last several years, it is... I mean, we are just expecting less growth than we were seeing in years past. So that's... There is some growth in there, in that projection. I do want to remind you, too, that we have an ILA with Durham County and that that is gonna remain flat from what the distribution was in FY '25. So our next chart shows you visually kind of what's been going on with sales tax over the last few years. And I think it's important to point out, this purple line shows the growth year-to-year in sales tax. The blue is the budget and the red is collections. So what you can see happened, you know, in FY '20 into FY '21, you can see that we lowered our sales tax budget. And that was because we were entering COVID during the pandemic. We didn't know if we were gonna have sales tax. But I think what happened is we had kind of the opposite of what everyone thought, which was we got a whole lot more sales tax than we had budgeted. And so that continued for the next couple of years. We were seeing kind of record collections in sales tax compared to budget. We right-sized in FY '24 and so our budget was closer to what we actually collected, which was good. But what we're seeing in FY '25 is that we anticipate coming in under the budget. So we had kind of a 5% increase from FY '24 budget to FY '25 budget. We don't believe we're gonna make that budget. So we... Part of what's going on here is we have been having so much growth in sales tax. We've been kind of using that in our budget. It's been kind of a source of revenue for us. And I think that what I'm saying here is not that sales tax is bottoming out or that it's, you know, going away at all, but it's just going to be a more level source of funding. So this is... I showed you this chart at the budget retreat in February and I just wanted to bring it up again. This is our gross collection. So this is Durham County sales tax, city and county. It's really, not really what we actually budget, but more of what the... It kind of gives you a picture of what the trend is with sales tax. And so I just wanted to kind of show you this chart again. As you can see, we had some really phenomenal growth and now we're kind of leveling out with a slight decrease. About that FY '25 decrease is less than 1%, so. And then just to give you a sense of that we are... You know, that kind of what the picture is statewide. This is kind of a heat map of sales tax statewide. I can say during the very good years, this was mostly blue. As you can see now, there's a lot more red and yellow. So this is kind of a trend that we're seeing across the state. So other general revenue funds, as I talked about, these are much smaller portions of the general fund revenue. But I did want to kind of give you a sense of... This chart shows you the adopted budget, the year-to-date, our projection for the end of the year and then what we propose. The notable things are occupancy tax, which we've talked a lot about. Utility tax is one that is a decreasing revenue source. It has to do with a tax that's received on home phones and video franchise. So that is, those are two areas where we see a decreasing amount of tax coming from those services. Our Powell bill is strong. And then our charges for services, we're anticipating coming in slightly above budget and anticipating a strong year next year. I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about fund balance because in this year's budget, we are proposing to use about $5.3 million in fund balance. About $1 million of that will be for election costs. So we use fund balance every year for one-time expenditures. And what this chart is showing you is our percentage of unassigned fund balance. And as you are well aware, we have a fund balance policy that was passed by council, which means that we would like to maintain 16.7% of our undesignated fund balance. And so that red line is showing you that 16.7%. And what the blue line is showing you is how close we're getting to that line. And as you can see, as we reach FY '26, we're getting closer to that line. And part of the reason is because of the fund balance we're using. But part of it also is when our budget increases, even though, as you can see, our FY '25 and FY '26 fund balance look almost identical. So the same amount of fund balance is not the same percentage of 16.7. So I just kind of wanted to visually show the council that and it's something that we will be taking a look at as we move forward. And so trying to maintain that fund balance and making sure we have a healthy fund balance is something we'll be doing. Another point that I want to make about fund balance for FY '26 is that in the past, we have often used $4 million of fund balance for streets. And we will not be doing that this year because we are getting so close to that 16.7. So that amount for Mayor Proton, we are going to be... we will still be using the same amount or allocating the same amount to streets. We'll talk about that when we talk about the CIP. But that will be coming from our debt service fund rather than from our, as a transfer from our general fund.
The end of an era.
The end of an era, yes. Okay. Do you need to, do we need to break, Mayor? I'm just looking at you.
How, how close are you to finishing this presentation?
I have to go.
Yep.
This, you want to break? Yeah, I think this would be a good breaking point is what I'll say.
When we're talking about percentage, we're talking about the 16.7%. What is that of?
Of the undesignedated fund, of the budget.
Of the whole budget?
Of the budget, yes. So it has to maintain 16.7 of the whole budget. So when you grow the budget, the amount you have to maintain is higher too.
Of the whole general fund?
Just the general fund, yes, sorry, yes, I apologize. It's not the whole fund, yes. It's just that we've only been talking about general fund.
Okay.
General fund, fund balance.
So it's 16.7% of would be undesigned of the general fund.
And that is, that is the way the, the policy applies to the general fund, fund balance. And other funds would have different fund balance.
Right, and so when we're talking about the amounts are the same, it's just that the fund is growing, so the percentage is.
Right, it's the percentage drops too.
And you said we'd like to keep it there, but just, this is recommended by the local government.
Yes, yes, no, we, we, I apologize, yes, no, it's a policy, we have to keep it there, yes. Yes, exactly, no. It's not, it's not, it's not a like it, it's a have to.
Yes, thank you. We've been there in that conversation before. All right, let's take a, a quick break just to.
You said the local government suggests.
16.7 is our, is our own internal policy for, yeah, yeah.
Let's just take a quick break to go and grab, grab a plate, come back in and keep going. I will say I've had the caterers food before and my gosh, it's so good. All right, we're in recess, about 10 minutes.
Of our rate above revenue neutral is intended to be dedicated towards new requests. And so we have some of those new requests, like our heart program will be coming to talk to you. And you'll be able to talk about some of those as part of this work session. The next is a little over half a cent is revenue adjustments. And I've already talked and spent some time talking about sales tax. So that, the lack of sales tax growth is something that we need to kind of make up for with property tax. And also the, we're also losing 1.2 million dollars in occupancy tax that will be going to Durham next. So that is what our revenue adjustments are for. Pay adjustments, our human resources department is going to be talking, they are the next presentation up to talk about pay and benefits. But in our proposed budget, we have a 1.45% structure adjustment, which is to keep us in line with the pay plan that we adopted last year. And then we also have our full half penny, which we have our parks and rec department talking today. Right now, we have our half penny for parks, which is, goes towards park, park and trail maintenance. In this proposed budget, we would keep it at a full half penny as opposed to going to revenue neutral. And our parks department is going to talk a little bit about what they would be doing with that extra revenue. So one of the things in our new requests is positions. So I know that you have seen in the proposed budget that we are proposing 42 positions, which sounds like a, a lot of positions, which it is. I did want to break them out for you so that you could see where those positions are going. So the first chart shows you of the 42, 11 of the positions are supported through other revenue sources. So that means they might be fees or sit in our inspections fund. Some other revenue source that's not property tax is going towards supporting those positions. They have their, a revenue source that would support them. The other portion of the positions, those 31 are tax supported. But I did, so the chart on the right breaks out what, where those tax-supported positions are going. So of the 31, 20 are going to our, would be going to our community safety department. And they will talk a little bit about what those would be for. Six would go to our half, to make the half penny, a full half penny. There's some maintenance positions going to that department. Three are for ERP-related positions. So our ERP is our, our enterprise resource, which is our software that we use to run our HR and finance and all the things throughout the city. We're going through a transition right now. And so there are positions that need, are needed in some departments to support that. And then we have one in our city attorney's office and one in our environmental services or our solid waste fund, which is dedicated to our reuse hub. So as far as moving on to the environmental services fund or what you've previously known as the solid waste fund, we are proposing a 0.53 cents above revenue neutral. And the first part of that is to close a budget gap, which is something that we talked about in our retreats in February. And that that is something that also we'll be talking about when we, when we talk about our new environmental streets, environmental and street services department. I apologize, I, thank you for the new name. And then we also have some pay adjustments, which affect this fund as it does in the general fund. So that 1.45% structure adjustment would also be in this fund. And then they have some very modest new requests. There's the one position that they're asking for. And then there's some contracts as well too, that, that they, that are rising that they have no control over. And this is a fund that has also looked at some other ways. They will be talking tomorrow about some service modifications that they've been making and some revenue that they have been trying to generate. So that is not just an amount above revenue neutral, but these are the things that they would need in that fund.
Do you want to talk about later, could you just remind us that the budget gap, what that was? Just high level.
Well, I mean, it's, it's so the budget gap was, oh, what, what?
Would cause that.
Okay, not the amount, you mean what caused it, yeah. I mean, some of it has to do with kind of rising cost in contracts and some decreasing costs in revenue. So some of the operating revenue that they're not seeing, that they had seen. And also some of the, they're, they're tied very much to recycling markets and some other things with some of their waste. And so that has an impact on what gets affected in the fund. So the next I want to talk about is the debt service fund. So the debt service fund is where we pay for our capital improvement projects. And it also is the place where the debt service for the bond that was passed in the fall gets paid out of. So in order to pay for the bond, we will need one, almost two cents of the two and a half cents that we're proposing for the rate in the debt service fund. And then we are proposing another half cent for some additional CIP projects. And JJ Scott in my office is going to be presenting our CIP project. He's going to go over what some of those projects were and what would have gotten off, would have gotten left off the list if, if, without this rate above revenue neutral. The next is the bid fund. And as we talked about, we are proposing keeping the bid fund at its current level. And so for that, there are a couple of things that are happening in that fund. The first would be an increase in the contract to DVI or Downtown Durham, Inc., which is the provider of services in the bid. And that's at 1.69 cents. And then there's also a transfer that happens to the environmental services or the formerly the solid waste fund. That transfer happens for some enhanced services that the fund provides to the downtown area. That has not been keeping up with the cost of providing those services. So this transfer would fully fund those costs in the environmental services fund, which we had just talked about, you know, has been kind of subsidizing the bid fund with those services. And so in order to, to, to make sure that that fund is whole, we're proposing increasing some, going above revenue neutral in the bid fund. And then also there is a transfer that happens from the general fund into the bid fund. That would be eliminated in this scenario where we go to seven cents. So this is just briefly kind of showing you what the impact on our multi-year financial plan is. As you can see, this is still, as we always talk about, this is still, this is conservative. So revenue growth is very modest, 3% for property and sales tax. And then personnel services. We are also just, this is pretty much business as usual with our pay plan and modest operating for some of our departments as some of the costs that, that increased just in general. But this gives you a sense of where we are anticipating. So we will be looking at kind of what, as we go forward, kind of are there ways, especially with our reorganization, are there ways to gain efficiencies and things that we can be doing to make sure that this picture is looking good for years out? So moving on, this is my last slide, just talking about some of the things that we are planning to do for the FY twenty six and what the, what the priorities will be for the budget and management services and city manager's office around the budget. The first is to evaluate the reorganization's impact and identify potential cost savings. So that is something, you know, we've just gone through our reorg. This particular budget does not assume that we have significant savings at this point. But I think that's something that we'll be looking at to see where, where are the ways that we can gain efficiencies. We'll be staying alert to risk from potential federal funding cuts. So this budget does not assume that there are large cuts to federal funding. It's something that we're looking at and paying attention to and might need to pivot if, if there was something that did come up. We're monitoring the local economy and adjusting plans as needed. As we talked about, we're always looking at our sales tax and other things that affect us in the local economy. We're aligning with council guidance from the budget retreats. So you gave us a lot of guidance around transit, the transit fund, fare free bus service, our environmental services fund. You'll see a lot of that, the guidance that you gave us at those retreats reflected in this proposed budget. And then we also are, will begin preparations for our strategic plan refresh. So we're kind of ending the current strategic plan. And so we'll be setting up next year as a time to really start working with council to make sure that we're getting those, your vision and goals reflected in that plan. And then we're going to continue to refine strategies to address our multi-year funding gaps and strategic priorities. So, and with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you so much. Start to my left. That's from Rick.
This might be a, a question, actually. Is the, is the renaming to? Is the renaming to environmental services fund just a rename? Or did it include any departmental changes? Just a rename? Okay, thanks. As you were saying, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Fund itself is just a rename.
Okay.
Thanks for the presentation.
All right, I will call our next presenters our HR. Oh, sorry, I apologize.
Regarding the bid. So just listening to a few folks, we're never going to please everyone. Some folks are excited about getting the seven, some folks are like, wait, we don't necessarily need it paying a lot. This is probably an operations question. Can someone conceive from the budget, from bid?
The bid is set by statute, and so it would take a statutory change to remove some from the bid. Is that correct, Fred?
Can you rephrase question, Mr. Mayor?
If I'm a part of, if I'm within the jurisdictional area of the bid district, I no longer want to be a part of it. Is there a process to remove myself? Or is?
There's a statutory process where you can petition to ask to be removed. Yeah, there's a process.
Okay, thank you. Do we know, I mean, what is, I remember talking to Wanda about this. And so she projected, I remember hearing the projections of sales tax being down this year. But do we know the actual reason? Are we seeing any indicators why?
We don't have exact data. You know, we receive just, we just receive our allocation. So we don't know point of sale data, you know, to be able to analyze it in any great detail. So I wish I could say that I knew exactly what was going on with sales tax. But I can only tell you the trend at this point. And so it is something that we look at and we try and, you know, we're trying to make sure that we have the best information for council.
So I think that, you know, part of policymaking is, they need to follow that data and manipulate what direction we'd like to go. Do, where can we, where would we look to, to find the indicators? Because I know we're monitoring the trend and reporting that. But the why is what would be, you know, what is appetizing to me.
Yeah, and I think we can use broader trends and just, you know, I'm sticking specifically to Durham city's trend. You know, I think we can use, we're looking at economic trends overall and what we see kind of in the economy and broader trends and kind of applying that to what we are doing with our sales tax as well, too. So that's kind of what we try to do.
Well, it's not just Durham, right? I mean, it's like, it's statewide.
It is, and that's, and that's why I showed you the map as well, too. It's not just us. So I don't feel like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We talked about the fund balance, 16.7%. Could you tell me a bit more about the contract with DDI, the service contract and the transfer from environmental services?
Sure. And I think that, you know, they are going to be coming forward so they can talk a little bit more in depth about their particular contract tomorrow. And we will also have the environmental services folks as well here to talk specifically about what those services are. But essentially, environmental services or solid, formerly solid waste provides some enhanced services in the bid district around trash collection. And so that is something that that fund pays for. And then as far as DDI, they provide some, some services in the bid district around economic development and some other, you know, they have ambassadors that, buses that they, you know, that are showing up around town. So those are some of the things that Nicole Thompson, who is the CEO, will be here and can address directly.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Mayor Protem, did you have any questions?
All right, thanks.
Strong numbers, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, the wealth of information. All right, next up.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, councilors and staff. Montique McClary, interim human resources director. And this morning, we will be talking about pay and benefits. With me, I have members from the HR staff. I have assistant HR director Jim Ryan Gruber, class and comp manager Alethea Hardy, and the benefits manager Gwen Barnett. So our agenda today will be on the compensation recommendations, pay for performance specifically regarding merit, the Durham minimum livable wage, structure adjustments, part-time adjustments, the implementation timeline, proposed new classifications, benefit and wellness updates. And then we will entertain any questions that you may have. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council. I'm Jim Ryan Gruber, Assistant Director of Human Resources. And I'm here today to go over the FY '26 pay recommendations. And although you'll see the moving parts are fewer this year and the dollar amounts are smaller than we talked about last year, there's still a lot to go through and explain. So over the next few minutes, I'm taking you on a journey through pay for performance, structure adjustments, Durham's minimum livable wage and some part-time employee information. And though we list these things discreetly, they're all very much intertwined, as you're going to see. So starting with the easiest one, pay for performance, or we also call it merit. So you might hear me refer to it as that through, interchangeably. This is proposed to operate the same way that it did last year. So not a lot to explain there. Just like last year, eligible employees are going to get between 4% and 6%, depending on their rating and which pay plan they're in. The total cost associated with pay for performance is around 9.2 million for the general fund and 12.6 million overall. All right, so now we're going to jump in the deep end with the Durham's minimum livable wage. And I'll call it DMLW because I say it so much. And it's increasing significantly this year, as you can see, by 11.8%. And it's going to 2190 per hour. So this is primarily affecting the general step plan. The other plans all have starting wages that are higher than 2190. So a lot of this presentation really focuses on the step plan itself. We also have on this slide the likely FY '27 DMLW illustrated here for your information. You can see that's, so this year, you know, it's a significant increase. And frankly, this year required some creativity to come up with a, with a good implementation plan to address it. But next year is going to pose a much greater challenge, and we already see that. Last year, we showed in our presentation how long it would take a current employee to get to $25 an hour. And we noted that changes in the DMLW could accelerate that timeline. But we didn't expect the DMLW itself would put all employees over $25 an hour mere two years later. So we're really going to need to start working on FY '27 as soon as FY '26 is settled. Because there are really no easy answers or solutions for this. But for this year, we're going to show you how the FY '26 DMLW affects the current step plan and the proposed step plan with proposed structure adjustments included. All right, so this is where we currently are. This is the current FY '25 step plan that we adopted this past budget cycle. The steps highlighted in red above are all below 2190. So that's the, again, the new FY '26 DMLW. Right now, there are currently 83 employees on those affected steps that are below the DMLW. And we're going to show you next is our plan to address this for FY '26. So before we actually get into our recommendations, we want to talk about the goals that ultimately set the framework for what we're proposing. First thing, we obviously want to successfully implement the DMLW. Again, it's a big increase this year. And as you saw, it affects the current step plan pretty significantly. Second goal is we want to make at least some incremental adjustments to the overall pay plans and preferably do this each year so that we're staying competitive in the job market and not requiring enormous increases each time we do another pay study. And then finally, we want to make sure that our recommendations don't create situations where there'll be massive salary compression or we're completely blowing up a pay plan that we just adopted this past fiscal year or this current fiscal year. And of course, we know that there are budget constraints as well. So we believe we've created a proposal that pretty elegantly addresses all these issues, at least for the coming fiscal year. So when I first started talking, I said that this stuff is all intertwined. And it's really necessary to talk about these structure adjustments within the context of the DMLW. So Christina mentioned it, but we're proposing a 1.45% market adjustment to every pay structure for FY '26. And we're going to show you what that looks like for the step plan, how it plays into setting the DMLW on the step plan. And we'll talk about the effects on existing employees. So we'll show you a timeline plan for the adjustments in a few slides. But to preview that process, after we do structure adjustments, we'll process pay for performance increases and then manually move any employees who are still on a step that's, that are below the DMLW. So this is the FY '26 proposed step plan, including the 1.45% adjustment. Now you see that we only lose three steps total, as shown in the dark gray there. And the starting wage is the DMLW at step three of grade A12. So that's that first grade up there. You look at step three, it's 2190.
That's with that 1.45% increase, right?
Yes, exactly. And just as a reminder, last year, steps 11 and 12 were frozen. And these continue to be frozen. So those are not being moved by the 1.45%. However, the eligible employees on those steps, as well as step 10, which is the top of the range, are going to get lump sum merit payments. All right, so let's talk about the employees affected by the DMLW. And we'll take a little bit of time on this slide to go through it. I mentioned earlier that on the current step plan, 83 employees currently live on steps that are below 2190. So after the 1.45% adjustment, that number drops to 47 employees. You see those 47 employees on the chart on the far left at the top of the slide. The middle chart shows how those employees are anticipated to move in the pay for performance process. So 16 of the 21 employees on step one of A12 are expected to get the next step through pay for performance. The remaining five were hired after January 1st, 25, so are not eligible for merit. So they stay on step one after the merit increases. And then when you look one grade down on A13, 16 of the 23 employees on step one are expected to get that next step through pay for performance. And the other seven, again, were hired after January 1st, so not eligible. So after the merit increases are processed, there are still 28 employees you see on the affected steps, as shown in the middle chart. The chart on the right shows those 28 getting moved to the first step in their grade that is at or above the DMLW. So I want to try and make the case that ultimately only three employees are truly compressed by this plan. Grade A12 has that more impactful form of compression because those three employees who land on step three after the merit, you see on the far right chart, do end up getting joined by the other 21 employees from steps one and two. So three affected employees that frankly could have been worse. And then if you look at the compression on grade A13, that's a kind of a more mild form of compression, even though there are more employees that are involved in that. All of those 23 employees on step two after the DMLW moves were all together on step one together previously anyway. So again, a pretty mild form of compression. However, do keep in mind that any new hires will also start at the first active step of their salary grade. So that will create further compression as, as new employees are hired to the city. So that was a lot to go through. We're going to shift to part timers, but I wanted to kind of pause and see if anybody had, yes.
So I'm assuming that the compression will get even worse next year if we're already estimating where it is. So we're going to have to do a decent amount of an adjustment for next year.
Correct.
Okay, because all of this just gets harder when, and good for us. Like, I'm glad we're doing it, right? We said we were going to do it. I will also just say, other employers in the city of Durham, this is what you need to be paying your, your workers, right? And so, I mean, I think our area median income now is for a family of four is $112,000 or $115,000 as of early 2025. So that, that tells you why, right there. And so I'm glad to see it. I understand that it's going to be hard for, this is why we have really great finance and HR and budget folks. So thank you, because this is not my job. But I just want to say thank you, and I, and I get that next year is going to be, it's going to be fun.
Thank you for that. We had talked a little bit last year, a few of us had, had kind of been interested in this idea. And I'd like to revisit it as we're looking towards next budget season, which is to potentially have lesser increases between steps at higher income brackets. I know that that is complicated with compression, but we talked about last year how 5% of our minimum living wage is significantly different than 5% of somebody's salary who's like far up in the step bracket. And so either standardizing those increases with a monetary amount that works across the board or using like the average increase, I think we had talked about, like using the average increase between steps five and six for that band. But just like something to look at, having a more standard increase that's not then having a huge increase for folks who are higher up on the income bracket and prejudicing folks that are lower on the income bracket. So that's something I'd be interested in looking into. My colleagues are interested in that, but something we had discussed.
Thank you.
And then one other thing, which is that, this is a question for another day. But I feel like the number one thing that I hear from employees is that they don't feel like they are on the right step for the number of years that they've worked. And I heard this all last year while we were renegotiating the whole pay plan. And I continue to hear it now, and so that's concerning to me. And so I was just wondering, you talked about they can receive the 4% to 6% increase. Can you talk about, is it, do they always get a merit increase? Do, do the steps always follow the years? Can you just tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. There was a reset. How long ago was that, Alethea? When, when they sort of talked, you know, set people on the steps that they were supposed to be on based on a year's service?
Well, in, I think it was in California.
So that was a few years ago. There was a 20 what? Okay, so, so around 2019, there was a, there was a methodology used for placing people on steps with that pay study and on the particular steps that they landed on. Step movements are subject to a couple of things. Number one is the performance rating. Well, number one is, is when people are hired. So if you're hired before January 1st of a given year, then you're eligible for merit that July. If you're hired after January 1st, then it would be the following July when you would first be eligible to move a step. The other, another factor is the rating that you get. So anybody who gets effective or above on their annual evaluation is, again, eligible to move that step. The, the final thing is basically it's subject to council approval. So if, if budget is not going to allow it in a given year, there have been years where employee increases were, were not done. But again, that's, that's a, you know, subject to budget discussions and.
And I'd like to elaborate or maybe simplify a little to say this. The city does not have, nor have we had, a time and grade system. We do not have a system where the number of years you have worked for us places you on a certain step. As the system that Jim described plays out, most people are in a step that reflects some, that has some correlation to when they were hired. But the, the driving factor is not you were hired in this year, you have worked these many years, therefore you are on step X. That is a. That is a point of confusion that we have worked really hard to try and clear up. In particular, it it has created frustration for staff. So you see this particularly in the fire and police departments where employees were all hired in the same class. They know they're academy mates, but there are different factors, as Jim has described, that move you to a different step. And therefore, there are a number of reasons that result in people being different steps. Some of those are beyond the employees' control, and Jim mentioned one of those. So in years where we did not move employees because we did not have money in the budget to fund the steps, people stayed on the same step. But in those years, we were still hiring new employees. And so we did create compression during the COVID years that we have acknowledged and that we have also not endeavored to fix, because the fix would mean moving hundreds of employees, multiple steps, and that would be very expensive to the budget. So what what we have said, which is not something all employees agree with, but I think we vetted very transparently for the council, is that when we did a market study and studied all our positions against market and were thoughtful about where we placed people, we believed we lived into our value that our positions and therefore our employees are paid at market. One of the unfortunate or fortunate realities of working in a government system is that all of our pay is known to everyone. So every employee knows what every employee, what every other employee makes. And therefore, every employee may have certain feelings about employees. They are ranked alongside or above or below. I would posit that that would be the same in every private sector company too, except private sector companies don't have to disclose that data. So I think the city council understandably hears from employees who feel that they are not paid commensurate with another employee who they feel equal to. But all those realities are real. I'm not suggesting council needs to agree with those statements. But I will say that we have a high degree of confidence that our employees are paced, are placed on the appropriate step for all of the reasons that we use to manage the pay plan. That may not be the same thing as they being placed on the step that they think they belong on based on some criteria that they were using. So Jim or Montique, I don't know if either of you want to correct or elaborate on any of that, but.
No, that I was going to ask that point too. Are people talking about their situations in a vacuum? Or are they talking about their situations compared to other people? Because we hear, we hear the latter, and we we will investigate if somebody comes and says, you know, this doesn't look right. But we, Beau mentioned fire and 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 police has the same thing, you know, it's very standard. People all get hired within academy. There's promotions done at a very set time. With these other plans, it's all over the place. So people get promoted at different times, people have different career trajectories. And so, you know, if you're, if you're comparing yourself to somebody and you say, I've been here for longer, and they're on a higher step, it could be they got promoted a year before you did at a lower place. And then, you know, it's like, there's, there's a lot of factors that that kind of can can be involved in where people find themselves. So.
Yeah, I really just wanted to give an opportunity for folks to hear that. Because I I do think, I do think that there is still confusion about years versus steps. And I know that we've talked about it, and I just like wanted to give space to talk about that again. I also want to say that, like, historically, when salaries are not shared, certain folks are impacted more. So I'm all about sharing salaries, and I'm that person at all of my employees, players, who is like going around to all of my colleagues and asking them how much they make and then sharing the information with everybody. Because I do think it's really useful in negotiating, and I think it's it's a right that we should have. But I appreciate that answer, and the the COVID compression piece makes sense to me.
And that was a, that was a very big deal to our employees. And I want to close with a little bit of empathy on this, which is to say, you know, we have heard arguments that that make sense to us about what our system gets wrong. I I would say that there is, there's no perfect pay system anywhere that 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 addresses all the values to their greatest extent. And so when you have a system like we have, I think it captures the council's values as closely as possible as you can capture in a system. That does not mean every employee, that there aren't employees who may not be able to make a fairness case to to me or someone else. It says, yeah, I can see how that doesn't feel fair to you. But in in to to the expectation that we have to have a system of rules and rules that we follow, I think I am confident that this council has has seen enough data to give us direction to build and implement a system that I think does the best job possible at capturing the different values that we try to do in our pay system. So, thank you.
Mr. Rangarajan, thanks for the presentation. I just want to say, echoing some of the comments, my colleagues, I'm very proud of our minimum wage. I think the rest of my colleagues, if I can speak for you all, are proud of that as well. I think our residents are. I just want to appreciate your presentation. Clearly, when you get down to the nitty gritty of thinking about it, it's like, it's individual people and individual steps. So it's like detailed work. So I appreciate you're doing the hard work of figuring out exactly how we do this in a way that minimizes the compression, but rewards those employees that should be paid a living wage, because we want all our employees to, who work here, to work and not be poor. So, thank you.
No. Yep. All right. All right. So let me start off by saying, last year during this this presentation, we we frankly got caught unprepared by some questions about part-time employees. So we did a good bit more prep work this year on on the subject and want to share some information sort of beyond the standard recommendations, especially as to how the DMLW relates to part-time employees and why things are currently set up as they are. So just starting with our basic recommendations, eligible part-time employees would receive a 3% merit increase. This is the same as it has, it's been, same as last year. And also 1.45% structure adjustment. So this, you know, just as all the other pay plans, this would receive that that's that adjustment as well. And then any eligible employees, and we'll talk about eligible in a minute, that are below the DMLW would also receive an adjustment to be brought up to the DMLW. All right, so let's talk a little bit about eligibility and how this applies to part-time employees. So what do we mean by eligible? This is the applicable section of the ordinance highlighted above. It applies to part-time employees doing work that is commensurate with the full-time version of those employees' jobs. So if we if we kind of look at, if the chairs stop moving, using an employee census that we took a few weeks ago, we're estimating about 201 part-time employees that are non-commensurate, in non-commensurate jobs, so not eligible for DMLW, that would be below $21.90 after making the adjustments shown on the previous slide. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. And these are, these are jobs like scorekeepers, gatekeepers, lifeguards, program aides and assistants. They tend to be either seasonal or or very part-time. The average hours worked for this subset of 201 part-time employees is about 472 hours per year. The average hourly rate of those 201 employees after adjustments is estimated to be $19.81 an hour. So with the with the 1.45% adjustment, the new minimum would be $16.85. So that's the least that any part-time person would be paid. And so moving those non-commensurate jobs up to DMLW would would create some significant issues for us. So recognizing differences in duties and responsibilities, I'm going to talk about on the next slide. And then after that, I'm going to show how there are currently some opportunities in the part-time plan for for some progression. And that would either be basically compressed into meaningless distinctions in pay, or we'd create a situation where the part-time jobs create inequities in the full-time plan. So here's a quick comparison between a non-commensurate job, park gatekeeper, and a commensurate job, a maintenance assistant, to illustrate why there is some salary differentiation there. If if the DMLW is required for all the part-time jobs, these two employees would theoretically make the same. And if you look at the duties and responsibilities, one, one employee, the maintenance assistant, performs equipment and technical work such as mowing, edging, maintaining the grounds, stripping and waxing floors, and other maintenance activities. The park gatekeeper's responsibilities include opening and closing the park gate and scanning the park for issues. So not to, not to minimize anything, our park gatekeepers provide an important service. And looking at, looking at at how they work, we see that they work on average about 366 hours per per year. And right now, the occupants of those positions average about $17.82 per hour. So they make about $6,500 per year. Those who would who would get the merit and then structure adjustments bring that up to about $6,800 per year. So that's, you know, that that's what they would make on an annual basis. You can see that the part-time maintenance assistants work nearly 1,200 hours per year, so more than three times the hours of a typical gatekeeper. And this is, we found this to be pretty typical across commensurate versus non-commensurate positions. And I have a summary later in the presentation showing showing some of this. All right, so just to show another example, this is a series of part-time jobs performing work in the care programs. So this includes after-school, summer camp intercession, and fun day programs serving youth ages six to 12. Here, you're going to see the increasingly responsible part-time jobs in this program are aligned with increased pay rates. So aides right now start at $16.65, which again is the the minimum currently. Those aides are kind of extra hands to support staff. And then up to senior program assistants who make $19.37, and they do things like administer medications and do communications with parents and so forth. So on the surface, you know, just talking about part-time in general, it might be tempting to just say, hey, why not just bring all the people below DMLW up to DMLW and leave everything else the way it is? But you can see from this that that would destroy some opportunities for pay progressions in in series like this one. And then conversely, if the DMLW were applied to the entry-level program aides, and then you maintain the the pay hierarchy throughout the structure through the more responsible jobs, just you can see on this slide, you can see how that ends up compounding over time. And you see that it eventually causes the senior, the part-time senior program assistance rate to exceed that of full-time classification of recreation specialist. And that recreation specialist carries a much greater scope of responsibility. And so it, you know, this ends up creating inequity in the pay hierarchy for these jobs. The part-time plan has now created issues in the full-time plan. So now you're faced with living with these inequities or making costly changes to full-time plans. So very challenging issues to kind of work through when talking about DMLW. This kind of illustrates why we currently have it the way that it is. So here are some, in my opinion, interesting stats with part-time employees when you compare commensurate versus non-commensurate as a whole. And again, these numbers are a few weeks old. I've looked yesterday, and there have been quite a few people hired in the past few weeks for seasonal. But you can see roughly that a quarter of part-time employees are in commensurate positions and three quarters are not. So right now, of the 242 part-timers we have in non-commensurate jobs, almost half are above the 1958 current Durham minimum livable wage. However, because of the big increase in the minimum wage, that number shrinks significantly. And we expect about, again, as I mentioned earlier, excuse me, 201 of the 242 employees to be below $21.90 after all the adjustments are made. And again, these are, these are non-commensurate positions, so not not technically eligible for the DMLW. I mentioned this before, but there is a significant difference in the number of hours worked between commensurate and non-commensurate positions. And we looked at this a few different ways, and really regardless of the methodology we use, the the patterns were consistent. So we feel pretty confident that, that, you know, this is a real finding here. And finally, these are their average hourly rate shown as they stand now. Recall that the minimum pay for any of the non-commensurate positions is currently $16.65 an hour. So the average for those employees is just slightly below the current DMLW. Commensurate employees average significantly higher wages, and we're actually estimating only nine of the 64 are going to require further adjustments after structure and merit increases to bring them to the DMLW. So very insignificant number of part-time employees that'll have to be, have to be moved for that. All right, so, yes. Other way. One more. That one? Yeah, that's that one. It's just not showing on the, yeah. Yeah.
That's fine. I can see it on mine. Thank you. Can I go ahead? Okay, so so are you saying that starting July 1, the non-commensurate will go up to $19.54? Like, I'm trying to just understand, what is, what are we actually paying on July 1 for these? And it, does it depend on the position, or is it everyone?
It depends on the position. So right now, the the minimum for a non-commensurate is $16.65, and that'll go up by 1.45%. So I think it's 1680, something. I can't remember exactly, but. So yeah, it's it's going up marginally, and it is different amounts for different people. For example, right now, a lifeguard's starting wage is $19.37, so that's going to go up by 1.45%. So they get paid differently than a recreation aide who starts at $16.65 and.
Okay, I guess what would be helpful is to actually have all of those positions somehow, right? I I want to, so I'm just going to say that, and I, maybe it was 2019, at least this was my intent as a council member. And I hear everything you're saying about compression, everything else. But the fact of the matter is, there was a council that said, and I was on the council, that we were going to bring all part-time folks up. That's what was said, all. It was not tied to positions, and we are not HR specialists. And so no one broke it down by step or compression or whatever. So I understand y'all's perspective, and I understand the budgetary constraints. But I think that we need to have as much information as possible, because when we say things to the public, our words have to mean something. And so we promote that we are a living wage city. We don't say because you're a lifeguard or a cleaner or whatever. We say we pay our workers a living wage. A living wage in the city of Durham, if you're taking care of kids, is not $16.65. The end. Like, I'm sorry, that's what it is. And so at some point, we do actually have to correct course, and it's just going to keep getting more expensive. So we can't just keep, and and now we're this late into the budget, and we've done a huge amount of work to get our workers here. But it just gets harder, because you're saying that next year it's going to be $27 an hour. That's a $10 difference between potentially what we're paying folks that take care of kids over the summer or lifeguards. So it actually just gets harder for the councils moving forward. So I'm making this request now at our budget retreats in February, and I will be on this council, because I'm not done until 2027. I want all of this information then, not in May, when it's too hard to rectify on the budgetary end. So I am saying this in public. I'm saying it for staff to hear loud and clear, and yes, I am upset. I want every single person at some point to make what it costs to make. We can't put pressure on other folks to pay what they need to pay if we're not doing it ourselves. It's hypocritical. So please provide this information, all of the detail. I would like a clear understanding of who is making this non-commensurate pay, what job titles they are, because I have a lot of feelings of paying people $16.65 for taking care of kids all summer long. It's a huge issue in childcare. It's why we can't get qualified people, and we can't be part of that problem. I understand we may not be able to rectify it now at this late state. So we start these processes in January and February and March for a reason, and we can't do our jobs if we're not getting the data. So first request is, who are the non-commensurate? I understand that it may be a gatekeeper versus a lifeguard versus a childcare person. That's my first question. My second question is, I would like to understand what these folks are going to be making on July 1. My second question is, I would like to understand what these folks are going to be making on July one based on that job description. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Amen to that. Yeah, I, we're talking about hourly wages. We're not talking about year long salaries when we are looking at compression. I understand that the inequity is the hourly pay. But folks who are making full time salaries are going to make yearly way more. Like you just said, sixty five hundred dollars for the year. So in my only addition to what council member Caballero said, which I totally agree with everything she's just said, is that we also have an actual number amount of what that looks like because I understand increasing from nineteen fifty four to twenty one ninety looks like a big number. And there's two hundred people that it impacts, but if they're only working a handful of hours, I mean, I think in the first the comparison slide that you showed us, three hundred and thirty six hours of an annual, so that's not a lot of money, even though it seems like a lot of money the way that these numbers are laid out. So I would like total numbers to see what that looks like. And I, to me, it's it's a non issue. Like, I understand that the statute doesn't have non commensurate folks, but if what you're saying is that two hundred and one of these folks will now be out or below the twenty one ninety, then we're looking at a median pay right now that is slightly above our minimum wage. And next year, we're going to be looking at almost every single person is below because that's two oh one out of two forty two. So that's almost everyone. Yeah, so just to add, to add some data points, would love to see a total amount, but for me, I understand the fairness issue, but I think we we are going to have to raise this.
I would just add my voice and echoing. I I had made a note when you were speaking and just said, I think the same thing would happen at seven twenty five an hour. Like, it's, it's just those differences when you raise the minimum are going to occur. So I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. I think we are going to have to have the that conversation, especially for the two hundred and one. Yeah.
So do we know who's working these jobs? Who are they?
Oh, you want like position? Yeah.
Well, not the ex position, but do we know if they're a sixteen year old versus a thirty year old mother?
Demographically, I mean, we could, we could find that. I don't have it readily available.
Yeah, so where I land on this, I I I'd like that type of information because I don't want to assume who's doing the jobs. The other thing, I got you. The other thing is, I I'm supportive of, of, you know, having a minimum wage. What I'm not supportive of is having a value or a value statement or value policy only for some. I went to school, I got my bachelor's, and then I went and got my master's degree because I wanted to make more money, so I did something to get it. And I want to make sure that while I agree with there being a base for everyone, that we're not just saying like, okay, you've done all of this additional work and then I'll hire the position staff who've done these extra things. Well, you can't get anything. They took a five, they took a freeze last time. And there's a reason why they went and got what they, when they, what they got, you know, so I don't want to, again, attack folks that have been busting their tails to climb up their career, you know, professionally. And then, you know, hear recommendations of, well, that doesn't matter. We need you to stay where you are because you get paid more. I I think that's that, that's a, I don't agree with that statement, but when it comes to this, I would like to know more information. Because, you know, I, we're government and it's, it is, it's a give and take, it's a pull here, give there. I'm I'm totally, you know, to my colleagues' points, I'm I'm not against, you know, ensuring that those, what, twenty nineteen, when you all came up with that? Not against that. But I I will say, you know, as I always say before, I sell chicken for a living, and if I want to make more money, then I need to sell more chicken. Our revenue doesn't come from chicken in the city. It comes from tax base. So when we're thinking about how we get more, expanding our tax base, think about when we have these zoning cases. All right, if we want to make these value statements and value policies that are expensive, then we need to think about how we actually get more revenue. So that we're not hurting the people who are already here. We can't say we want affordable housing. We want to take care of the, you know, you know, decrease the the wealth disparity and take care of the less fortunate, but also have expensive values like this, and then your actions are anti-expanding that tax base. So I just want to, while I agree and support, I want to make sure that we have in this full context and in this conversation. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so a lot going on here. So first of all, I want to agree with my colleagues on this issue of of minimum level wage. Agree, we do need more data who these people are. I just, I guess, I want to say a couple of things. First thing is, I'm concerned a little bit about bias against part time employees. I mean, we talked about, I think the number was a three percent performance base raise for part time, but four to six percent for full time. So I don't know why part time employees would get a different raise. They're working for us, right? So so why a different performance base raise for part time versus full time employees? That's one question. Second thing, just a note, and again, I appreciate my colleagues raising up, especially the care issue, right? Pay for like care workers is chronically underpaid in this country. It's worth noting, and again, I applaud us. I'm so proud of us being a living wage city. But if you, the our minimum level wage in some ways is a more just minimum wage, it may not be a living wage, right? So for a single adult, that twenty one ninety is roughly what either M I T or the Justice Center says is the minimum or the living wage for a single person. Once you add one child in there, a single person with one child, it goes up to like forty dollars an hour. So we're like, so we're, I'm proud of our living wage, but for folks who maybe have a child and are working part time for the city, this is not a good wage. So we really need to address this. And a one thing, and we talked about this a lot, I don't know if it wait this year, the D P R, a lot of these part time employees are at D P R, right? So one thing D P R has done is actually combine some of these into a full time job. So I think part of the question for that human resources team and the city manager is to think about, in addition to raising wages, what else can we do, maybe potentially combining these into full time jobs? So I think this is a big challenge for us, and I appreciate the manager and staff digging in because I think we do, as as comes from Caballero, so we we need to address this. So, thank you.
And I do remember this from when we had this conversation, and this is to the mayor's point. For the most part, most of our part time workers are women, women of color who are providing care during our summer camps at D P R. Right? We know that because we knew that from back then, and I'm assuming it probably hasn't changed that much. So sure, we have a few sixteen year olds, but many of the folks are often teachers who take these jobs during the summer because we pay better. And so if we're going to also to lean into our values, but we also have this idea of shared economic prosperity, it's part of our strategic plan. We can't, we can't rob Peter to pay for Paul, y'all. So we we have to figure this out and and I and especially because, and this is why we're asking for this data, I, we talked about this in twenty nineteen. It is a lot of folks who are part time, who are D P R folks. I know that, and I want to thank D P R for trying to figure out how to get some of these positions. And in some cases, it's not. These are folks who are seasonal workers, quote, like they work ten month contracts for our schools, not just in Durham, but in other parts of the triangle. And they get work in the summer and and exactly, thank you, Councilmember Freeman. And the 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 part that I, so I'm in the Hunt Institute this year, and that is literally what we're doing, is early childcare and childcare pay. And the state average right now is fourteen dollars an hour. That is hideous. We cannot pay the folks who are taking care of our kids so so poorly and then expect better outcomes for our kids.
I just wanted to appreciate Councilman Caballero again in saying that. I think often it is those teachers who are coming back year after year and our Parks and Rec Department. But I also want to say that for our folks at the higher end of the steps, it's not frozen on the merit side. It's just frozen on this side. And so I don't want you to think that, I don't want anyone to leave the conversation thinking that there's no increase. There's an increase for everyone who's done their job.
Go ahead. Some record.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. Firstly, Madam interim director, good to see you. Congratulations on your assumption of leadership and and she's looking down. You can tell her I propped her up. Good to see you. Thank you so much for the work and the responsiveness to this this council. I, you know, I want to say to my colleagues, at any given time, we can pick an arbitrary number and order the staff to do whatever we want. I mean, if if we want to, you you know, there's, there's, there's the enunciation of a values, then there's actual governance and there's the actual numbers and there's the actual give and take. If we want to raid the fund balance and 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 put out a certain number and say, pay everybody, this, this, this set them in a living way, we can do that. You know, I, it's going to be interesting to to see a a lifeguard saying, well, if I can make the same amount of money opening the gate rather than jumping into a pool and saving somebody's life, I'd rather take that job. There are differences in in jobs. There are, you know, I was on the council, and I appreciate Councilman Caballero's allusion to the council in twenty nineteen. I was on that council. We've said we want zero traffic fatalities. We're still working towards that. I remember on the council one time, we said we didn't want to hire any more police. So we, from time to time, we've all, we've promulgated all types of values over the years, but what's get, what gets codified in ordinance is certainly different. First, so I want to firstly honor the work of this staff over the years in responding to us and trying to, this this is an incredible improvement to what we were at years ago in terms of paying our employees. This is light years ahead of. So you have responded to what we've asked. If we want to ask the staff to pay everybody a certain amount, and you can get four votes to do that, and then go out and explain the economics, explain what it looks like, the repercussions across the rest of the org chart. If we want to micromanage and get into that, we can do that. But I I want to make sure that it's clear that this staff has not drugged their feet. They haven't carpet bagged. They have responded to what we've asked and and what I think you've brought back. Firstly, I'm very proud of the 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 market study and and the massive pay adjustment we made for our employees. I also, you know, want to say that I believe that for a lot of folk, government work, municipal jobs, a good government job has been the entree for a lot of black and brown people and women into the middle class. I have no problem with saying that not only do I want to pay a live minimal living wage for folk, I also want to keep the gates open, the doors open for folk who've gone to school, studied hard, kept their nose clean. Like mama said, get your books, go to school, and good things will happen. The C E O of Target and Pfizer and Delta and G, those are the kind of folk I want to be talking about. Their salaries relative to the rest of their org chart. And I, I'm totally with that, but municipal employees are not the people who are who are making, you know, these ridiculous, incredibly exorbitant salaries. They're middle class and upper middle class people who worked hard a lot of times to get to where they are. And I support that. Back to the 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 part time issue, I want to, I want to thank you for the the work that you've done. And if 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 this isn't on you, we can put our money where our mouth is, or the the city's money, not our money, the city's money, where our mouth is anytime we want, but I I hasten to caution that these folk have run numbers, they've looked at repercussions, they they they've run scenarios. And if we want to pick an arbitrary number up here and and give it to them and say, run with it, then we better be prepared for the implications and be able to explain how that has repercussions throughout the rest of the org chart. But at the end of the day, we can do that. Just to be clear, this isn't on the staff. We we can do that. But we can do it with with implications and and repercussions. And with an asterisk next to it because there will be an asterisk, because there will be implications for us doing it. Thank you so much for the incredible work you've done. Madam interim director, eye contact. Thank you so much for your for your assumption assumption of leadership and best wishes to you of the department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are you still going?
Yes.
Keep going.
All right. All right. So, yeah, that was, that was a lot to go through. So thank you and thank you for all the feedback. Really, really appreciate that. But here we are now boiling everything down to the dollars and cents. And these are the costs to implement the proposed structure adjustments, including an estimate for salary related benefits. So comes out to about four point two million dollars total, and the general fund portion of that's about three point one million. That is the last slide of my part, and then I'm going to pass off to Alethea, who is going to go over some timeline.
Don't run away too fast.
I'll be here.
Jim, before you sit down, I'd like to bring a little bit of closure to the to the council conversation. First of all, thank you. This is exactly the kinds of conversations I want you guys to have today so that we can can make this budget responsive. I I want to be clear, since this is my recommendation, first of all, that that I I think I want to hearken back to the comments I made about thirty minutes ago when Councilmember Cook raised questions about people's steps. That these pay plans are an attempt to, are our effort to reflect your values in a system that we can make workable, and my recommendations are based on how I feel those components are working together. The the difference that that is represented in my recommendation on the part time plan is simply that for for my understanding of what we want to achieve, I have concerns about the fairness issue, not about the cost. So I want to be clear to council, I believe you can afford. We would need to come up with options to do it, but we, you can afford to pay your part time employees, all of them, at the Durham minimum livable wage. My my main concern is the vast discrepancies between responsibilities and the impact that has on the employees who have broader and more skill based positions. I also believe that it's my job to inform you of that and for then you to tell us you understand those trade offs. And so we will be happy to to bring you recommendations in this budget cycle for you to consider because I don't want to imply that somehow there's a lot of data we don't understand. We have that data. This, this was my recommendation based based on a fairness concern, which I think you've heard, and I think it is absolutely your prerogative to to direct us to move forward. And so we'll bring you options for that, and I appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. You can continue.
All right, so I'm going to pass off to Alethea.
Alethea Hardy, H R manager. This slide is our information regarding our order of operations for implementing these adjustments that Jim has told you about. And when they hit employees' paychecks and the timing for those adjustments. Our order of of implementation is we begin with the structure adjustments first. Then we do the performance increases after that, and then followed by any reclassifications that are approved on employees' jobs. So the one point four or five percent structure adjustment is to be reflected on the July eleventh paychecks. The pay for performance increases are, will be shown on the July twenty fifth checks. And any approved reclassifications will be reflected on the August eighth check. I just want to point out, any necessary movements to bring employees up to the D M L W will be reflected on the August twenty sixth, twenty second, sorry, the August twenty second paycheck, but will be made retroactive to July one. So that that is for any of those employees who, as Jim mentioned, might need adjustments beyond what the structure adjustment or merit would bring to them to make sure that they are at the D M L W if applicable. And then part time employees, we have the timeframe there for full time. Part time employees have a two week lag in this cycle. Their time is keyed through spreadsheet, so it's woven into the administrative cycle in that manner with a lag. Now, this slide is relative to a process that we hold each year in the city where we take a look to see if employees' jobs have changed significantly enough to, for us to do an analysis, a job analysis on their position. With that analysis, some may not need a resulting recommendation for reclassification. But for those whose jobs and responsibilities have changed significantly, they are reclassified to a different title in our classification plan. Last year, you may recall, we added various titles to our H R toolbox to be able to better classify some of the city's work. This year, we only need to add two new classes, both in the risk management job family. The two classes that you see here, the senior risk management analyst and the risk management administrator resulted from this study we conducted. I just want to mention too and clarify, these are not newly budgeted positions. They're just two new titles to to help H R better classify the work that our employees do. And they're necessary to recognize specialized requirements that these incumbents perform in functions that support the entire city. Any questions on that? Okay. Well, my part is Well, my part is, I'm going to now turn it over to, um, Gwen Burnett, who will talk about our wellness program and benefits.
I'm Gwen Burnett, the Benefits Manager, and I'll cover our benefit and wellness program updates. On this slide, you'll see the employee share of our healthcare premium trends from fiscal year '23 till fiscal year '26. The city does currently offer two health plans, our Aetna Whole Health and the Aetna Whole Health Plus Plan. Our city is self-insured, so we're playing, we're paying our claims weekly to our vendor, which is Aetna. We will continue to offer a zero premium employee-only plan for the Aetna Whole Health. We are actually one of very few in this area that offer this option. This is really our most popular plan. As you'll see, it has about 999 employees currently here. So, even with our proposed premium increases for employees, our benefit plan does compare favorably to surrounding areas such as Durham County, Cary and Raleigh. On the chart, you'll also see that aside from the zero premium employee-only health, Whole Health Plus Plan, Whole Health Plan, the city does pay between 81% and 92% of the total premium on the other tiers. In previous years, the city was able to absorb a larger portion of the premium cost, which actually helped keep the employee premiums lower. However, as time goes on, healthcare costs do continue to go up. We do have an increased usage of GLP-1 medications, as well as some higher cost claimants that really drive the increase in some of our premiums. So, in order for us to maintain our current plan design without actually reducing the coverage that we have and increasing our deductibles, we've actually had to pass a larger share over to our employees, which is why you see a significant increase, a premium increase to our employees on the screen. Yes. Okay. A wellness premium discount, as you should be aware, uh, we do have a wellness rate. In order to get it, you do have to complete, as an employee, a biometric screening, a health assessment and three additional activities. This is for fiscal year '26. If you have a covered spouse on the plan, you do have to complete, they have to complete a biometric screen as well, and the health assessment to gain the $30 wellness premium discount for the upcoming year, which is '26, is fiscal year '27. All of these requirements will stay the same. The only change here will be the spouse is going to be required to complete one activity in which they can self-report into the liberal portal, whatever portal we have the time, and the premium discount is going to increase to $40.
So, that brings us to the end of the pay and benefits presentation. Just want to make sure if there are any other issues related to pay or benefits. We've got a full team in the room who can answer those. Uh, if none, we're happy to continue on.
Yeah. Councilman Caballero.
Thank you. This isn't based on the presentation, but this was based on, um, some conversations that we had at our budget retreats. There were a number of HR policies that were potentially being reviewed, including, um, our probationary period, length of probationary period, our, uh, I think it was like, how long our probationary period lasts, uh, when can you get medical leave, our, um, some of our drug policies to align better with state law. And one of my requests was to hire an outside consultant to do that analysis, and what we were told at the time was that HR was maybe doing that analysis. So, I would love an update on when we can expect, um, uh, that to be complete and when we can expect to have that conversation as a council. Thank you.
So, currently, we are reviewing our, um, our policies. They're going through the on-base, um, system, but to give you the specific data that you're asking about, I don't have a expected in for it to be done, but we will definitely come back and follow up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, also, it, it would be helpful for me to hear from council members, so it, it would not be normal practice for us to bring our policies for council's review. We're happy to do that at your request. If there are areas of interest that you'd like to have insight into, it'd be helpful for me to know. Otherwise, I know some of those policy reviews have been completed and are done. I was not aware there was an expectation that, that council wanted to review those. So, maybe offline from this conversation, if you guys want to tell us the types of questions you have, I'd be happy to daylight that for council and let you know where we're at.
Can I respond? Cause it was, thank you. Um, so, I think it was my request because we'd been hearing from workers in general, and so I had the question of what was the comparison to other, both private, um, private market or private, um, non-government entities and government around policies, um, not just with, with pay, we've done a lot around that, but it was around what are our, and I have a list of them, but folks had basically, it seems like our probationary periods are longer than they are in the private sector, um, and especially around like, you have to be here a year to access any medical leave or parental leave. Um, I think the other thing that was raised was marijuana use, um, and, and testing around that. Um, those are the three that I remember off the top of my head. I think there was a list of about six, and I can go back and, um, talk and see what, what we said at the retreat, but at the time, it was one of my budget requests was, do we need to hire an outside consultant to do this analysis? And what was at least indicated was that, no, we're going to do a lot of this internally. And so, I, I was expecting at some point to have a conversation around, uh, what that analysis, um, uh, indicated as, as are we, are we fair in comparison to other players? Uh, we, we look at market, but market isn't just that, it's also our, our, our policies, our HR policies and what we offer workers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Clarity. Um, on this part-time issue, could you give us a number, model for us, what it would look like if the performance-based increases for part-time employees were in the four to six range instead of 3%? What that would look like?
It would be significantly, um, higher. Um, I can't give you the specific number, but it would be significantly higher.
I understand. If you could give us that number, what that would cost? Yeah. And it, it won't be a range of four to six. It, that's a step plan, so we, it would, we would pick a number, and I think if, if your point is to make it commensurate with the step plan, it would, it would be 5%. Good, thank you.
I just wanted to add to, to the conversation with Council, Councilmember Caballero, in that if there's any way to document, I know, um, the "banned the box" conversation was where it started, but just figuring out where we are with our formerly Justice Involved folks and making sure that there are, there's some way to document that we are actually banning the box, um, just so, just acknowledging, folks are here.
Yep. We have banned the box, but I'll be happy to bring that policy for your review.
To the, to the part-time issue, um, I'd be interested in sort of painting the picture of who those 200-plus employees are, um, getting a little bit more information there. Um, and if, and I, I think coming back to the, the conversation about a balance and, um, is there, what are the options that are available to bring those part-time employees up in a more, in a, in a more fair way? Are, are there different scenarios that we can explore, um, to, to getting there and maybe it even, uh, happens over a couple of years and it's not something that's, that's immediate? So, just, um, thinking about, about how to balance what your concerns and the concerns that have been raised with, uh, my colleagues' concerns as well. Um, and then to, um, Councilmember Caballero's, uh, question about, um, about benefits, uh, leave, those kinds of things. I think the city is a leader, um, and, and should be a leader on, on things like parental leave where the, the private sector does such a horrid job of providing those kinds of things. Um, certainly the, the city and the county do, do much better. Um, pensions, those kinds of things, those are, those are benefits that, that just exceed the private sector. Um, I would second, um, the possibility of looking at, uh, the one-year, uh, wait for, for being eligible for parental leave and whether we can make folks eligible for that, um, you know, soon after they, they start with the city, and any other, any other little possibilities that there are to, to improve, um, benefits for, for, uh, city employees. Thank you.
Sure, we'll look into that.
Super minimal, but, um, just because we're having this conversation, something that Councilmember Caballero just stated, I have on my list of things to talk with, uh, the manager about, is the, um, drug testing panel in total, um, because it seems to be relatively outdated, especially if there are, um, there's a legal dispensary literally across the street from City Hall, um, and our tests are unable to show the difference between legal consumption of hemp or other weed. I don't know all of the different things, I'm, I'm speaking out of my, out of my league here, but we don't know the difference between the strains, which are legal and which are not legal. We can't test for the differences. Um, and so, it is a concern to me that we are still testing employees, um, and specifically for those things when we literally have a dispenser across the street. So, um, just something to put on everyone's radar.
I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with city attorney to go over that said policy.
Yeah, I, I concur. I think we should, uh, first off, if you drive a heavy truck, I want you tested, but, but I, I think we, we need to certainly look at, uh, um, perhaps better testing and, and our ability to distinguish, um, legal, uh, you know, to, to my colleague's point. But to be clear, I don't want to send the message that, you know, if you're, if you're a cop or you're operating a fire truck or, or, or you need to be tested. And, uh, so, anyway, thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
I just appreciate this balance. I was sitting over here feeling like I'm just drowning into the abyss, like, okay, so what about people with heavy machinery? It's like, coming to work stoned out and not being able to focus, I was getting so worried. But also, I'm glad we're banning, like, I'm glad I don't have to be tested, but I'm just, scratch that from the record. Um, but no, seriously, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm glad we're looking at modernizing this policy. Uh, I'm not a stone mayor, I promise, but we do need you modernized. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Durham is dope does not mean that, you know. Councilmember Freeman is like, will he please just stop? Oh, considering we're just talking about benefits and that sounded like somebody might need some, um, all right, JJ, we're on, we're on you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, pro tem. Is this coming through? Let me move that a little bit. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, pro tem, uh, members of council. Uh, my name is JJ Scott. Uh, in just a second, we're going to run through, uh, this year's CIP appropriation recommendations. All right. Many thanks to Matt for getting that running and keeping us smooth here. So, here's my clicker. Great. All right, so this is what we're going to talk about. First, I'm going to give you an overview of the whole process, um, broadly similar to what we've done in the past, but we've, of course, changed a few things and looking to change a few more, so we'll talk through that. Um, we're going to look at some of the project highlights this year. I think we have a lot of really great projects that we were able to fund, uh, and then briefly look at the entire list, uh, both our general projects, we also have our enterprise funds, um, and several other categories of projects. We do have, and I want to acknowledge, we have representatives from all of the project delivery departments here as well. Uh, it really takes a lot of work and coordination to put these recommendations together, uh, and so while the budget team and the finance team spend a lot of time, um, putting this all together, we really rely on the project delivery departments, um, to make sure that we are making the best recommendations. Uh, so first, uh, overview of the calendar, so we start way back in January with the annual process, um, so we get all those requests in. Uh, the scoring committee is very active in February, so we get presentations on, uh, every project, uh, proposal. Uh, and so, the, that team goes through a set of, um, criteria, and we're going to look at that in, uh, just a second, make sure that the scores are appropriate, uh, and then that really forms the basis for our prioritization. Uh, we plug all of that into a funding plan, which we're going to talk about, uh, again in more detail, did a lot of work on that this year. Come to the manager with a set of initial recommendations, do some more work, and now we are here with, uh, our, our final cut, um, for this part of the process, I'll say. So, just as a reminder, uh, CIP is a multi-year plan, uh, but we review it annually and we do annual appropriations. Uh, during last year's process, it did become clear to us that, well, our annual process was very rigorous, uh, we did have some room to improve on the multi-year planning. So, we, as we worked with finance and with our project delivery teams over the last year, we really decided that first, we needed to get that funding plan, that debt model right, um, so that we could be confident in our ability to pay for the projects that we were ultimately recommending. And so, we spent some significant time on that and then plugging projects in, see how it worked, running different scenarios. Um, so, we do recognize that we have that and we used it to build what you're about to see, um, but we do still have some work to do on the, all the projects that are ultimately included in, uh, the out-years of that. So, we have some assumptions that are built in, uh, and we feel good about those, but we really want to spend the next year, um, solidifying what we have on there and making sure that those are the right projects in the right sequence, uh, at the right cost. So, again, these are the prioritization factors, you've seen these several times, uh, we'd not make any major changes to this set of priorities for this year, um, and so you can run down that. Every project is scored against these prioritization factors, uh, and then validated by our scoring team. This year, however, there were a couple of things that we wanted to consider. We recognized that those factors didn't adequately capture this, and so some certain types of projects, uh, were not necessarily progressing, uh, and after several years of using a similar, um, a similar tool, um, it started to become an issue, and so we wanted to try to address that. So, one of the first things, uh, may seem fairly obvious, but we strongly prioritized existing projects over new projects. You're not going to see many brand-new projects, uh, in this year's list, and that's because we really wanted to strengthen that commitment. If it's something that we said we were going to do, we want to make sure that to the best of our ability, we're dedicating funding to those projects. Facility maintenance is another type of project that just, it just didn't score well in our existing criteria, and so a lot of really important maintenance projects kept falling off the list and not getting done. Um, you may have noticed a plethora of HVAC projects, uh, this is why. Like, those are very important, our facilities don't work right when those kinds of systems aren't working. Uh, so, we introduced a new technical review form, which helped us gather some additional information, um, the types of work that these things would need, evidence that there was urgency to get this type of work done, um, and then, so we use that and kind of layered that on top of the existing scoring, um, to, to evaluate the projects. We also had a mix of programs that we were dealing with. So, we had the bond, we've talked a lot about the bond, you'll see some bond-supported projects, uh, in here, uh, and then we also had the Equitable and Green Infrastructure Program running concurrently. And so, um, Mary Grace Stone King will do a whole presentation on that, uh, project, but there, that EGI program, uh, focuses on certain types of projects, and so when projects fit into there, they came off of the CIP, again, just opening up, uh, additional, uh, capacity there. And then I talked a little bit more about this updated multi-year funding plan, so, uh, what this really does for us is, um, I think it more accurately captures the total cost of projects, uh, and so a lot of the projects here, you're going to see the FY26 amount, but captured in that plan are, in most cases, the full costs of that, and then there are some projects that aren't even getting an FY26 appropriation, but we are reserving cap, capacity in out-years, uh, to complete those projects. I have a slide later, so we'll get to see some of those. But again, we wanted to make sure that the commitments that we are making, we can, we can uphold.
Can I just ask you what the format's going to be for that multi-year plan? Like, how will it be presented? How will we see it?
So, ultimately, we hope to be able to present to you, and I'm, I'm going to say "hope" because we don't have it yet, but we hope to be able to present you a, a real plan that lays out, um, this is when we would start a project, make progress, deliver a project here, subject to all kinds of, um, caveats, of course, um, but that is the, the vision, to be able to, um, as accurately and confidently as we can, um, give and confidently as we can, give people a real roadmap for what we're hoping to build. And we recognize.
Project by project. Project by project, timing, costs.
That's gold standard, yes.
Like a spreadsheet.
Like on a, like on a spreadsheet, yes, yes.
If the, if the folks who are better at this are listening, a visual is always super helpful, so we can see where things fall on timeline.
Yeah, so I didn't have this on a slide, but you've called us, we've talked several times about our new ERP. That's the, that's where we keep all our records, all our financial records. We are in the process of moving from our old one to a new one, so all the financial data is also going to be moved. And so what we have found is there are a lot of issues with the old ways that we used to, we used to have a viewer that was up, that was connected to the live financial data. A lot of that is breaking, and the decision has been made, we are going to wait until we get into that new ERP system, and then we really hope that we'll be able to build some really high-quality ways for, to communicate this, because there are real successes here, and I think we can do a better job of communicating some of those. So I'll stop talking, that was not part of my presentation, I'm sorry. So let's get to some of the highlights. This is what actually has been vetted. So parks, trails, recreation, you know, we have a large commitment to do lead remediation in the parks. Between last year and this year, that's gonna be $12 million, and we don't know where we're gonna end up, but that is, you know, it's not fancy and it's not fun, but that is important, and it is taking up capacity in that CIP. We have a significant additional appropriation for the rail trail, so we're hoping to get that moving. And then some updates on other facilities, these again, not always the flashiest things, but this is, these are the things that our residents really care about, and we hear a lot about. Transportation and infrastructure, again, lots of support through the bond for these types of projects, but also a lot of projects in the CIP, moving that Vision Zero, doing basic maintenance on our bridges. Mangum Roxborough, may have heard of that project, and so we have a commitment to that one. And then, of course, you know, school zones, trail crossings, again, the places where people really interact with our transportation system.
Yes.
Can I ask if the, if the school zone extends to the entire walk zone?
So this, this project, so there's essentially a list of projects, and I have a stack of papers here, I may not be able to dig up exactly which ones, but they prioritize these each year. Okay. Facility maintenance, so again, these are some of the projects that in the past may have fallen off the list, and so we prioritized some of these. We'll be looking at the list of projects in just a second, and you'll see right at the very top, there are some big and expensive projects here, and they just have, they have to get done. And so we were able to fit a lot of those in. And then our enterprise funds, of course. So water and sewer, this is a tremendous portion of the CIP. Of course, it's funded by our water debt model and those rates, I think you just had a presentation on that not too long ago. But stormwater also, you can see the picture of the South LRB Stormwater Restoration Project, so we have another appropriation recommended for that. And then environmental services, we're doing some work over on that campus with the reorg, that's now part of our formerly public works, now all environmental and street services, but we're gonna be doing some work over there. So this is a list that's split in half, these are our general capital, so this is what we pay for out of the debt fund. Again, this is the FY26 proposed appropriation. One thing that I want to point out, you saw in Christina's presentation earlier, we are, the manager's recommending an additional 0.52 cents towards our capacity, and so you will see projects highlighted in green. Those are projects that, in the last scenario that we ran, because we ran multiple scenarios, in the last scenario, these were projects that we were able to add back with that additional capacity.
Are we constructing an entirely new emergency operations center?
We are.
Durham County, Durham County is, and we are on the hook for our portion of that, plus, as part of that project, we are building the new backup 911 center, so we are, we both have an ILA that requires us to pay half the cost of the emergency operations function, because we share emergency management with the county, and then we are paying a portion of that that is building the backup 911 center.
I thought that number seemed a little low for a facility that we'd cram full of state-of-the-art and kind of, but that's good to know. Thank you.
It's 52%, I think, is the number.
This is Scott, just on the, the projects in green, so supported by the additional 0.52 cents in the tax rate. So as I recall from the earlier slides, now a penny gets us about seven or eight million? Is that correct?
6.9 million, yes.
6.9, so, but in green here, we got way more than 6.9 million.
We sure do, yeah. So this is all debt-funded, and so this is the.
Oh, this is the, this is not CIP, this is debt-funded.
Yeah, so we're not paying cash for these projects, so these will go into the debt fund, be paid over time, so the penny, the half penny.
Pay the debt.
Yep, it's just to pay the debt, yes.
The, I'm still learning about the emergency management center, so was this merging the 911 centers, or was it just a backup?
So the, the county currently has an emergency operations center, it's the, basically the department headquarters for emergency management, on the same parcel of land that the youth home is located. So first, the city is, is 50% responsible for capital expenses related to emergency management. They are replacing that function on the same piece of land, and we are responsible for that. At the same time, they were developing that project, the landlord, where we currently have our backup 911 center, which is Duke University, indicated they want to redevelop the property that houses the backup 911 center, so we needed to create a new backup 911 center. We felt like there was a good chance to do that in the EOC, and so they, we agreed with the county to add that to the scope of the project. Recently, the county has opened conversations around merging the sheriff's communication function with the city's 911 center, that's been an on-and-off topic for years. Obviously, that requires cooperation of the sheriff, county, and the city. We have indicated our willingness to, to have that conversation, but it is not, has not been decided yet that that is moving forward. If that happens, it would primarily be housed in the existing 911 center in police headquarters. However, the backup 911 center would be designed to accommodate both the sheriff and the city if needed. In the interim, the sheriff is also, has also planned to build their communication center in this same facility. That 100% of the cost of the building for that right now would be charged to the sheriff, therefore paid by the county. Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So this is just a continuation of the previous chart, and so you can see, we were really able to add a lot more projects in there with that additional 0.52 cents. All right, I'm gonna, sorry.
Sorry, can you just go back to the, is, I don't, I'm, I'm just catching up now, but the, is there a new transfer station?
There's not a new tran, this is maintenance on the transfer station.
Okay, because it says maintenance on the, okay, just making sure. There was not a new one. It wasn't clear from that slide.
There's some work that needed to be done there to renew permits. Yep, sorry.
And is fire station EMS station number 19, that's, that's planned, right? That's not, that's not maintenance, right? That's the plan.
That is not maintenance, no, that is, yes, that is to construct it, yes.
And what's the timeline for constructing that? Is that right away, or is that still to be determined?
I don't know. It is in design currently. Thank you, Steph.
So then 18 million there, so it's in design, so we're.
So this is part of our commitment to appropriate the cost for this project, so this is our anticipated cost for this fire station.
Design is far enough along for that to be a reliable estimate, if that's, if that's your question.
So design is far, so we would spend 18 million in the next year?
It, we, no, we would appropriate 18 million, which should be sufficient to complete the project.
Right, but not.
All, all capital appropriations can go beyond the fiscal year without needing to carry forward, so when we're, when we have a good estimate on the total lifespan of the cost, we put all of that money in the budget. Occasionally, we don't know what future phases will cost, so we may reserve capacity and only appropriate a small portion, but the majority of these projects that you see in here, the amount that is shown as the appropriation should be sufficient to complete the project.
And so then in FY27, that would not appear, that, it would be, would just appear in this?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a way to know, because some of these have federal dollars attached to them, thinking Durham Rail Trail, or, and I think the Woodcroft Parkway, because that's TPO money in there, is there a way to know that, so that we can have kind of like that risk assessment that, that Christina talked about earlier? Just to see what would be in the CIP, we lose funding from other sources, what, what does that do to the CIP? Because I think there's probably a number of projects, especially the transportation ones.
Yes, yeah, we can get that information together, yes. Okay. All right, so let's move through, so these are our enterprise funds, water and wastewater, again, some major, major projects there, a long time coming. Stormwater projects. Many of these familiar, many also routine. Fleet. IT governance, so just some, some major investments in IT that the city is committed to. This is just a list of equitable and green infrastructure projects, and again, Mary Grace is gonna get up and give a fuller presentation on that in just a second. And now, reserve future capacity. So again, I want to treat this as a very tentative list, this is what is currently in there, certain amounts are there, but we want to spend the next year really vetting the, these projects, are these the right projects? The amounts that are in there, the timing of when these projects could actually start, how that'll align with what we have, and then be able to present to you something that, you know, you can have some confidence in, some faith in, that these are the projects that we will be able to do over the next few years.
So consider this slide, sort of the, the, this first year's placeholder to get to the multi-year plan, Councilmember Cook, that you asked about earlier. We did, knowing that we have some future major expenditures in the CIP, it was important that when we modeled what could be funded this year, that we reserved capacity for projects that we knew were coming. Ultimately, what you see in front of you will grow into a complete list, or as complete as we can make it, of all the projects, but we did want to be transparent about some of these placeholders, especially ones that we know you get asked about. So we are reserving capacity for a future fire station build. Obviously, we know those conversations come up, is that in the CIP, is it not? This is your answer, which is we are reserving future capacity. Also, obviously, with all the conversation around Mangum Roxborough, that is, to your earlier question, Councilmember Rist, that is a project where we didn't know enough about the final costs, so the appropriation you have this year is for signalization, but we knew there would be additional costs, so we have reserved capacity, but we did not ask you to appropriate a number, because we don't have a good idea of what that number ought to be. So there's a mix of factors that go into this, that's why, you know, I think we wanted to be transparent about what this is and what it's not, but I also wanted to put an asterisk on this to let you know that I think in future years, this, this will provide you a more complete picture, and we're looking forward to getting that for you.
Thank you. Something I'd just like to throw in here, while we're looking at the future capacity stuff for my colleagues, is that we just got this presentation on the Central Park in Durham, which I think everyone was really thrilled by, and we have to talk about funding, that's another story, but as that and other projects in downtown are coming onboard, I want to hearken back to something that I think Councilmember Baker put in front of us at the budget retreat, which was a study of the downtown loop, and also some of these pieces of land that the city owns that are just not being efficiently utilized. So I know that we've got a presentation coming from DDI, I know they have a blueprint, but as we're kind of thinking about these projects that might come in the future, to me, the study of the downtown loop really like interacts with a lot of those things that are coming, and would help us use some land more efficiently, so that's something that I am gonna be pushing for, to just at least be considered in this, like, future capacity as a potential project in the future for funding, so I just wanted to point that out.
What, thanks. What's an economizer expansion, please? What is that?
I knew as soon as it came up that you were gonna ask that. I know it has to do with the facility, the new police headquarters, I might have to ask our general services staff to help me out on what the economizer is.
It has to do with the air coming into the mechanical room. Right now, it's just spilling into the mechanical room, and so the economizer makes up more efficiently, so it just doesn't dump in there. That was the way the existing design was.
So it has to do with air?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is that, it's that room where, like, you have to keep it at a certain temperature, or not, it overheats and shuts down, and we had it shut down one time and the entire power went out in the police station, something like that, I think. It was different, okay, never mind. All right.
I don't know, Phil, it sounds suspect, but I did also want to just, just point out for, for our neighbors and friends watching, that, that, that we have on there Fire Station 21 for the future, and I know sometimes when we get into land use debates, we talk about infrastructure and capacity, this is what planning for a growing city looks like. We don't build fire stations and then say, just in case people are coming. We build them based upon projections of growth and as folk come, and I know that sometimes as you're growing, there's discomfort. When you're sitting in traffic, to you, that's a capacity issue, you don't care whether or not the road can actually hold 10,000 more cars. If you're there at rush hour and you're stuck at a light, it's uncomfortable for you right then and there. Ergo, we have a capacity issue. But this is what it actually looks like for an entire city at the macro level, so, so we see there's a fire station right there, that we're planning on building in the future based upon projections of future growth. This is what it looks like, this is the sausage making, it's not always comfortable when you're in the growing period, but I think it's instructive to, to point out that we are thinking about these things, and they are on the radar, and we do know that we need infrastructure and growth, but, but these things work in tandem with folk coming. An empty fire station or a fire station with no people living in the area is not a good use of our resources. Sending buses out to where there are no people to get on the buses, not a good use of our resources. So it's uncomfortable sometimes, it's painful, but this is what it looks like in growing a city, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get a timeline or just an update? And maybe, maybe this is gonna be at another, another time, but the LRB Creek project?
Can give you a detailed timeline on that, but we can, we'll get you an update.
Okay, did you want to ask? Just to, to Councilmember Cook's point about the Mangum, Mangum Roxborough, yeah, we had, we had discussed the, the downtown loop, and there might be, there might be an opportunity here for us to, and I, I see that we have, we have Sean Egan transportation presentation later, to discuss the portion of the, the loop that meets Mangum Roxborough, that might be, that might be an appropriate time to, to discuss. And then I have a meeting set up with the city attorney's office to discuss the possibility of a municipal service district to help pay for these kinds of improvements that are more geographic-based, and where the, the, the benefits are, are concentrated in certain areas, so I will report back on, on that conversation once we have it. So, thank you.
Yeah, this was about the LRB Creek Stormwater. I know at some point when we were doing, I don't remember what year it was, but when we were having conversations, what, what is currently in the stormwater CIP, that isn't the full scope of the project, right? Like, I know there's certain tiers, kind of like the basic, basic, and then like the pretty stuff. Could we just get a little bit of update, like, what does that actually include? And I think maybe.
Now, or when Marvin's presenting? Okay, we're gonna get more information on the LRB Creek project.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, and I just wanted to touch back.
Thank you. And I just wanted to touch back. Fire Station 21 is a, is it a new station or a replacement?
I believe this would be a, a new.
A new station.
Station.
So is there any future planning occurring for the replacements of stations?
The, so you currently have, you have completed one replacement. We inherited Station 18 when we went through the city-county merger. We have built the new 18 and that is completed. Fire Station 19, which you see in this CIP, is a replacement of the second station we inherited from the county. And that is going to be built in Research Triangle Park. All, all future stations that are contemplated right now in the CIP are, are new builds. However, you just approved a contract for a facility study of the entire fleet, well, the entire inventory of fire stations, which will inform conversations about renovations and/or replacements of existing stations. The department, Fire Department has already developed an internal CIP sort of with in-house staff. And so they have some idea of which stations. Obviously, we still have stations from the era when we had combined city, fire and police, the public safety experiment from the late seventies, which we backed away from. And some of those stations were not built with the intention of housing staff overnight. And so they've had to be retrofitted for that purpose and therefore are highly constrained. So we do have a number of stations that will need to be rebuilt with time. The Fire Department, you, you funded a couple of years ago, a, a new piece of software they use that's very helpful in determining the correct location of stations based on call volume. So all of that data informs the CIP. As far as this particular request right now, the only, the only reserved capacity in the CIP is for this new built station.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate my colleague, kind of recovery, asking about the South Ellebee Creek restoration project. And it sounds like we'll get an update on that project. That's one we get a lot of questions about. The other one is the Durham rail trail. Are we going to get an update on the status of that in the timeline? Because it's also in the, in the CIP.
Henry Prossinger, General Services. What was the question, Councilmember?
The Durham rail trail. Like, just that, I don't know whether that's General Services or?
It is General Services. The project is about 65% in design right now. We just made our submittals, then C D O T, and then we'll be making our site plan submittal to our planning department. So it's squarely in design right now.
What's the long term? So what are we talking about in terms of actual delivery?
Going to go out to bid, I believe, in spring of 2026 with construction duration to be approximately 18 months with delivery around, I think, February, April of 2028, same timeline we presented in the past.
Right. I, I think that timeline's also, but I think it was 27, now it's 28. I mean, the timeline has sort of like gone out, right?
I think the construction duration remains the same. The project was looking for additional funds for design and that protracted the design schedule. So that, that was the, that accounts for the schedule changes. We asked for CIP money in last year for the design of the Gateway Plaza and some additional amenities along the trail. And then this year, CIP requests us for the construction of those amenities.
Also, there was, I, I understand there was an approval holdup with DOT regarding the Gateway Park project that involved the potential changes to the loop. DOT had to approve that. But as of the last project update we received from General Services, they, they felt like they had some opportunities to get, to make up time in the remaining schedule. So that, that was the, the cause of, another significant cause of the delay.
Yeah, appreciate that. And I, I just want to say for these high-profile projects, I think it's, you know, I think we're, with this proposed budget, we're asking our residents to dig deep again. So I think we need to continually think about how do we, how can we find ways to deliver things more quickly, more efficiently? So to, because our residents are, again, we're asking them to dig deep. We want to show them that we're sort of creating the value they want, the services and, and, and projects. I just want to, would love to look for ways we can kind of speed things up to deliver for people as we're asking them to dig deep.
Certainly. Here on that and also on the visibility piece, happy to provide project updates on a regular basis to council at your request. And we can daylight these types of delays and, and welcome your input and thoughts on how we can move past those.
All right. I don't have much to add about the bond. You've heard a lot about the bond, but would remiss to not use our beautiful logo at this opportunity. And so some of the projects that you saw particularly, I'm thinking of the street maintenance and the sidewalk maintenance is supported by the bond. So you saw a, a full funding amount. Some of that is bond, bond money there. And I'm sorry. We had some questions about South Ellebee Creek.
Yes. More Barbara Williams with the Public Works Department, soon to be environmental and street services. Ellebee Creek project is being broken up into two additional phases. Since we did put it out to bid earlier this year, we're not successful with getting bidders that came in much higher than the engineer's estimate, almost double the cost that we estimated for the project. So we're trying to separate out some of the earthwork from the remaining portions of the work. That'll be the amenities and more of the actual stormwater retention pond itself. So the first phase with the earthwork should be going to bid sometime this month or early next month. We'll see where bids come in and then from there, we'll move forward with the second phase of, or I guess technically would be the third phase of the project that will go to bid either later this year or early next spring. Hopefully, I answered your questions because I didn't hear it because I was walking down here as you were asking.
Thank you. Can you just, um, as we move forward to like if we actually, I, I understand why there was a delay, right? To Councilmember Rist's point, this is one of the projects that we get a lot of questions about because it has been fenced. And, you know, they're in that state for probably about five years now. When we get that, we get to move the dirt and that gets done. And then we get to do the other thing and that gets done. If we could just get brief updates so that folks can hear and we can say, yeah, we just got this update. This is what's happening. That would be really helpful. Thank you.
Yes, we can do that.
Wouldn't you expect a break around then?
Really depends on what type of prices come in through the bidding process. If we get favorable bids, we should be able to start work sometime this summer, early fall. If not, we'll have to reevaluate to see if we need to go back out for bids again for our third time. The problem is, construction is, construction right now is at an all-time high in this area. So there's a limited number of contractors available to do the work. So then when we do let projects for bids, we're getting really high prices, not just on this project, but every project that we're releasing for the bid process through the city.
If those bids come in too high and you got to go back out, please let us know. So we have visibility on that. Yeah.
Thank you. I just want to thank staff. I, I do want to, this is because we know residents are listening. This is like basically Raleigh's BRT project, which has now gone out to bid three times and they can't get their BRT project built. It's not just Durham. It's, we're seeing this across, you know, because I think residents sometimes think that we're just this island that where this isn't, other things aren't being affected. And so I'm just highlighting that we're seeing this with other important projects in other communities that are just getting stalled out because of the cost of construction. Thank you so much for the update.
Um, just, can you help me understand? So we, the bid came back too high. And when we put it back out for bid, we have shifted into phases?
Yeah, so we separated out utilities from earthwork. So it's two, two separate projects now, even though it's the same big overarching project, but two separate bid packages.
Is the idea then that we would have multiple bids for each thing and that would potentially lower the cost as opposed to one person, one company doing it all together?
Correct.
Okay. And then if it comes back a second time, will there be further changes in the bid structure? Do y'all change it every time you rebid or?
No, we just did it this time because we thought the way it was set up that it might have not encouraged a lot of companies to bid. So hopefully now it was by separating it, you'll get true utility contractors and more general contractors bidding on earthwork type work.
Um, just looking at the, the website for the, the project, it looks like there are two different websites. I think one is for under cultural and public art program. And then the other one is about the actual stormwater restoration project itself. And it, it looks like there, um, the last update was 2022. So maybe, maybe that's a good spot to, to put some, some updates and then we can just kind of find information there.
Yeah, that should not have been last updated in 2022. We pretty much keep the project websites up to date. So I'll find out why it's showing that date.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I usually ask this question just out of curiosity every year. Is it, is it more cost effective for us to have a, you know, enough manpower and equipment in-house to do these things? And to bid it out, considering bidding it out is always super high.
We are not a construction department. We are a maintenance department. So in order to staff up and buy the equipment that we would need and to find the skillset, it would take us years to do that, if ever. So that's why we use contractors for a lot of the work that we bid out. We, we're really good at doing the small maintenance type projects, but anything on a large scale, we're just not set up to do.
Yeah. I think that's why I'm asking. I'm documenting every time I ask this question so I can go back and reference and calculate how much we're paying out in bids. And then compare that to what it would actually cost to have our own equipment, to actually have a construction department to where we can control better our timeline as well as cost. Oh, something illegal?
Mr. Mayor, there's also statutory limitation as to how much work the city can actually do in a single project for capital improvements. So, and I don't remember what the cap is, but it's relatively low. So a big project like this, we would probably statutory, statutorily required to contract out and bid out the work. So that's an added limitation to our ability to, to do that kind of work.
So we are statutorily limited to just what we can do for ourselves. So we have to just, we, we're forced to spend more money than? Yeah. Okay. All right. Yeah.
This is not an Ellebee Creek question, so maybe JJ. And I didn't mean, if anybody else could get on Ellebee Creek. I just, I'm curious about whether, and I don't see it in the slide, although I'm sure that there are more in the future projects that y'all are thinking about besides the ones that you gave us today. We've seen two major Carolina theater investments the past couple of years. Do we have any more in the pipeline? Just curious about it.
Uh, in addition to what we have this year, because I know we have.
The roof. And then now we have the HVAC, which is costly. I love the Carolina Theater. Just curious if there are more coming down the pipeline.
Yeah, I don't know right now. But those are exactly the types of projects that we'll be looking at. Henry knows. Henry, Henry is gonna, Henry is gonna.
The only other project that we had submitted earlier was for the elevator replacement. So that was an upcoming project too, that we actually put, I think, in this year's CIP that wasn't made to the list.
Not as, not as big as the HVAC.
HVAC was 6.5, and I think the elevator replacement was like maybe 1.2.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
So as amply demonstrated here, I mean, it really does take a huge team to do this. Love the spreadsheets, love the financial piece, but really appreciate our departments, our project delivery departments who are out there. I mean, this is, this is really complicated, major, major projects. And so getting those delivered, it just, it, it takes a lot of work that I have a, a new appreciation for. My first year working on the, the capital side of things. And so again, appreciate all of your support. Looking forward to working on this for the next year. And if there are no more CIP questions, I'll turn it over to Mary Grace.
No question. I, I just want to, I, you know, plug a commercial here for the, the power of having a triple A bond rating and being able to float and leverage debt in a way like this to get these projects done. And I know sometimes we have our debates in isolation and we're talking about certain things and pursuing our values. But maintaining that, that bond rating has really put us in a position that we're envied by, by our peers, quite honestly, around the state and able to, able to do projects like this by leveraging debt and good credit rating. So thanks to the entire team. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for running such a tight ship.
Also, just a plug for the meetings that you actually have with the committee. When does that meet? Because it'd probably be great to drop in. I haven't been in a while.
Sure. So right now, the current model that we've been using, that team is active primarily in February. And so we get together, we consolidated it to four meetings this year. We have had discussions about, going back to, I know prior to COVID, there was a more ongoing committee that met more regularly. We don't currently have that functioning. But it is definitely something that we are considering.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to have my thanks to the finance team, Mr. Scott and your, your team. You know, there's so much that we're doing that you're managing. So I really appreciate that. I know that in the council, we come in for the budget retreat and sort of work sessions. But like you all are doing this 24/7. It's very reassuring that there's folks, a lot, a strong team that's kind of looking at this stuff and thinking about the future of our city. So again, thank you for that and appreciate all the work.
All right. Thank you so much.
As they're transitioning and we leave the CIP conversation, I did just want to not hide the fact that in this budget preparation, I, I don't think there's anywhere else in my proposed budget where I proposed a funding increase that wasn't somehow commensurate with direction the council specifically gave us in the budget retreats, except for this place in the CIP. I did, there is 0.52 additional pennies to fund project capacity. So I did, before we left the conversation, just wanted to make sure that that was noted, that in the, the overall amount above revenue neutral, this was essentially a discretionary recommendation on my part, I think, given the intense interest in the CIP. I think I read the, the room correctly on that one, but, but just wanted to make sure for the public that, that was spelled out here again.
Can everyone?
Attorney?
Not yet. Still after the bar.
But you now have a JD.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, since you last seen me, I graduated NCCU Law. So very excited, but even more excited today about EGI.
That's, that's a cool switch up. Good.
So first, I really want to start with gratitude, which I know JJ did a, a great job of thanking folks as well for their CIP. So I wanted to do the same for EGI. Really, without a lot of departments and staff dedicated time on top of their day-to-day work to make EGI happen, and it couldn't have happened without all of their support and work on this project. So I wanted to highlight especially some major departments and teams that helped, which are our Budget Management Services, both our budget team and folks with CIP, as well as participatory budgeting team, and our innovation team, Public Works, DPR, NIS, Transportation, Communications, Finance, Technology Solutions, and General Services. So these are folks who really helped design this year's program and also did on-the-ground work. So I really wanted to mention those departments. So I also want to remind you of our EGI FY 26 focus areas. These are census blocks that were chosen, five areas based on a scoring metric, matrix, which was built from factors of the climate and economic justice screening tool. And we also, since the last EGI, we also made sure they didn't overlap. We wanted to choose new areas since the last cycle. And we generally, because they're census blocks, obviously, they do not look like neighborhoods that usually our residents think of in Durham. We focused on engaging within those areas, but also a half-mile radius outside of those areas. And also looked at potential projects in a half-mile radius of those areas. Yep.
One question reminder. So like the EGI is all, is funded separately from all the other capital stuff, right? Since it's a portion of the sale, I'm sorry, property tax is funding.
So it's a half penny tax and, but also some of it is debt funded. So, um, because about, I believe it's around $2 million a year with the half penny around there. And we build it up over two years, but we also have to debt fund some of the projects. So it's, it's an and.
So some of them appear in the CIP then, or?
Yes.
They all, okay.
Thank you.
Christina Riordan. So you will see them on the CIP ordinance, but they are, and they are part of that. but they are, and they are part of that debt service fund tax rate that I showed you before. But it is a, so it is a portion of that penny that goes to the debt service fund, but we reserve that as separate to do these EGI projects. So Mary Grace mentioned that it was, you know, it's half a penny. So a penny being 6.9, it would be half of that. If you debt fund stuff, you obviously get, like we've talked about with the CIP projects, you get, you know, more money for that. But, and some of them are cash funded, depending on the finance helps to make that decision.
Thank you. So the moment you've been waiting for, drumroll? No, just kidding. FY26 engagement results. So I wanted to start first on what we did. So we had six EGI area events, and I've included a lot of photos of them because they were truly beautiful community events. We had a lot of residents who engaged with us and then stayed after and like made friends and played games with their families. We provided free food from a food truck and a lot of games and different activities, while some of our engagement, engagement folks from the city, but also some residents that helped us with engagement went around and talked to folks. So we had six of those. We had five collaborative events. So we were able to work with our budget team to go to community, a couple of community conversations that were in those areas that I mentioned earlier. We also worked with our transportation department as well and came to some of their engagement events. We did door-to-door canvassing for the events and passed out over 1,200 flyers over 10 different days. We also had 32 different City of Durham employees from across departments volunteer for canvassing and events. And an estimated around 200 City of Durham staff hours to direct canvassing. And that's not including the meetings and all of the other things. So what did that produce? We were able to engage 468 residents. This is about five times as many as we did last EGI, so really, really awesome. We engaged around 349 total in person across all the events we had. Then 75% of our surveys were completed on paper and then the other on an online tool. This one I'm really proud of because as we have mentioned, we really focus EGI on those neighborhoods. So we really try to reach people who have a strong connection in the areas. So through that, we were able to get around 66.5% of residents we engaged were living in one of those areas or within a half-mile of those areas. Additionally, wanted to show other demographic breakdowns that I feel are really, we really tried to target a lot of groups that are often unheard. So I feel like we did a really good job of getting a reflective demographic pool of folks from Durham in these neighborhoods. Additionally, with age, we were able for youth to get around 17%, which I was really proud of. I think Durham's population is around 20%, so pretty close there. We also wanted to make sure to represent our LGBTQ plus community and the demographics. And we had about 14% say yes. And again, woo, some of those are prefer, prefer not to answer. So the project recommendations. So to remind you again, I know earlier during the budget retreats, I mentioned how we are scoring and selecting projects. A majority of the score is a community input, so direct votes from residents, but we also look at environmental impact and as well as project readiness because we want projects that can be completed within or around for four years. So this is how our environmental scoring is. We have a lot of different factors based on what green infrastructure means, according to the EPA. And we scored those at high, medium, and low impacts and had very laid-out definitions of what that meant. And that went into the scoring tools. And of course, some projects could score around multiple areas. So our overall amount of recommended funds is a little under $6 million. You'll see there's variation among the different areas. Really, a lot of that is to do with the top projects. Each, for the scores, we chose the top three projects for each area. Yeah.
Sorry, could you go back to the previous slide? So, so a little bit unclear. So I was, so scoring was high for improving stormwater quality, medium for reducing locusts funding, low for capture water reuse. Those other categories, how would they?
So other, yeah, oh, sorry. That's just to show that each category would be from a high, medium, low scale. Sorry, that bit was confusing.
Okay, those are all the, so how do you, how do you prioritize those different, sort of those different factors?
Those factors are all weighted the same in one environmental section, which is weighted the 30%. So they're all given different scores based on that high, medium, low numerical scores and then added up for that one project. But they all can get out of three, so like one through three.
Oh, they all get for, for one project, for stormwater, you might get a high, medium, or low.
Yeah, or none, potentially, if that project does not impact stormwater. And again, we had very specific definitions and examples of what kind of projects would score high, medium, low.
Thank you.
So the high score would be 27, like.
Yeah, if you got, yeah.
And a low score would be zero.
So again, the variation was around because the scoring, we were able to choose with the amount of funds we had and worked with finance and budget, was the top three projects in each area. So to go through those projects, and we will be posting this on our webpage for EGI. So for East End and Rowena, constructing an ADA compliant bus stop, installing a mid-block crossing on East End, and then also removing, doing improvements to CR Woods Park, which also include some native planting and rain garden elements and others. For East.
H U T?
Where was that? Oh, gosh. I might have to call on Transportation to answer that. The A2T? Yes, that's what I thought it was. Okay, I want to make sure. The American Tobacco Trail. Oh, never mind. It means access to transit. We're there. And we'll, we'll change that for our other communications so folks know what it is. I appreciate that question. Thank you. Okay. For East Trinity and Avondale, Bay Hargrove Park. This one's also very exciting to just share a moment. That was one of our really well-attended events. We had it in Bay Hargrove Park. So a lot of folks were really passionate about that project in particular, around that, that park and was a really great event. So I'm excited that it was one of the top voted projects and scored projects. So a lot of this is around providing shade shelter as well as rainwater capture for plantings. Also, again, you'll see with EGI, because of the environmental definitions, we're trying to incorporate more green infrastructure. So Wox and Plaza would utilize carbon-cure concrete. Additionally, construction of an accessible, additional accessible ramps around Avondale and East Trinity Crossing, and then Madison Street drainage, improving some of the flooding issues on that street.
I have a, I have a quick question. On the Avondale, East Trinity Crossing, part of that project was also PB funded? Is that right?
I believe it, what part of it was, and they already had some work that was done in that area, but that came up again as needing even more improvement.
It's kind of like helping complete?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Highway 55 area, Unity Village Park. So you could see a lot of different improvements to that park. And again, including meadow plantings, improving pedestrian access and playground improvements and shade features. And then the NC 55 sidewalk gap. So designing, constructing a sidewalk connection starting along NC 55 north of Latitude to Riddle Road and Ann Croft Avenue sidewalk. So improving the safety there around those bus stops.
And then can I ask a question about the NC 55 sidewalk gap? Is there also, because there's another project, I mean, I might be wrong here, but it's TPO funded somewhere on Highway 55? Yeah, and so just, is that also again, to help complete the kind of arc of that project? I'm seeing nods back there. Sorry.
I will call on my Transportation.
Sorry, Bill Judge Transportation. The TPO-funded project would be north of Riddle, and it's a shared juice path. So this would be a sidewalk extension, basically south of that project to connect to some new development further south that's constructed sidewalk, going in a sidewalk gap.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. It would be really lovely to get some kind of images where, where like, because these are all pieces of different funding and, and really showing the community. Like, I really want to lift up what Manager Ferguson said a little while ago. We are putting a lot of money in CIP and we are delivering on a lot of projects. And I really want us to like own the wins, right? And really celebrate those wins. And so if folks could see those, you know, EGI helps fund this little bit, but then with this other thing, now you got a whole beautiful project. And I think residents would really appreciate seeing that. And I, and I also would love giant signs. I've said that so many times. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. And then Holloway North Elizabeth, so pedestrian safety upgrades at Elizabeth and Holloway. An on-street protected path under the railroad to existing sidewalks on Elizabeth. And then pedestrian safety at Taylor Street. And I believe that might be Elizabeth Street. I can't see right now. Thank you. Then MLK in Fayetteville, safety at Cook Road and MLK. So reconstruction of existing curb radii and concrete medians to reduce pedestrian crossing distances and provide refuge islands. Southern Boundaries Park, so this one is developing an entire new playground. There's currently not a playground at that park. And then also traffic calming, I believe it's, is it Cook Road? No? Yes. I think so. Sorry. Okay, I believe it's Cook Road. But I cannot see. There we go. Yeah, it's Cook Road. Okay. Right? There we go. Well, all right. And that, any other questions?
I actually don't have any questions. I just want to say that this looks awesome. And I want to echo what Councilmember Caballero said, like, these are huge wins. I was just thinking about that while we were looking through it. Folks ask us all the time for improvements, and a lot of these places are ones that we have gotten requests from. And obviously, the folks who are living there directly impacted by the lack of, I mean, some of these things like seem pretty obvious, but like shade, places to congregate that have shade, water recapture, these are really awesome things that we're doing. And y'all have done such an amazing job at engagement. So I would, I would echo what Councilmember Caballero said. It would be great to see just a visual where all these things are happening, but awesome. And thank you so much for all the work y'all put into this.
Thank you.
Answer the question.
Uh, so do we not have like an interactive map or anything online to?
So we usually put it in our CIP project tracker. I think we could make it a little more clear about which projects are EGI, and that's something we can work on. We have some other interactive maps about all the equity scores of every census block in Durham from our scoring matrix, where folks can kind of compare their neighborhoods to the ones selected. But I, I do think we need some better visibility of the ongoing projects, and that's something we can work on.
Thank you for your work. I would also add, having signs, physical signs out there showing what the City of Durham is, is doing with these folks taxed all, everybody's taxed. Our, our tax dollars goes a long way. And, you know, it's something you see a lot in Latin America. And it, it tells a story, you know? There's a lot of work happening. What is the, what is the city doing? What's the county doing? Thank you.
Just really, this is, I mean, you know, in Chicago, you literally had Mayor Daley's name on every single trash can. So. So I, we've said this a lot. I really want us to, to, we, we, we need to tell community and tell that story about how we're winning on their behalf, especially in this time. And staff works really, really hard. And I, this, this was a, this whole thing came about many, many years ago at this point, EGI. And this is a huge success story, and we really need to highlight how successful it's been.
So I look forward to seeing Mayor Williams on all of us. That's good for a Reddit post. All right.
Now, this is my commendation to staff. I remember Councilman Caballero, some years ago, Manager Ferguson, I think you gave us the initial presentation on this, if I'm not mistaken. We were talking about this bomb when it was all a dream. It was just a concept, and now to see, now to see it, you know, in my tradition, word becoming flesh, as it were, and to see actual projects. I, I do appreciate and sharing my colleague's celebration that, that not only city leaders, but the city administration is indeed responsive to the people's voices and are doing projects, particularly these that are directly reflective of engagement and asking folk what they want and that these things are going on. I would just ask that, remember this conversation as we have other conversations. And remember what we're doing collectively and what we are leaning on, leaning in together collectively as a whole, when we have some of our other discussions. This is a great, great project and great work, and it's important for our city. And yeah, put some signs up, definitely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I also want to also thank DCM Wimbush, who has also been a great leader and has guided a lot of this work as well. So I wanted to make sure I let her get some gratitude.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Lunch is being set up right now. So whenever you would like to recess and then come back or do a working lunch, however you'd like to do it. So it should be set up within the next 10 minutes or so, so.
We can keep, no, we don't want you to know. No, we have a lot of questions for you. We won't, we, we'll, we'll get started when lunch is set up. We'll take a break, recess, and get back to it.
Make sure they're working properly.
Good afternoon, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of council. My name is Sean Egan. I'm the Director of Transportation for the City. My name is Sean Egan. I'm the Director of Transportation for the city. I know you have a very full agenda, so I'll move quickly through this presentation. It's my honor today to represent more than ninety city employees in the department and more than two hundred Go Durham and Access Transit workers supported by this budget. Our mission in transportation is to provide and maintain a safe, equitable, inclusive and sustainable multimodal transportation system with high quality infrastructure to improve mobility and to offer everyone in Durham access to necessities and opportunities. Our work is led by two Assistant Directors. Bill Judge, who you just saw, manages infrastructure development, traffic operations and safety. While Evian Patterson manages our parking operations and mobility division that plans and oversees Go Durham Transit Services. Our Business Services Division led by Tom Devlin is responsible for developing this budget as well as the contracts agreements and many agenda items we bring before City Council. As part of the city's reorganization, three of our staff who are responsible for reviewing the transportation impacts of planned developments will move to the Planning and Development Department. The budget also includes three new positions to deliver bus rapid transit projects, starting with the Central Durham BRT. These three BRT positions are 100% funded by the Durham County Transit Plan and we are grateful to our partners for their support. We'll now move into the transit discussion with our review of fiscal year 2025 highlights. So looking back on the last year, we started out FY 2025 on a high note, welcoming US DOT Secretary Pete Buttigieg, Governor Roy Cooper, and US Representative Valerie Fushi to tour the Holloway Street Transit Corridor, following the announcement of a $12 million grant to fund improvements to bus stops and pedestrian safety. We were proud to have many of our bus operators who deliver essential services every day participate in that event. You can see them here.
This picture is AI apparently.
We're now nearing the 50% design level for the Holloway Street improvements. And we look forward to bidding construction in FY 2026. For our Go Durham Services, the Durham County Transit Plan funding enabled a major expansion in August of 2024, implementing a new crosstown connection on Route Six between the Duke VA Hospital and Duke Regional Hospital. We also restructured Routes One, Four and Nine in North Durham, doubling service frequency to Northern and Riverside High Schools and laying the foundation for 15-minute service on Routes Four and Nine in FY 2026. Click. We also recognize that not every transit need can be addressed by a 40-foot bus. So we revamped Durham's microtransit system that enables users in zones to request a ride to get to and from our transit network. We developed a new model to reduce costs while still enabling first and last mile connections. Also in October, we kept a close eye on ridership that has been building at a rapid pace, fueled by service increases funded by the Durham County Transit Plan, like the one implemented in August. With more than 650,000 trips in the month of October 2024, we broke our record from October 2017 by nearly 6%.
Sorry, 650,000 trips?
In the month.
Just the microtransit.
No, just, it's the whole bus system.
Okay. I was like, what in the world?
No, that would be amazing.
Okay, yes. Okay.
We would not be reducing costs if we, um, we're doing that. We're much more cost effective providing trips on the bus.
Yeah, okay. That's why.
Throughout the fall, we also worked with our partners at Durham County Triangle West Transportation Planning Organization and Go Triangle to secure the full funding needed for Durham Station. And we hosted our groundbreaking in December, construction on that project is now underway. We also completed testing on transit signal priority at 13 intersections on Fayetteville Street and began TSP operations. During our testing, TSP enabled a significant reduction in buses running two to five minutes late, boosting on-time performance and advancing the Durham County Transit Plan goal of improved service reliability. So here you can see some of our.
Sean, can you say more about how that works, the, the TSP?
So basically, the way that it works is if you've been on the bus, the bus pulls up to the traffic signal. There's a stop there. Everybody gets on and off. And then just as the last person gets on and the doors close, the light turns red. And then everyone sits at that cycle for a minute or two, waiting for it to turn green again. What TSP does is it sends a request to the traffic signal and says, can I get five more seconds of green? Maybe 10 more seconds of green time so that I can clear the intersection. And so we are able to improve on-time performance by implementing that technology at those 13 signalized intersections. So looking ahead to FY 2026, the budget continues fare-free service on Go Durham and Access through June of next year. And it includes funding for service expansions from the Durham County Transit Plan, including 10-minute service frequency along Holloway Street, a new crosstown route from the Village to North Carolina Central University and 15-minute service in North Durham on the Four and Nine. Also looking ahead, we're excited to advance Durham's first Bus Rapid Transit Project. The Regional FAST 2.0 Study led by NC DOT with funding support from the Durham County Transit Plan recommended the Central Durham BRT project connecting from the Village in East Durham, downtown and out to our largest employer at the Duke VA Hospital campus. In January, we kicked off our Level One feasibility analysis, evaluating routing alternatives and screening for fatal flaws. We're now at Level Two, evaluating alternatives against the Federal Transit Administration's Small Starts criteria for land use and economic development. As we begin FY 2026, we are prepared to put forward a preferred alignment comprised of the highest ranked segments from Level Two that are best suited for implementation and feasibility for small starts. Funding in the FY 2026 Durham County Transit Work Program. And this budget will enable us to add three staff and contract for consultant services to support project development activities and coordination with FTA.
Sean, real quick, is there going to be some kind of modification of lane markings for BRT? Or is, are we, are they going to have dedicated, their own dedicated lanes in the?
So we're looking at the places where we think dedicated lanes would offer the most benefit. So that's all part of the evaluation. Right now, we do have some red painted lanes around town for some segments. And so we're looking at the places where we think dedicated lanes can be accommodated as well as where they'll provide the most benefit. So stay tuned on that.
Is it, are, are we anticipating that wherever they're going to be, there will be some? It's just a matter of.
It's just where and for, yeah, and what, at what length?
Got you. Thank you.
So BRT is, you know, a dedicated bus line. So other than wherever those bus, dedicated bus lines might be, what, what would make it BRT other than those dedicated lanes?
The biggest thing is frequency. We're looking at potentially starting with a 10-minute frequency on the corridor and growing that service to five-minute frequency so that you walk out to the bus stop and you'll never look at a timetable again, because on average you'll be waiting less than three minutes for the bus to come. But we also want to see higher quality stations, particularly at major transfer centers like the Village. We want that to be a high-quality transfer experience at the Village and at the Duke VA campus. Both of those are very high riders, some of our highest ridership locations in the system. And so we, we're, we're looking at the quality of the infrastructure and the service with a real strong focus on frequent, reliable service that gets you where you're going quickly.
So considering where we are now, is there any, any consideration of how this plays with the rest of the triangle? In regards of the plans from the airport to like RTP and from East Durham to the center, like the mobility center.
Sure. So this was recommended as part of the, the NC DOT FAST study. That study is advancing an entire network. So this would be one leg in that broader network that would connect BRT systems across our entire region. But this was the one that the study recommended that we get started on. And then we moved through connecting our BRT with, with other BRTs across the region in the, the kind of vision laid out in that plan.
Did that study be considered a timeline of other studies that are happening?
It, it did. Uh, I think it's being updated right now to reflect the most recent developments on New Bern Avenue, for example. And there's still some uncertainty about the North-South BRT in Chapel Hill with the new administration conducting reviews of projects. So I think it's, it's hard to say right now how all of this will schedule out because there, there is considerable uncertainty about some of the early BRT projects.
And lastly, are we looking at potential other routes or BRT projects at the same time?
So we're supporting a Durham County-led effort to do a broader countywide plan that looks across the county and really across the region at a, at a broader network. But we didn't want to wait for that full vision plan to get started on what we thought was the most promising first line.
Okay. That, that's good to hear. Thank you. Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Regan. Isn't it also true that the original FAST study looked, was thinking about BRT from Duke all the way out to the airport down 70, right? Wouldn't that, and then we sort of like scaled back. But isn't that, wouldn't that be the potentially the next phase of the Holloway Street BRT to sort of like extend that service?
Right. So I mean, I think this alignment lends itself to extensions down US 70, for example, from the Village, but also down 50 and 501 from the Duke VA complex. So we really see this as a starter segment with great opportunities for extensions beyond this, once it's up and running.
When I, I'm glad, I know that as Councilmember Caballero and others have mentioned, I know Raleigh's had some delays in there. This is their New Bern BRT, right? This has been delayed. And Chapel Hill also was supposed to be getting going on the North-South. That's also been delayed. Is there any like value in having like a friendly competition in the triangle saying like, we're going to beat you all to BRT?
I think we've learned a lot of lessons from the challenges that we've seen from our partners in Raleigh and Chapel Hill. Some of the schedule impacts and cost impacts that they're seeing on New Bern Avenue have a lot to do with roadway widening. So we're looking at alternatives here that would not require roadway widening as a way to deliver the projects quickly and at a limited cost and then limited disruption to community and environmental impacts. So we're trying to take some of the lessons from those other projects and use those to design a project that can be planned and delivered quickly. Whether we can do that and open for service ahead of those other two, I think it's too soon to tell, but sure would be nice.
Mayor, I think you ought to make a friendly wager with Mayor Cal, Mayor Anderson, you know? Some kind of a, you know, if, if we get their first AOS, you know, I don't know what, really, a bunch of city of Oaks under a bunch of Oaks saplings or.
I sat on a stage with all of the Triangle leaders, mayors, um, some time ago. And everyone had something to do with Bus Rapid Transit already kicking off, except us. And I was new on council at the time and I was like, where's Durham? He said, yeah, that's why you're here. We're asking you, where's Durham? So I'm glad to see this happening. Now I'm sitting on Go Triangle and you guys have MPO work happening. There are, there is a lot of movement.
TPO.
TP, yeah, TPO, that's right. Um, I saw on my calendar, what is this? But yeah, there's a lot of movement happening around the Triangle. Go Triangle just to date, which is happening as of 28 minutes ago, just brought their new CEO in. Today's his first meeting and, um, we are finally about to be the regional connector, like we should be. So looking forward to how all of these things are going to play together.
All right. Well, as we discussed at the budget retreat in February, there is sufficient fund balance in the Transit Fund to support the projected deficit in FY 2026 without an increase above the revenue neutral rate. The property tax rate for transit has been 3.75 cents for the past six years. The budget before you proposes a 2.4 cents rate, which is the revenue neutral rate for the Transit Fund. As you can see in later years of the plan, significant adjustments to revenues and/or expenses will be needed in future years as fund balance will be substantially depleted next year. Here we see our major assumptions for revenues and expenditures, keeping Go Durham Bus and Access fare-free through June of 2026. Durham County Transit Plan funding is available for service expansions in East Durham and North Durham. And we do not expect additional support from our state or federal partners. We have cost escalation built into our bus operations contract and are currently soliciting a new contract for access that raises standards for on-time performance and customer service to respond to feedback from our riders. Both of these contracts, along with indirect costs paid to city departments for their support, will increase our cost structure in 2026. With the fund balance that we accumulated, thanks to federal COVID relief funding going away in FY 2026, we will face difficult choices in the next budget cycle as we continue our fleet renewal program without the benefit of competitive federal grants that supported bus purchases over the last several years. So with that, I'm going to move into parking.
We won't be getting, sure, Mr. Man, I'll yield. Getting to, uh, parking. How, how long do you? Totally spec, I'm asking you to speculate. How long do you anticipate we'll be able to do fare-free buses?
It's really a decision for council.
I'll, I'll take that. So that.
Without doing something different, maybe I should add that to the question.
The, so, you know, the, the intention of putting this as a discussion item back in your budget retreats was to hear council's long-term trajectory. And, and the long-term trajectory, I think we heard loud and clear, was keep, keep fare-free for the foreseeable future. It's part of why this presentation is back before you today, in part that last slide. I wanted to call attention to it and that is after this year, the fund balance is depleted. This will require a higher tax rate dedicated to transit to continue fare-free. I wanted to get some long-term direction from the council, which I think I received. So at this point, barring council giving me a different direction, I think it is foreseeable that a, another tax rate increase would be needed next year to support fare-free into the future. And I wanted to, to call that out now. We could have put that tax rate in this year, but the fund balance told us we did not need it. And so I didn't want to request the revenue before the fund required it. But I did want to highlight very clearly for council that this is not a sustainable tax rate going forward.
That actually leads to one of my questions, which I think Christina and I had talked about before. But I'm, I'm just curious to hear thoughts on it again. I understand the, the, the want to use all of the money that we have brought in from taxpayers and, and what that looks like. Is, are there negatives to depleting the fund first? And, and doing the kind of the trajectory that we're doing right now, which is raising the revenues after the fund is depleting as opposed to leaving some part in the fund? And can someone talk to me about, this might be, yeah, I see.
Philosophically, I would say no, and this is fairly consistent with how we manage our other funds. Some other funds are actually in deficit. So it, there's, there, the only purpose of raising the tax this year would be to, you know, to try and forward fund it. Or if you wanted to spend additional money from this fund, I wouldn't recommend raising it if we didn't have an expenditure in there. You know, the, the reason some funds go positive, you know, can, can have to do with the variables of their cost structure or the variables of their revenue structure. At this point, having eliminated fares, there's not a lot of variability on the revenue side. So now we're in a much better position to predict when it goes negative because we don't have a revenue source coming from, from the fare box that, that we have to predict. There's no more predicting on this side. So I, I'll, I'll look to Christina, if she has any more thoughts on sort of fund philosophy. And, and, but I think that's largely going to cover it.
Um, I clear, yes, Christina Riordan, and I think the city manager has expressed it well. But also this is, this is different than our general fund, which we talked about. Sean is going to talk to you a little bit about the parking fund, which is one of the funds that is in the negative. So our overall cash is strong in the city. This is a fund too, that had received a lot of federal COVID dollars. And so some of that, you know, surplus that you're seeing is stuff that has not been spent down from there as well too. So not necessarily, you know, XX tax dollars. So not necessarily, you know, XX tax dollars sitting in the fund, but some other in some other funding that we had that's available next year to support fare-free service.
Thank you. I just would like to add my support that I would I would like to continue to see fare-free in the future.
I've got a question. This may be your question, but I want to get back to Mayor Pretem's comment. So, you know, part of the goal of fare-free is to sort of make it easier for folks to get around, right? Part of it is increase ridership, right? So I guess I'm looking at like five, 10 years out. Is there is there a point where ridership maybe doubles from where it is today? Or so, I don't know. Is there a point at where at which it becomes, it makes sense to begin charging fares modestly once ridership is dramatically expanded? I'm just kind of curious what that looks like as we go way out. Or do we think of fare-free for like, you know, not just a short-term, but even longer-term future?
So right now.
What are like, what are the sort of like, what are the trade-offs there?
Right now, our bus system is primarily used by low-income riders. So 87% of our riders have incomes below $35,000 a year. I think as we introduce more and better options, we're gonna grow and broaden the demographics of our ridership. And maybe as we do that, and more folks are riding things like our BRT system, we'll get to a point where most of our riders are not low-income. And it makes sense to do what a lot of the large urban systems do, which was to bring back fare collection because in cities like New York and Washington DC and Boston, most of the riders are not low-income. So I I would love to see us get to a point where we've grown our ridership and we've broadened the demographics to a point where it really there's a there's a strong case to be made for fare collection because most of our riders are outside of that low-income group.
Just to that point, because I know this has come up a little bit with like Go Triangle and who uses Go Triangle versus who uses Go Durham. It would be great to see that. I think we've had these conversations. Councilmember Aris and I sit on the TPO. We've had some of these conversations in in meetings with you and your staff, Sean. But part of the difference is that demographic, like we have carve-outs for seniors. We have carve-outs for youth. We have carve-outs, right? So we wouldn't make the kind of money from users that you would see in other systems and to bring in fare boxes and all of these things. That cost analysis isn't to our benefit right now. So for folks who are like, well, you should bring back fares, it's it's not good for the system. The people who are often on our buses aren't folks who would be paying anyway, even if there were were a fare. And then I just want to really shout out the the Route to Riverside. My kid takes the bus a lot now. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, colleagues. And and I appreciate conversations about expanding ridership. Part of the way we can do it is folk like us riding the bus and 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 using it. It there's kind of an interesting dynamic. Some folk I talk to, part of the stigma that folk have about the bus system is because it's free, it must be something I don't want to ride. There are some folk, interestingly enough, who who would find it more attractive if there were a fare because in their mind, that's somehow some type of siphoning value. It kind of, it it raises the gate of of the rider. So I I would just encourage folk, everybody listening to, and listen, it can be, it takes some planning sometimes because of connectivity, because of having to go downtown. You know, if you want to go out to the mall rather than just driving straight, it it takes some planning sometimes. But I but for the folk who are interested and and want to see, you know, enjoy the the egalitarian nature of our transportation, like some other cities do, to make a plan and ride our buses, they're clean, they have Wi-Fi, and and they will get you there. So that that's my commercial for the buses. Shout out to all my people on the on the number two line. I asked about the the fare-free zone because, listen, as an elected official, it feels good to say fare-free buses, and I support it. But but I'm also interested, I don't I don't necessarily want to bequeath to some future council inevitably. You know, we get to say that it's fare-free, and we get the benefit of it. You're the council, however, that's gonna have to raise taxes or institute a fare. And I don't know, because I want to keep it fare-free. I mean, I don't know what the economic situation is gonna look like from from year to year. No, no one does. So if we if we're faced with a year where it's time to raise taxes to keep buses fare-free, but we've also had a terrible turn down in the economy, where we've got to raise other taxes and other things as well. Sometimes I wonder, is it better to kind of incrementally put ourselves, and this is for my colleagues, incrementally put ourselves in the position to keep it fare-free? Or do we wait to that moment, to Councilmember Cook's point, when fund balance is totally depleted and we have to raise taxes at that point to keep buses fare-free, not knowing what other reasons we might need to raise taxes that year? So again, it doesn't require any action now, but I too, I don't think as a person on this council who doesn't want to keep fare-free buses in perpetuity. But I I think we might want to start thinking about how to vector ourselves for the landing, prepare ourselves for that day, you know, when when we may have to raise taxes and not necessarily wait for the drop-dead day to do it. Again, no action required now, but just something to think about as we move forward. Thank you. Oh, one other question. Is um, is transit signal priority available in personal private vehicles? You don't have to answer that now. You can get back to me.
I, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thank, thank you for this work. I mean, this is, this is one of the most exciting realms, I think, and something that I'm most proud. I mean, we're expanding service, building faster service, and it's and it's fare-free, and a lot of cities can't say that. And that ticks so many boxes of of our goals. I mean, the ridership being being low-income, but just sustainability, equity. I mean, it covers everything. I mean, this is such a worthwhile investment for us to continue making. And I don't know what the future holds, but but if there's, you know, it hurts anytime we have to raise taxes. But this is one thing that that is that is worth raising taxes for and spending public dollars on. My, one of my questions that I have is, when when there were fares, there were companies that were buying in bulk, I guess you could say, or or giving us chunks for their employees?
Provided passes.
Yeah. What, how how much? What what are we losing there? And have we connected with those employers to get a payment in lieu of of what they were providing before?
So we have done some outreach. We're bringing in, I think it was around $300,000 a year. So that's about 1% of our operating costs. So but we have done some outreach to them. I think that's gonna be part of our work as we get ready for the next budget cycle, is to go to employers and then our government partners in the region and see what what they would be willing to contribute to help us keep the system fare-free, but also reduce the the deficit that we're looking ahead to in '27.
Thank you. We were one of those employers, by the way.
So I just add a little flavor to the conversation. This is why this is, this is a struggle that I have inside. It's like, you know, these great ideas cost a lot, and I'm willing to make that investment. I'm willing to support that or even promote it. But I I, this is why I always talk about the other things we can, you know, do to promote more revenue generation without just taxing people, which is why you hear me talk about festivals a lot, which is why you hear me talk about an innovation center that includes a convention center or more retail. This is why. So when people say, no, we don't need that, and yet also want to just make it way more expensive to live without generating other sources of revenue, this is why I talk about those things. So I I'm gonna be one of the folks that believes that transportation should be a basic right and we should always be able to get around. I know other people in the in the Triangle are starting to charge fares again. We're charging fares again at Go Triangle. But I I think that, you know, you know, getting around in and throughout our city should should not be a barrier, and I support that until it makes sense to start charging again. But I also hope that, you know, we get to start generating more revenue or diversify our revenue sources in other ways, in other means, so that it's not such a strain to have to have a have to, you know, think about even paying part-time employees a a self-imposed minimum wage or keeping buses free or or the other assets that we need in regards to capacity during growth and development. Government is not a for-profit entity where we have an item to sell to make more or make money. It is a balanced budget. So just wanted to make sure that's in there.
That'll move into the parking. So this will be mostly just refreshing the discussion we had at the Budget Retreat in February. Just some highlights since council updated the discount parking program in October last year. We've increased the number of permits issued from 23 in October to 63 this month. So low-income customers are benefiting from this change. We've also successfully implemented the Park Mobile system, offering customers more ways to pay. And you can see in this photo the lovely new paint job on our church street deck as our partners in General Services continue to rehabilitate our decks. Do you have a question?
When do we get Apple Pay activated on Park Mobile?
It's coming.
Okay, thank you. I struggled yesterday.
Here you can see a multi-year outlook for the Parking Fund with an estimated $2.25 million deficit in FY 2026, primarily driven by debt service costs as revenues remain mostly flat with no proposed parking rate increases. We continue to strengthen our partnerships with the Carolina Theater, Convention Center, and D-PAC and to explore additional revenue opportunities with our partners to grow utilization without raising parking rates. Our focus on capital rehabilitation as well as lighting improvements that began at Durham Center Deck yesterday will increase energy efficiency and improve the customer experience. And with that, I can take questions about.
We got any questions?
Um, I have a couple of questions. The first one, very random, but all the way back up to the three folks that are coming onboard for Bus Rapid Transit. When y'all talk about covering the cost of employees, is it just salary? Or is it salary and there's a an investment for benefits, too?
Yeah, so it's salary and fringe benefits.
Okay, cool. And then this is something on parking. I was just saying to the mayor that I also got stuck in a garage yesterday because I forgot my wallet on the way out the door. Not my normal standard, but here we are, getting married in 10 days, so I'm gonna blame it on that. So I do, I do, I'm excited to see an upgrade in the technology in parking. But I I just want to be really, really careful that we are not making inaccessible parking downtown for folks who do not have apps on their mobile phones. We have so many people and particularly groups of elderly folks who don't have access to those payment schemes. And so having the ability for folks to actually pay at a meter, I know it's ridiculous, but like, it's really necessary for a lot of folks. So just want to be really careful there to not be exclusionary in the method that we're taking those keys. And then I was curious about very specific question, but I know Durham Tech is doing some improvements. They're burying some power lines and and doing some street improvements on campus. And I was wondering if there was any conversation about in transit at Durham Tech while they're already in the process of burying those power lines and doing that construction? Great. Several of us have that question, so you look confused. Maybe it's a comeback to us with that answer.
It's it's the, so during, with some of their bond money, they're doing a lot of streetscape. And part of that is burying their lines or whatever. NCCU has done some work on Lawson. There is an opportunity. And also McDougal Terrace, that entire area is gonna be redone. Question is, Durham Tech is interested in seeing if we could be a participant in helping to help them with completing that corridor alongside your campus? And if there was any opportunity there? So I'd asked the manager about it earlier. I think there's some conversations about it, but yeah, that was an interest. Keith, don't use overly big words. All right, come back.
Good afternoon, everyone. Keith Chadwell, City Managers Office. In response to your question, we have been in deliberations with Durham Tech around that project. It came from a from a planning standpoint and a capital improvements planning standpoint. It came to us rather late with respect to options to respond quickly. However, we have not ceased in considering what options that might come available to us as quickly as possible in light of that situation. And it occurred as we've had some other conversations today because of inflationary costs to the overall project. The project itself that Durham Tech has is gonna be completed for the buildings and the verticality on on the property. That left a gap, a development gap for street improvements and related improvements such as that. I'm not certain about the specificity of the burying of the of the lines. That may be included, but we were approached.
There were two up, two updates that they're doing. One is the the low-income housing issue, I think you're talking about. They're doing a build and they were looking for.
The low-income housing is is a separate piece that would be handled through some community development considerations. Not quite ready to make a pronouncement on that, but I am optimistic that we'll be able to support that in in a future allocation and based on the timing of that project coming to fruition.
I'm talking specifically about the upgrades to Lawson Street. So I know there's two ongoing projects, but one is that they're burying the lines at East Lawson, and they're also updating their walkability, so they're gonna have more of a like fluid pedestrian pathway. But it's gonna cross Lawson twice. I mean, folks are already crossing Lawson. They're hoping to increase foot traffic on the campus. While they're already in construction burying the lines, my question is, can we do anything about traffic calming there? While they're already blocked off for construction, while there's already construction ongoing that would decrease our costs potentially? If this is on, this is a long-term project, a traffic calm, which I imagine it is because it's a pretty dangerous pedestrian crossing right now, and there's lots of people crossing. If it's on our long-term plan, like, can we, is there any way to move that up to match with their construction to decrease our costs at all? So that's that's the specific project I'm asking.
That's a dimension I'm not sure I'm familiar with in terms of the burying lines. That, you know, there was a request to support a total street improvement project. And in my understanding, that included the burying of the lines. The timing of their request certainly had some consideration of while there was a disruption, can we participate so that there's an efficiency realized about the amount of time it would take to deliver the project and all of that? And the timing of that was a very, very serious challenge for us. So I don't have, we don't have a ultimate answer for that. But we're we're looking for ways to be supportive of Durham Tech because they're in the partner to us.
And I just want to, you y'all are talking about the same project, so.
So I know there's two right there.
Yes, so they they have plans that they would like to implement. I know that those plans have some pedestrian safety elements to them. I think the initial framing that President Buxton had with the council was the possibility that maybe our Vision Zero dollars or other dollars might be brought to the project. It wasn't until last week that President Buxton made a a formal request of me to examine the possibilities. So to Keith's point, that was pretty late in the process for us to have immediate options available. That I met with DCM Chadwell yesterday and asked him to circle back with departments. He's already had conversations with him, and that's in process. So we'll we'll bring council options. Obviously, you have capacity, but we just showed you a a fully subscribed CIP. And so it may simply be a question of of trading a project, and and we would give council the opportunity to do that. But at this point, we don't have an immediate answer, other than we are trying to develop options to be responsive.
Thank you. Yeah, and and I would be curious to see if we were to not do it in this time, what it might cost in the future if there's added costs to not doing it immediately. I'd like to see that comparison, too. Be helpful for me. Thanks. Thank you. I didn't realize when you were saying that it was recent that it was last week because I had heard about that project several weeks ago, so, okay.
That was a refreshed request, that even at its inception, the request came very late in our planning.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Mr. Regan, so another question. So if you, look at that, the Parking Fund, the multi-year projection, right? And and you're saying there's no, at least for this year, no significant changes in revenue expenditures. So we're looking at about a $2.5 million appropriation from fund balance like in the next, for the next five years, right? So I'm just curious, again, sort of thinking long-term, like where, like, you know, as we, as we make, keep buses fare-free, expand ridership, we're investing in the CAP in more like bike routes, right?
keep buses fair free, expand ridership, we're investing in the CAP and more like bike routes, right? We're trying to get multimodal folks into different options other than cars, right? So that means we're trying to reduce the amount of car trips downtown, right? And the need for parking. So like, where do we, we got these parking garages, we gotta pay the debt loans we built. Like, where do we go with all that? Because long-term, we probably want less parking downtown, right? Because we want to have folks come there by other means. So like, where, like, where does this all go?
So again, I'll circle back to the budget retreat where we, we put some of those questions to council. And what I believe my takeaway from that conversation was, council was willing for us to have options on the table to repurpose some of our parking inventory. So I think there is a general understanding among staff that if we see opportunities that serve a public need or that, you know, may, you know, advance some important objective in Durham that would involve the possible repurposing, we, we will not close those conversations out without bringing them to council. I wouldn't say, I, I did not take that as immediate direction to begin a divestment plan. And if council wants us to do that, I would seek more direction around that, but certainly.
You mentioned center and a parking deck.
Well, I certainly think council left the door open for us to consider those. And so I, I think we consider that on the table, but there are not any immediate initiatives to evaluate disposition that, that are before us. So I, I would just say that door is open and if council wants to push us harder through that door, feel free to do so.
That's sort of a random question about our, our deck across the street. We, we had, we had intended some of the space to be leased out to businesses.
The new deck.
Yeah, I'm, do you have any, what is our, our posture on, on less ease? Are we at capacity? Do we have any more spaces? And is, does that revenue go to the parking fund or does it go to, where does, where does that money go to rent from that? And, and where are we in terms of occupancy?
So most of our available space is occupied. So we have salon lofts. For Mother's Day, I got my wife a box of sweets by Shada.
Powerful.
Yeah, so the macaroons there are excellent. I recommend them. She's my wife's big fan. So we, and then the Indian restaurant has changed names, but it's still at the corner there. So we are mostly leased up. We do still have some vacancies. The funding for, or the revenues from those leases, those are managed by General Services. The revenues do come back to the parking fund, but they have to be net of the cost of improvements, tenant requested improvements. So it ends up not being a significant in this sort of scale of the parking fund. It's not a significant revenue driver, but it does, you know, activate our downtown.
How, tenant requested improvements, those, those aren't like ongoing, right? Don't, don't we usually accrue those or, or incur those?
Upfront, yeah, as they move in, but it takes a little while to recoup enough revenues, typically years before you're ahead of the, the cost of those tenant requested improvements.
So what, what, what would you say the percentage of space is occupied and what's free?
I'd, I'd have to work with General Services on getting the, getting the figures on that. But I would say most.
Sure.
And we occupy it with our staff as well, so we use a portion of it for our parking division staff.
Got you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, we will recess and grab lunch and if we can, let's come back and have a working lunch. We're almost there. One, two, two more, yeah, two more presentations. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
On you. Colleagues, I do have to step away for a minute. I'll be right back.
I'm clerk. I'll have to gavel momentarily.
And can everyone hear me? Okay, great. Good afternoon, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tim Middleton, Members of Council, Manager Ferguson, Wade Walcott with Parks and Recreation Department. Want to continue the, the theme of gratitude and thanks sincerely to, I, I'm not envious of your position. I'm not envious of the manager's position. I'm not envious of the Budget Director's position or JJ's position with budget, but genuinely thank them for all the hard work that they're doing. They can't make everybody happy. They're trying their best, but it's a tough position and we all have a million and one reasons why we want the things we want. So appreciate all the work that you guys do for that. This presentation is to go over primarily our Half Penny Fund and provide some information on that. Starting off, it's, you see our org chart here. Part of this year's proposed budget includes the addition of six full-time employees. I will say out of the current 136, we actually have less than 10 vacancies right now. And each of those vacancies are likely in some level of the hiring process or screening process. So we're, we're lucky to not have vacancies very, very long. You can see the, the biggest portion of our budget increase is going to relate directly to the proposed Half Penny increase. And so to get right into it, the history of the Half Penny, starting off, originally proposed around 2015. It was, the intent was to make some really quick, noticeable and impactful changes that the community could see in terms of the park's infrastructure. Oftentimes it was playgrounds and sidewalks and restrooms. Things that could, we could have money injected quickly and make noticeable improvements for our community. There was also some guidance there that Half Penny would be used for maintenance and repairs and not of new recreation or new construction. And it was encouraged to spend that money in one year and that the project should be less than $100,000. That has gone, made a huge impact for Durham. And I know there's many people in this room that were part of making that happen originally. And there's other people like Mayor Schul that was a big part of it, even from his days of being on our Recreation Advisory Commission liaison. So we, and of course, the community are extremely grateful for that foresight to make this happen, to make these improvements. Since 2015, a few things have changed in our community and in our environment. One being, of course, the cost to do business. And so with the guidance of projects less than $100,000, that has become increasingly more difficult, especially with the projects that we're working on, like restrooms, playgrounds and, and infrastructure costs. There's also the amount of projects and the, the capacity that we have available to do those projects ourselves or even to have project managers manage the contracts, the contractual workers that do these projects. So those are just some of the, the challenges that we're having. We, DPR does have one project manager. So when there's work that needs to be done, like resurfacing, maybe tenants. So when there's work that needs to be done, like, um, resurfacing, maybe tennis courts. That one project manager takes on that role of putting together a bid package together. Um, advertising, interviewing, selecting the firm and then awarding it to the firm. And then managing that firm and, and to do the work. And that's just for one project. Uh, so there has been a capacity issue. Uh, we're grateful for the work the General Services does for, for us in terms of project managers. And since we are their largest client with 60% of their work is DPR, we know they're stretched thin too with their project managers. And again, we are grateful for the, um, contract work that they have now with Turner, Townsend, Hiri as additional project managers. So, um, additional funding is extremely appreciated and makes a big difference. Um, it is also a big problem in terms of capacity of getting these projects done and managed. And you can see on the screen right here, this is in construction right now. This is at Sherwood Park. Brand new playground, um, that's coming online here shortly. Uh, I think in August we'll look to have a grand opening. With all these great things, I, I do want to point out all the work we're doing at Sherwood Park with this playground. Um, new pickleball courts, lights, um, we're looking to light the multipurpose field for other activities. And while all this goes on, we still deal with time to time vandalism. And so some folks came in and damaged that beautiful play surface there. And so we're going to have to, uh, deal with that shortly. Uh, the overview here shows our current amount in the half penny. And what, and I think Christina went over this earlier, what a revenue neutral version would look like for the half penny and what that increase is. And then of course, the full value of the half penny would be an increase of $1.3 million. So what do we do with that additional funding? A lot of it is, uh, what I mentioned earlier, uh, and then things you see in these playgrounds here. The things that make impactful and noticeable differences in the people's lives and in their neighborhoods. You can see the entrance and CR wood, a new paved, uh, portion of getting into the park. You also see our huge efforts over the last four to five years of beautification in our parks. Of native species and low-maintenance landscaping that goes in at our parks. Um, you can see in the middle there, that's, I believe, uh, Lakeview Park. New trash can, doesn't have anybody's names or titles on that trash can, but does say DPR. But you can see the improvements of the basketball courts and even on the right. The type of work and the type of fixes that occur thanks to the half penny funding. And you can see, um, I'm not sure if you can see it on your screens with the closed captioning, but you can see other examples of the types of work that the half penny produces and that we plan to produce, uh, with this increase. With half penny now, and as proposed, that also covers a portion of salaries for the folks on our team that do the work. And right now, the percentage breakdown with our current level of funding is around 50%, 53% there. Um, and 47%, 53% for personnel. So this covers the, the salaries for the folks that are doing the work in all these parks and making the fixes and doing the landscape work, et cetera. And then nearly half of it is to the actual supplies, repairs, projects for deferred maintenance or contractual work. That's the same percentage as it is now.
Our slide says 47% personnel.
Okay.
Is it fit?
It should be, it should be, uh, on the big screen. I believe that's correct. I believe so.
Okay, ours, okay, thanks.
So those are the differences. And so with a six, uh, proposed, six employees, uh, added on to this, you can see there's three for a small construction project. Um, one for a, a person that's able to do some of the small fixes and water fountain repairs and things like that and trail crews. The small construction projects is really important to us. Right now, we have extremely talented men and women on our team that can do a lot of these, uh, repairs in our parks. However, sometimes their day-to-day jobs might be doing litter pickup and mowing and doing other projects. And so when a repair project comes up, we usually have to pull them off their, uh, day-to-day duties and go to this project. Adding this will help keep things and keep all other work on track. So that's, that's one example of some of the things that will be beneficial to have. There are other things like, uh, drainage solutions. Uh, for example, there may be a tennis court, a project that we need to repair. And so we're going to contract out for, uh, the tennis court resurfacing, but maybe a behind the scenes issue or bigger issue is how that is draining or the drainage around that. So sometimes our team can come in and work on that separately while a contractor is working on the actual surface of it. This is also, these folks will take care of some of our gravel drives like at Twin Lakes Park. Um, making sure that's smoothed out more for people to get in and out of it. Um, and again, it's a lot of our, some of our clearing. So it's crime prevention through environmental design, SEPTED concepts. Where we can go into parks and remove a lot of invasive vegetation and clear up sightlines. And so now it's a more, um, welcome and opening space. Not just for residents to come and enjoy, uh, their time at a park, but also for the safety of our, our folks that are maintaining those parks. So those are some benefits of the staff. And you can see some of these pictures here of the type of work they do day in and day out. Um, they really get, you know, shoulder deep into their work. Outside of half penny, other operating budget highlights. Uh, one of the things we're excited about is increasing some of our, uh, budget for some of our special events and programming. And you'll notice that it's, this is non-reoccurring. And again, I want to thank Christina and her team for trying to put so much together in one budget, one year. It was really tough to get everything that everybody wanted. Uh, my only concern is this non-reoccurring, this is for one year. So this will be an improvement, enhancement and more funding for Bembe. Um, it's also for our senior holiday dance and some of our concerts and movies. Um, we hope that this will be reoccurring next year. And so we will have this funding again. Because we'd hate to be able to expand a program or an event one year and then have to pull back. And it makes it a little difficult for us in terms of planning. However, um, the senior holiday dance, I think all of you may have received a phone call once or twice a year of folks being upset that we're sold out. Uh, last year we sold 700 tickets in about two and a half days. So we sell out. And so an increase in our budget for this allows us to do an RFP, to find maybe a larger venue. But also to increase our budget that we can increase more people coming into this event as well. So those are some examples and ideas that, that we're looking at here.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Bembe is a non-recurring event?
We, no, we get a budget every single year. This year we added for an increase to that. And that was approved for this year.
Okay.
Correct.
But it has to do with how we account for when we, we have some one-time funding that may be available, but we don't have something built into our base model. It's a way of being able to say yes to something that we'd like to be able to say law, yes to long-term, but we don't have the long-term funding available. So the department would have to request this in next year's budget. Obviously these events are near and dear to all of our hearts. And so I think there'll be a strong effort to try and fund it, but as of this year's budget, this is one-time funding for the expansion of these events, not for the base event.
So do the base events themselves, are those recurring?
Yes. We have an, we have a budget for each of those events ongoing. This was an ask, as the manager said, an ask for additional funds to expand those and say, yes, we have it this year. And as many in this room know, it is, uh, these events, of course, whether it's a senior holiday party or a thing we, a little thing called Bembe, it's a lot of work. And the picture on the bottom left is from this year's Bembe at the end. Uh, yeah, Kristen swore me that it never showed this to anybody. So of course I honor her request, but this is after her and Kirk are, are pulling, yeah, pulling in all the trash cans and recycle cans from the night at about 10:30 at night. So we put our heart and souls into, into everything we do. And as a result, in the middle picture there, you can see all the folks that like to come out and, and have a good time. And I know some of you were able to make it this year and saw that firsthand. So we appreciate everyone's support.
It was outstanding.
Addition to, um, our half penny and some highlights for our operating budget. There's our, our CIP budget this year that we have submitted and are, are really excited about. Uh, you can see these are, are bigger projects and a lot of these are, we're continuing to make huge dramatic transformations in our parks. Uh, the picture here is, is the new CR wood playground. Um, I, I believe by the end of this year, that project will be, will be done. In terms of playgrounds, it's not just, you know, seesaws and swing sets that we all grew up with and, uh, twisty slides. Or metal slides that you got third degree burns on in the summer. We also have, yeah, they made us tough. It's a generation X, right? We also are very cognizant and intentional with making sure we're doing everything we can to make these more inclusive and accessible. And so this, there's an element here to the right on the screen. That is a rocker, a sliding side that you, if you needed to, um, have a chair to be mobile, move around, you could participate that with, with everybody. We also see in this picture that there is shade structures that we incorporate in our playgrounds and almost all of them. And then that surface, we're moving past our, our playground mulch where we can to do this surface that it makes it easier for everyone to, to move around. So those are the, that's the transition that we're making in a lot of our playgrounds. What we're not, we're also not focusing just on the playgrounds is while we're there through CIP, through half penny, which can supplement some of these playground projects, um, and Eco Green Infrastructure Fund. We're trying to do as much good as we can at once at a park. So it's the playgrounds, the restrooms, it's the shelters. It's to transform the neighborhood's playground and make neighborhood park because we know that's a place where culture is strengthened and community is built. So that, that is what we're about. That is what these CIP projects are about. And you can see the list here of this continuing light items in this fund that we're making improvements for. Any questions?
No expansion of wheels, is that planned yet or is that coming?
Uh, no expansion on the books yet for roller skating. Uh, we're going to keep moving forward across the street with a second phase of Merrick Moore Park with a playground and restroom there. And of course, uh, you all approved a contract for the designer and general contractor for the bond project out there. So it's, it's going to be an amazing, even more amazing space than it is already. So transitioning, um, from half penny operating budget and CIP. A bit of an update for our landfill parks program, also known as our pre-regulatory landfill parks. Um, there's four parks that are on the sites of former incinerators. And a fifth park, North Gate, that receives some of the soil from, I don't remember which park on that. So this started maybe almost two years ago, I believe. Um, when we started to work and find that more out about this issue and the situation. So from the very beginning, um, when we got consultants involved, Mid-Atlantic Associates. And then we turned it over to the state and we were entered into the pre-regulatory landfill program, which the state and their resources have been doing all the analysis and studies, um, since then. While we've been doing that, we've formed a community working group that we communicate with multiple times a month and oftentimes do meetings and plan these meetings together, whether they're in person or hybrid or just virtually. So we continue all that work along with our project website that updates the public on everything that we're doing. Um, and any update that we get from the state, we review with the state, we analyze that, we break that down. We make the whole report accessible to the community, as is the raw data. And then we try to break it down in a user-friendly readable format, maybe a one-page summary. And so having that all available, and that's what one of the images here is just an example from, uh, a March, uh, update, uh, one cheater. And the image on the right are just some of the signs that we have out in these parks. So as of today, we do have $5 million, uh, previously awarded to us, um, for these parks. And in a CIP request this year, I think you heard earlier today, $7 million. So a total of $12 million potentially available. What informed me to make those dollar amount requests was a previous, uh, estimate by the state. And saying if we looked at all the parks with the data that they had in place at that time and looked at what, um, the solutions would be, they estimated $10 million. And they said very clearly, that number will change. This is the information we have on hand. So I requested $12 million. Um, yes, that is above 10. Um, we very rarely over budget and with the trends, the way they are, wanted to make sure we had enough funding. And this likely won't be enough funding to cover everything and every solution that we have. But here's what it will do. Come. Let's see here, here we go. I'd say by June, we're going to get back, uh, more information and data from reports. And that information, that data will be the last bit of testing that the state needs to undertake and provide. And that testing going kind of reverse order on the screen here will include, uh, probes to check out surface water, above-ground vapor, landfill gas and groundwater monitoring will begin this month. We believe sometime in June, we'll start to get some initial results of all that information. Previously in April, one of the, um, bigger reports that we received and have shared publicly since then. Uh, the last work was to understand where the waste delineation is, those borders. And what that gave us in the community is an understanding of the borders of where the waste, uh, would expand. And again, waste, we're not talking about, it's just lead. The state has looked through, um, or has tested for a lot of different chemicals and volatile compounds, um, including lead. But waste also includes things you would typically consider, um, like plastic, brick, construction material. So with these reports, we now know that where the borders are, and we also get an idea of the thickness of the waste, uh, at these sites. That allows us to make better informed decisions moving forward. It also informs the state if they believe some of that waste may extend beyond the border or the parcel. And so what the state does next is where they, wherever they see that border. Um, and if it goes into private property next, they develop letters and contact those residents informing them of, uh, of this potential and that they would like to enter, uh, their property to do tests. Now for questions about that and what the state does, I would strongly, uh, I'd refer for you and I can give you contact information to the state. We have provided the residents and our working group, uh, direct connection with DEQ to talk about that. The, uh, working group of the residents are meeting tonight, um, with DEQ to talk about, amongst other things, that specific, um, detail. And we've also provided a frequently asked question, uh, for residents to, to look at too, if they'd like to learn more about that. So what we know is as far, it's been, these parks have operated at these sites for at least 70 years. So we know most of these parks were designed and developed and, and opened up in 1950. And prior to that, and I, I'm not clear yet how long they operated as waste incinerators. Um, but they, they've been parked since 1950. We, once we became aware a couple Junes ago, we worked with the right people in terms of health experts, of environmental experts in the state entered the program. And we're getting as much data as we can to begin to make informed decisions. What I anticipate next, like I said, was in June, getting those reports back, sharing those with the community, receiving feedback. And then start making recommendations for what our steps, uh, to move forward would be. There may be opportunities, we just don't know yet until we get some of that testing back from May. There may be opportunities, and this is why there's CIP funding, that there may be portions of a particular park that, um, we may be able to relocate shelters or playgrounds or amenities to. Don't know that for sure, but that's, that's the idea and that's the plan. So we hope by, by June, we'll have some, um, solid information that we can begin making some recommendations and, and changes.
Um, I think that was really great. You actually answered a lot of the questions I had, but on to that last point of there might be possibilities for us to move things within the parks. Um, also I'm thinking about like just reopening some of the parks based on the, the study.
Would you pull your mic a little closer to you, please?
Okay, um. It is. I understand that we did the 12 million based on the $10 million estimate. Was that estimate just for? Was that estimate just for testing and remediation or did it include also like? I guess my question is, do we have part of this money set aside to do the immediate fixes outside of the remediation? If we're able to move part, the, some of the park pieces elsewhere so they can be used immediately, or if we're able to reopen with minor upgrades? Is part of that 12 million set aside for some of that too, or is that just set aside for remediation? And we would have to fund the other things through the rest of our general, of our park?
The intent, and I think even the language in this CIP and the last CIP was to have it available to do whatever we needed to do. Right? So I think some of it says, construction, demo, soil. It's, what we want to have is when we get all the data and we can make an informed decision. If some of those informed decisions can be quote unquote, quick fixes, now we've got funding to do some of those things. As opposed to just now, you know, waiting on the results and now next cycle saying, hey, we'd like to make this funding request. So we try to be as proactive as possible.
Director, were you finished? Were you at the end of your presentation? Okay, all right. Not at all. Thanks so much for the call, colleagues. I'll go around the desk.
A lot more questions. I was just asking, just asking parks question or lead and parks questions. Okay. I saw that they're in there, but I just want to make sure for folks who have been asking about it. Can you talk a little bit about the court maintenance money that was put into the budget? What's in there now for tennis courts specifically and the parks that will be impacted?
Could you ask that again?
So I'm, I'm thinking specifically about the courts at Elmira, but I know that the, yeah, that the CIP request was for more than that. So can you just talk a little bit about that CIP request, just to put a record on it one more time?
The court improvement for CIP is an ongoing request because we have a lot of courts and fields that need improvement. And there are many that are still underway right now. This year's request will include Elmira tennis courts, I believe Rock Quarry tennis carts, courts and Marine Road basketball courts.
And and we don't have a sense between the three of those parks, how that money will be allocated?
Not yet.
Okay.
We are working, fingers crossed. There might be a public private partnership opportunity for Marine Road Basketball Courts. And if that comes to fruition, then therefore we'd have a little savings there that could, if needed be, we could look at Elmira and Rock Quarry if there was an.
That was that we had, we had funding. That funding's not secured as of yet. The Marine Road, their Marine.
We're asking, we're asking for that in the CIP, this court. So Marine Road Basketball Courts, Elmira and Rock Quarry.
I thought the external funding for Marine was was secured.
Not secured, yeah, we've, yeah. This will help with that if it's approved.
Can you, you had mentioned this briefly, but can you talk again about the interaction between Park Fund and the EGI work? It's like, I know that they had, for example, at South Boundaries, they're building a whole new playground. What it, can you just talk about where that money comes from and how y'all interact with EGI on those park improvements? They also had several like shelter shelters at parks in several neighborhoods.
So Mayor Grace was talking about EGI earlier, right? And so they had certain focused areas, I believe, in the city. And based on those focused areas, we narrowed down, say, what parks do we have in this focus areas? And based on those parks, we are able to take a look at our inventory of our infrastructure, for lack of a better description, and say, you know, what are some improvements that are needed or additions there? And so based on Mayor Grace's work with the community and getting that input and feedback and knowing what repairs or improvements we need to make, we recommend those those changes. And so, right, for Southern Boundaries, you mentioned there's a need for a playground there. I believe there's a request for additional basketball courts as well. So that's part of what we'll look, look at doing.
Well, some of it, I know that maybe the South Boundaries one isn't a good example because that's a whole new playground. But for some of the other repairs, like will that money come out of the HalfPenny for parks? Or is it solely coming out of?
EGI. So the, the, the dollars identified for the Eco Green Infrastructure improved projects are coming out of that particular fund. Depending on what that project is, we oftentimes, we may have opportunities that we can sup, if there's like added additional expenses needed that won't cover an EGI. If it's a repair or a maintenance issue, the extra money in the, or the increase in HalfPenny could help supplement those projects.
I'm just gonna, sorry. I just want to add real quick too, we had a lot of participation on our EGI team from our Parks Department. So we had a lot of those conversations. And again, like Wade is is saying, we, for instance, with CR Woods, some of that was previous EGI project. And we engaged more with those residents and found out there was still some gaps missing. And so with this EGI, that was one of the requests that went forward. So we work really closely with them to make sure that that works. But yes, those come directly from EGI.
Thank you.
And that, and that goes back to looking at the whole park again, like I mentioned earlier. And I can't wait when we have the ribbon cutting and grand opening to see all of you at CR Wood because it's going to be something that you're all going to want to brag about and talk about. And it's a great example of using and leveraging all these different funding sources. So you name a letter in the alphabet, we're using it, EGI, CIP, HalfPenny, but also there's $600,000 worth of private funds that are going in this project too. So it's, it's a great example of public private partnerships and having the community's voice drive the vision and create a new reality.
Thank you. That's, yeah, I'm looking forward to that also. I'm curious about, y'all do fundraisers. I'm curious to know about the revenue from those fundraisers. I know there was one recently, the Green Print Gala was maybe like last week. Green Print Gala? I don't know. I mean, it was. Oh, it was sort of Central Park. Oh, okay, 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 okay. Totally. But there are, I know there are some.
There is the Parks Foundation.
Everyone's like, ugh.
There's the Parks Foundation. So yes, there is the gala that happened last week, I guess it was, by Central Park and their board to help raise funds about a, a vision, a conceptual plan that you supported through our comp plan about what the future of Central Park could be. The fundraising arm is a separate, for our department, is a separate 501(c)(3), the Durham Parks Foundation. And they are hosting an event and tickets are still available and that's why you're asking. This Friday is Glow in the Park. So there's operators you're standing by for that.
Unfortunately cannot attend that, but it sounds really, really fun. Yeah, so, so it's a c3, but they take in money. And then can you just talk again, I know you've explained it to me once before, but can you talk again about how they interact with our Parks Department, the foundation?
Sure, we, we worked with our attorney's office, first of all, when this was getting set up and to develop a, an agreement, a contract that essentially says, these are the roles and responsibilities of each party. The foundation as a separate 501(c)(3) is responsible for this and they're our film, our, our primary philanthropic partner. And from time to time, they'll do fundraiser events and it spells out the types of roles and responsibilities we can and can't do to support them. And so, but yeah, they, they raise funds for us. Some of those funds go into a general fund. Many of them go into special restricted revenue accounts or line items that may help out just for special events, et cetera.
How much is coming in?
I couldn't tell you. That's, they have the books on that, so we don't manage that budget.
I, and then one more question and then I have one statement to make. Do we? When we contracted out wheels and we had talked about ticket affordability, what was the conversation around that? And have we thought about what it would take to subsidize some of the tickets? To bring that?
I don't know if we've thought, we, I don't, I'm not aware that we've thought about subsidizing that at this point. I honestly don't recall the conversation when we negotiated the terms of the contract for that. I know they, as, they were great to work with and very flexible. And oftentimes lowered rates on certain nights that were typically big revenue generators for them. Like maybe Friday night, for example, is, I, I, don't quote me on this, but I believe like their Friday night rates are less expensive than some of their other Friday night locations. But I don't remember the exact details of conversations negotiating that contract.
Yeah, I think their community nights now are Tuesday nights. And I do think they're very crowded on those nights. Colleagues, this is just something I want to be thinking about, particularly as we're looking at a bond for a water park in the near future. But I've had community members say to me that with kids and like skate rentals, which is almost double the price of an admission ticket to wheels, that it quickly becomes actually unaffordable for people to skate there. So I just want to put it on everyone's radar that it's something we need to think about, particularly with accessibility to our, our new water park. And then the last thing I want to say is just that the parks that y'all have improved, the thoughtfulness behind the accessibility. I recently saw at Merrick Moore that there's planters where folks with wheelchairs can move up under and actually reach the soil and do like planting there, the straight, the shade structures. This thoughts about safety and ingress and egress from the parks and what that means for folks who have children, who are able to come and like safely allow their children to play. The thought behind the, the ground and what it's designed out of. It's just, the improvements are incredible and I just want to commend y'all for all of the thought that goes behind that. And yeah, it's just, it's really, it's really impactful. It's really meaningful. And I, I'm so proud every time to see those improvements being made. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And the accessible planters was an in-house design and and completion by Tom Dawson. So he did a great job with those.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, Councilmember Baker.
Thanks for, for being here, for your presentation and for all the work that you and your entire team does. I've got a couple of questions. One, the landfill parks program. You said that we're going to get a lot of results back in June. And whenever they do come back, will we also get a full cost for remediation? Or are we just going to get the scientific results back?
At that time, it'll probably just be the results and followed shortly after by a menu of options, I presume. The state, Department of Environmental Quality, you know, there, it's a risk based program. And with all the findings they have so far, their recommendation and what they, what they recommend and what they approve is, is a phrase that probably you've all heard is, and will provide funding for, is a certain type of cap and cover. Where they'll have a geotextile fabric almost at a certain depth and then clean fill on top of that. That is what the state will recommend and part of their program will fund, will fund a portion of it. I don't know the exact, exact amount. And that's what they've been doing for all their sites in their program. That includes a lot of parks throughout the state of North Carolina, including Dorothy Dix Park and Raleigh and all those others.
Yeah, puts us on a, somewhere inserted into a list of many different sites for remediation. And are we having conversations with the EPA as well around funding?
Not as much with them. It's been mainly, you know, the state. And early on, we looked at a lot of the guidelines for the EPA because they are the ones that change their threshold, at least with lead exceedances, for example, had been a 400 parts per million for decades. And then when we were in the middle of this, they lowered it to 200 parts per million. A lot of their recommendations do talk about the importance of just clean fill and grass in the areas. But we will continue to work with DEQ, CONSOL, EPA, the CDC, and of course, you know, our, our local partners with Durham County Health as well.
Because I, I really want to ask questions about potential interim solutions, but sounds like we won't really have ideas of what's possible until we get these results back in June.
Yeah, and I don't know if I've mentioned this before, but no one is more eager than than me to take down the ugly orange fencing and the signs, at least by a little bit, you know, to open certain portions. We, we all want that. We, that's why we got into the work we did. But we also have an obligation for public safety and for our, our teammates. And so it's under the best advisement that we get to try to be a little more patient, get the information we need and then let's start making decisions so we can open these areas up for everybody.
Thank you so much for that. Do we have interlocal agreements with Durham Public Schools? For parks and park maintenance and their facilities?
We have, the, the answer is yes, we have interlocal agreements with the schools. But they vary from issue to issue, like Holton, the use of Holton, for example, interlocal agreement there. We have a interlocal agreement when it comes to shared fields that we're in the process of updating and looking at that. But not maintenance or anything like that, yeah.
I think it is, parks are so important and, and park accessibility and talk about walkability and safety a lot and it would be a dream to get to a point where we are a city where everyone can reach a park, can walk to a park or a playground or a greenway within a five minute walk. And I, I just think that's such an important measure and metric for us, for us to achieve. And I saw, you know, in the Parks, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, there's that map that shows, I think, the 10 minute walk, the 15 minute walk and the 20 minute walk. I think we've, we've got two cities in the United States that have reached 100% of residents being able to reach a park within a five minute walk. And I would love for us to move in that direction. And I think part of that is, part of that is ensuring that when we do, because we are growing outward so rapidly, that we aren't, when we are growing outward and there are these master plan communities and subdivisions coming in, that 100% of those residents in new developments are able to reach a park or playground within a five minute walk. And so I know that we're continuing to work on the UDO rewrite. I know those conversations are happening. And I just want to, just want to continuously talk about, about that. Making sure that we put in place regulations in the new UDO where the Parks Department feels happy with the parks that it is going to be getting from new developments, that they are meeting the criteria for, for what you want new parks to look like. So just wanted to put that out there. And last thing, what are you most excited about from, and congratulations on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. What are you most excited about from that plan?
Jeez. Let me turn to that page here. Well, first, your comments about our expansion. We, we are working in lockstep with City County Planning and, and that UDO, so I'm grateful for that. And we are talking about just what you mentioned about if there is a land donation opportunity for us, we want to make sure it's in everyone's best interest that that becomes a public space or park. So we have some criteria that Councilmember Riss is aware of as a liaison to the RAC that we look through and then we want to make sure it's clear that we're not the, you know, decision makers as, as, as this leadership body is. But we will share our criteria and what our considerations are when there is an offer on the table. And then we'll bring that to our commission. And then ultimately that, I believe, is, you know, your decision to make. And you can look at our criteria and, and say, oh, that's great, or that's great, but we're going to accept it. So we are continuing down that path. I guess what I'm excited about for the real plan is having a, a good idea of where all the growth is happening. And it gives us a map and a compass to plan ahead of why we need to increase the HalfPenny. And we have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time, meaning we have to take care of our 100 year old aging infrastructure. And we have to take care of these parks that are, that were built on landfill 70 years ago. We have. We have to do that. But we also have to plan and prepare for the future and expand. And that means more parks, that means more programs. But it means the unattractive things like more operating dollars and people and bathrooms and things like that. So I'm grateful for our commission. I'm grateful for this council being so supportive with that vision and, and understanding the importance that parks have on the community and the culture and the wellness that we provide. I'm, I'm excited about having very specific recommendations in this comp plan that I shared with you that now become part of our everyday operating work. So for example, we have, I shared with you those action steps and, and got your temperature, like these kinds of things. Is this what you'd like to see us try to accomplish the next two years? And, and, and that was the case. So now those action steps become part of our three-year strategic business plan. And then a portion of those get whittled down into our annual work plan. And the annual work plan is broken out within the divisions that we have in our department. And those divisions will take those elements of those action steps and start to assign projects or what we call smart goals for our performance. So now all of a sudden, we have this map and compass and we have something that is looking toward the future, but guides us in the day-to-day. And then all of a sudden, now we have maybe a entry-level position that is developing a new program that focuses on three- to five-year-old gymnastics, let's say. Well, sure, it's cute and fun, but it's more than that. Because now it's, and the intention is, this is a program that we reach three- to five-year-olds and their health and wellness and get them active at a young age. And also the benefit is now they're learning to take direction from another adult other than their parent. So it's this whole wraparound service and development that we're providing for kids. And now all of a sudden, that entry-level rec specialist is doing that work that's connected to their performance plan, that's connected to our annual work plan, that's connected to our strategic business plan, which is connected to a comp plan that guides the future for 10 to 20 years. And if everyone starts to see that, and now what I got to do is my job is make sure people don't get bogged down in the day-to-day minutia and worry about cover sheets on TPS reports, but remind them that they're connected to something bigger than themselves. So that's what excites me and, and I'm very lucky to have such a great team around me that gets out of bed for the same thing. So having that kind of alignment and having that data and having that clear vision is, is, is cool to have a job like that.
Great. Thanks, Director Walcott.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Faber?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you and just thank you to all your staff. We're seeing a big transformation in our parks in the next few years and I'm super excited. And I, I love that we have so many deeply committed DPR staff who are super excited. I agree with Councilmember Baker, parks are free public space and it is a benefit for our community and it definitely improves quality of life. So glad. And also just want to thank our RAC because I know and our Parks Foundation because they do a lot in that ecosystem as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Riss?
I'll add my voice to the kudos. Yeah, thanks so much for the presentation, Mr. Walcott. It's a, it's an honor and privilege to be on the Recreation Advisor Committee. I get to see on a more regular basis, I've got a front row seat to all the, the great work your staff is doing, but all the great stuff that's happening in the parks. And you're right, Councilmember Recovery, like there's been a, just visually, as you mentioned, like transformation in what the parks look like, which is a big part of just signaling to residents when they get there, this is a Durham park, that, that brand is so exciting. So thanks for that. I'm, I'm so excited about the upcoming work with the Aquatic Center. So yeah, keep, keep it rolling. Thank you.
Colleagues, thank you. Director, thank you so much. My, my views on the egalitarian and transformative nature of parks is well-known. So I won't go into them here. I'll just echo everything my colleagues have said. I do also want to thank my colleagues for, I remember we had a rather robust discussion during our budget retreats. I, I want to thank my colleagues for, for maintaining the half penny as opposed to just going revenue neutral. I heard the comment also, because I think I raised a question about, you know, how long has it been happening? When we would go, when will we go to a full penny? So it, it's on the radar, but I'm grateful for the de facto increase by virtue of our, our revaluation and, and for our, this council agreeing to maintain the half penny. Thank you for the incredible work. You and your team, do please convey to your team our thanks and the city's gratitude on behalf of the mayor and all of us. Thanks much, man. Good to see you. Mr. Manager, what's next?
Engagement.
All right. We'll keep it rolling.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council, Bertha Wimbush, Deputy City Manager for Operations. I'm excited to be here for you today to give you a brief overview of our new engagement department. I have with me James Davis, Assistant Director in Neighborhood Improvement Services. James will become the Assistant Director in the new department on July 1. So I'm thankful for the work he's done in advance of the new department. I am here before you today because we will be recruiting for a new director. And so I'm going to share this information with you, which is not a lot of detail at this point. There's lots of work to do. So what I want to share with you today is the work of this new department will continue to be aligned with the strategic plan that this council adopted in 2023. Particularly two goals, one, connected, engaged, and inclusive communities. In that goal, there are two very specific objectives tied to these departments. One is elevate community voices and local government and government decision-making. Two, expand resident access to digital resources and community places. In those objectives, there are several initiatives that align with the departments, one around youth, around youth leadership, around digital support, also related to digital inclusion roadmap. And so many of our departments or teams that are, will be in this new engagement department are already doing that work. The other goal is innovative and high-performing organization. One specific objective that has come into discussion today is embed equitable considerations in programs, policies, and culture. The work that ENI, Equity Inclusion Department is doing now, one of the initiatives is to look at our existing policies along with our city attorney's office with an equity lens, as well as with our HR department and to make recommendations on how we can change those, those policies to make them more equitable. So that work is already being done by ENI. So what we've been saying is that the city will merge the engagement equity functions currently embedded in Neighborhood Improvement Services, Equity Inclusion, Budget and Management Services, Communications, Technology Solutions, Planning, and the City Manager's Office into this new engagement department. So what you see here is all of the teams that are being merged into or realigned under this new engagement department. What you don't see here is an org chart for several reasons. One is we want to align the resources around the work once we have a work plan versus the other way around. Two, we will be recruiting for a new director and we want that director to make those decisions around how the department is organized. Now, of course, every employee as of July 1 will have a supervisor in our system, but that may not be their supervisor when the department is actually, the structure is actually created with the new director. I want to point out a couple of things here is we were able to do two things by finding efficiencies and realigning these teams. One is, you may recall, last year Audit Services conducted an audit and the audit was around ADA governance. And there were two findings in that audit. One is that we did not have a specific ADA coordinator, someone who was actually committed to ADA and that was the charge of their position. Our ENI director was doing some of that work along with her administrative staff. So we were able to use a position out of the other, out of one of the other teams to create a full-time ADA coordinator. The area of finding was that there was ADA work going on in departments, but there was no coordination. So there was no coordination around the work. There was no way to find out if there was an issue with a particular department, who would you go to to make sure that that work is being completed? So that ADA coordinator will be doing that work as well. The other area is language access. We had one halftime position in communications responsible for language access for the entire organization. That includes supporting the work as well as the incentive program where employees can receive incentive pay for providing those services to programs and services. And that was a program we wanted to expand, but having one, a halftime position doing all that work was not sufficient. Obviously, we want to make sure there's language access embedded in all of our engagement and equity work. So now we will have a full-time position in this department to do that work. Again, I point out here that the director position is vacant. The other thing I want to point out is that many of these teams are really small. The statutory budgeting team, for example, we have two employees and a part-time or a fellow or intern as needed. And the digital equity inclusion program, there are two positions. Language access, we were, as we recall, there was, I mentioned, there was one half. Community engagement has the most positions, the Office on Youth, you know, three positions with, you know, part-time employees. And so it's really difficult to leverage resources with such small teams when we want to create big, we want to be bold, we want to be able to implement huge engagement processes internally. And so there's an opportunity to leverage all these resources in one department. And again, lots of expertise in, within these departments. We will, as we move forward, the new director, of course, will work with the department to create the structures as needed so that you will eventually see a real org chart. So just as a reminder, the justification, we want to centralize community engagement to give us the opportunity to streamline processes, to improve coordination and communication, promote efficient use of resources, as I said earlier, inclusive and data-driven decision-making, and also leverage a strong foundation, foundation built by these teams. Interesting enough, when we were working on the regorg, the feedback, some of the feedback that the city manager received was around engagement and centralizing engagement and duplication of engagement. Also, when we had our first meeting with all of the teams together a few weeks ago, the employees actually on those teams said, we need to be better, we need to be centralized, we need to have better coordination. We go out in the community, community members say, oh, last week someone sent us a survey. Or last week, there was another group asking us for feedback. And they also don't have the staff to do the bigger project, products they want to be able to do with their teams. We also know this is important because of community trust and better outcomes for our residents. Like if we, the trust in the community is, you came out last week, I gave you feedback, but I didn't see anything happen. Well, it's because this is a different team asking a different questions about a different project. We also want to be able to capture all the data regardless of what the data is about. So if you come out and ask me about transportation, but I'm going to tell you something about, you know, you know, bus services specifically, or I want to tell you about housing, we want to be able to capture all of that data so we can use it when we need that data depending on what project we're working on. So equity inclusion is another part, will be another component of this department. We know that that is important to all decision-making and also community engagement. And so one of the things that we will have available, obviously, is the ADA coordinator as well as a language access person to be able to work with these teams as they design their work and move forward with their work. I got stuck here. Thank you. So I want to emphasize, all of these teams are doing great work. If you look at, you probably recognize all of the branding here around our PB team, the community conversations work. Engage Durham is something that's been mentioned today in terms of NIS engaging in communities around projects, specific projects. Equity community engagement, you know about the blueprint. Our digital inclusion team, as new as they are, have already received an award. Our language access work, our equity inclusion work. There's lots of great work going on with these teams. And so I don't want to understate the work that they're already doing, which is going to make it better for us. They're such a strong foundation. One of the concerns that came up is that we have so much work going on that when we have projects we want to focus on, for example, one of the, one of the things that came up in our first welcome meeting, the digital inclusion team, Patrice Carroll, the manager, said, we have ARPA money and we, one of our, one of our projects is to give out 600 MAFIs in the community and provide service through 2026 with ARPA funding. But we need engagement. We need folks to help us get the word out because this funding will not be available after 2026. Well, imagine, all of these teams already have their own work plans. And so this also happens with Mary Grace with EGI, where we're looking for folks to help us engage, but everyone has their individual work plans. And so when we have one department, we can prioritize the work and decide on which projects we're going to work on over the next year, what resources are going to be needed to work on those projects. So it's a great opportunity to take the great work that's going on in the departments and leverage that to do bigger projects and also be better with the projects that we actually are able to complete. So some of our other initiatives we talked about is we want this department to be a clearinghouse for community engagement. And we've heard that from you all as well. When there is, there are projects and the director or, you know, the initiative owner wants community engagement as part of that project, which we want in most of our projects, then we want this department to talk to that group about what it is you need. Do we already have existing data so that we can move the project on? Do we need to start fresh with a new community engagement strategy? Can we do it in-house? Do we need a consultant? Do we need a $250,000 consultant or do, do we need a $50,000 contract? So we want to make sure that we are strategizing around the work, that we are implementing a centralized department that can do this work with our departments and well as the community. We don't want to, we don't want to eliminate the opportunities for community ambassadors and others to participate in community engagement, but we can do that directly as we do with PB and other projects that we work on, EGI as well. We want to, we will have a process improvement initiative ongoing at the same time that's going to be led by our I-team. They're actually going to look at our engagement strategies and how we engage the community now. Focus groups with the departments and the persons who actually do that work with our community members. And we're going to look at our blueprint and all of the other engagement strategies. We want to have some standardization around that. We want to make sure that we're collecting the data that we need. We want to make sure we're disaggregating the data in a way that we need to be able to provide that to you and others to make decisions. We are so, so excited about the I-team taking on this work. And again, this was some of the feedback we received from our employees across the organization as well as in these departments. Some of them said, I don't really know if this is really meaningful work. Like, how do I know if this is meaningful engagement? We're doing engagement, we're collecting data, but I don't really know if it's making a difference in decision-making. We also want to work with the community to guide the design and refinement of a new model for assessing meaningful and community engagement. We have a blueprint, we have other tools and other departments, but we want to work with the community to come up with a new model or refined model. So our next steps, we will be working with OPI to develop the mission and purpose for the department. We will be working on a new business plan and the alignment of the teams. We will relocate the team to Golden Belt. We already have most of the NIS employees and, and all of the NIS employees in Golden Belt. There's opportunity and space for others. And so we feel like since we already have a lease, that's a great place for us to be in the community. And, and, and the community, they've spent a lot of time creating those relationships with, with that community. We think that's a good location. We will be recruiting a director. That director will come as soon as we have, have enough information. What I've shared with the team is, we want to do this collaboratively. Like, I want the team to help. We're going to look at the name of the department. We're going to work with OPI. Every single employee in all of these departments will be working together with the team to come up with a purpose statement, with a work plan, with a strategy. Again, as, making sure it's aligned with our overall strategy. And we will also be working on, our initial engagement project will be community conversations. As you all recall, some of you have been around when it started. Our first community, community conversations, budget, doing the budget process, we did that internally with internal staff, with a partnership with Durham County. The last one last year, we have, we have a contract with a consultant and it's $135,000. And so the department has actually challenged us to work with all of the teams that are working on engagement, that to help design a community conversations process that we can manage internally. And so we are excited about that. And one of the reasons I'm excited about it is because it is not work that's already assigned to one of these teams. So there's not bias around, we're already doing this, why are you taking away from us? Or why are you, are you saying we're not doing a great job? So I thank Christina and her team for offering this up as our first project. This also gives us the opportunity to build the team, to build relationship, to see where the strengths are, to see where the expertise is in individual teams. The team is excited about designing this and working on this. And so as the manager mentioned, this is not necessarily about cost savings, but here's an opportunity, a specific opportunity to look at cost savings as well as some of the other projects we're going to be working on. One I mentioned, the digital inclusion, we're getting those MAFIs out in the community. That's another, some of the small projects that the smaller teams and their that's another, some of the small projects that the small teams, and their excitement when we had our meeting, they were like, I'm working on this, I could really use some help with engagement on this project. And so again, but we have to prioritize the work because we can't have six, seven different work plans that everyone's working on with limited resources and consulting it out because they don't have the resources to do this work. And so we're really excited about this department. I'm excited about bringing on a new director. And I've been in engagement business for a long time, and so this is just another great opportunity to do something that's really going to, you know, put us in the forefront of engagement in the community. So that is the end of my presentation. I hope I was brief enough.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Cook.
Great, wow. Thank you, Deputy City Manager. I can hear your excitement and I share it. I think many of us up here have kind of heard this over and over again where there's community engagement and it just feels very discombobulated and we hear it from the community too. And even myself, I feel like I get asked, I'm bombarded with like surveys and I'm like, what is this even going to? And I work here, you know, like, and I still don't even, can't even follow everything. So I'm really excited about this. I'm curious actually about, I think these next steps sound amazing and I'm, I'm really, I am really on board with how much community and also staff input y'all are going to be using. I'm excited to see what name folks come up with, like all of these things are very, very exciting. I'm wondering about, we're in budget season, these, these teams came with money, I assume, into this new department.
Yes, yes.
Were there changes? Were, had people applied for funding for new projects that comes with them? Like, what does that look like when we're restructuring at the same time as starting our new budget year?
So we, I can think of one request that came to us for like new positions. And obviously, when we combined the departments, we had administrative positions that were redundant, we had some other positions, we were able to create the ADA coordinator, the language access person. And so I can't think of any requests that came forward that we would not be able to accomplish with the budget. For example, the digital inclusion team, they have 1.4 million in ARPA funding, half from the county, half from the city to support their projects. The NIS department had funding for mini-grants, the Office on Youth had funding for mini-grants. So there's lots of funding when we bring it all together and I can't think of anything we would not be able to accomplish with existing funding.
So existing funding followed the, the team that have now, so we just, and in that, we actually, it sounds like we actually have space to do other things because the efficiency has allowed some of that overlapping funds to be used just once.
Yes, yes, we were not, we did not ask for any new funding to do any of this work. And we're still looking at, again, we have the director position vacant, we have some other positions we're looking at, we have some, what you don't see as part-time positions that are funded, interns. So there are lots of resources in the combined teams.
Cool.
I'll just add, DCM Wimbush featured this in her presentation, but this is another good place to point it out, that the reorganization actually allowed us to fund a position and a half that we had a need for, that otherwise would have been new FTEs. It's that ADA position and taking the language access coordinator from half-time to full-time. So that's another place where I think the workload and the work productivity will grow without the organization having to grow commensurate with it.
Yes. Thank you, those were my questions. I'm excited to see what, what happens.
Yeah, this, thank you so much for the, the presentation. Thank you for being here. This, this needed to happen. I think everybody, everybody knows this needed to happen and, and it's very exciting that it is, that it is happening, bringing together these teams, building office of, the Department of Community Engagement, whatever we end up calling it. I think there has been some frustration and, and the funny thing about that is there is so much, as you pointed out in your presentation, there is so much engagement. And in some, and sometimes over-engagement, and I don't even want to call it engagement, it's like over-communication or over-asking people what they want and then not replying back with, here's what we can do, here's what we can't do, and that, that back and forth that consists of true community engagement. And so consolidating this, bringing everyone together, having a clear vision and direction, having that director, I think that's all going to be extremely helpful. I'm very excited. My only question is, how do we make sure that, that it doesn't happen, sort of, we don't allow it to over years happen in a vacuum? How do we make sure that there's also continual communication between the different departments that, that this is coming from? How do we make sure that we maintain those, those connections across, across the city?
That is, that is a part of the work to be done. I, I do believe that there is some of that that happens, but it's on such a small scale because there's such small units. And so there is some communication going on, but that will be part of it. You're going to restr, we're going to refresh the citywide strategic plan, you know, we're going to have initiatives in that plan. We already have initiatives around collaboration, which is not one of the ones I pointed out here. But I tell you, these teams are so excited about engaging in the community and doing the work that they do with the resources that they have. And also our internal departments, many of those internal departments were the ones that gave us the feedback on the manager's reorg, like we need to centralize this. We want to be able to utilize engagement, but there is no centralized way to access that, right? And I mentioned the part about departments, we want this to be a mandatory clearinghouse when departments want, need to do engagement on a project or, or a program. And so that's going to keep that connection tight because they're going to have to come through this department to pitch, you know, or, or share their proposal and what they think they need. And we want to make sure that it is right-sized for the project.
And I think that last part really speaks to your question, which is by, by going to a centralized client model like we have in communications, like we have in some of our other departments where we, we have a function that is centralized, but the work is done through departments. I actually think this is an investment in that type of communication that will allow it to not sort of get off to the side. It really is going to be, you know, central to how departments do that work. So by very nature, that dialogue is going to have to continue. And then that elevates it to us. When that dialogue is happening, different DCMs are involved, the city manager hears about it. So I, I really do think this will elevate engagement's visibility in, in the organization and also while at the same time streamlining it and make sure, to your point, that we're not, that we're getting it right, that it's effective engagement, not just engagement for engagement's sake.
That's perfect. And what's the timeline for recruitment of the position?
We, the goal is to recruit for the position as soon as possible, but it's most likely going to be August. In July, we do have some scheduled meetings with the team. One of the commitments I made to the team is that we do some work before we decide on kind of the job description for the director based on, you know, the purpose. And so the purpose statement and the, and the mission of the department, and so that's the work we're doing with OPI. Our initial goal was to try to do that in July. Obviously, July is right around the corner. And so I'm, I'm thinking August, late July, August, that is our goal. We don't want to, we don't want to recruit before we have a, a good, solid job description and, you know, the purpose of the department and what the charge is going to be based on some of these discussions I mentioned. But we also don't want to wait too late because we want the director to come in and, and organize and structure the department. Again, James is the AD and I'll be serving with him until we bring the director on and it can not happen soon enough for me. But, so we will try to move it along as, as soon as possible.
That's great. Thank you so much for all your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm just so excited that we're doing this and I know that there's a lot of great people in that new department and I'm glad we're bringing community conversations back in
Thank you so much, Madam Deputy, and thank you. I think this is a, you know, a further vindication of the Ferguson papacy here in the, in the city. There were a lot of things that sort of suggests this trajectory and some of my colleagues alluded to it, but to finally see it crystallize and actually see the org chart starting to change in substantive, recognizable ways, I think speaks well. We, you know, we didn't, we didn't hire this team to do inertia, to keep on. Each manager has brought their own set of brilliance and values and changes and, and this is a really, I think, significant change for our org chart and one that was needed, one that was hinted at, but it's this team that's bringing it to fruition. So I'm very excited about the prospects of, of what's before us. We know there's going to be bumps, there's going to be, you know, starts and fits and starts, but, but I think this bodes well for us and for the city. And I hope the mayor will sleep a little better since some of the engagement concerns that he's been very vocal about over the last 100 years or so are being addressed in a very concrete way. So congratulations, thank you so much Deputy, and good luck with the hire. I know it'll be a brilliant hire. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Collins.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right, you know, this is, music's in my ears. I'm glad to, let me pause and just say, Mr. Manager, I am loving the way you're moving, you and the team. I was going to tell you after the meeting, but I, I just want to praise you publicly, just the reorg, the realignment. I know it's a, a lot of movement for a lot of people, but I, I just love the way you are responding to, you know, the notice that we're making. And yeah, just, you know, also responding to the community and their desires as well. This is, I, I love this because it shows that government can be agile. And I do, I do think that, you know, cost savings, I know you say it's not about just that, but that is a significant part because we tend to just pretend we have blank checks. And so I, I appreciate actually bringing this back in house. I have the utmost confidence in our staff to do quality work. In fact, they are excited about doing this. It's, that is just so great. And so I, I, I'm, I'm glad that we are finally getting this, getting this under wraps and being able to respond to, to what we've said as well as what the community said. I went to a small business yesterday on a tour and they had a big open floor plan, but they had five disciplines. It was little architecture and they had interior design, they had, you know, engineering, they had modeling, it was like five different areas. And they all work in, the thing I was asked was like, how do you all like, what's the tenacity with all of this? And I feel we are doing the same thing here, you know, with our, with our engagement department now. There are multiple facets around the city and they will all work, you know, in a tenacious way with this department. And we'll be meeting the needs of our residents, engaging with them, but not letting that process paralyze us from producing an outcome. So I'm going to stop talking because this sounds weird, I'm listening to myself. Thank you.
I just, Mayor and Council, I want to only accept those compliments on behalf of, of the staff and in particular, DCM Wimbush for this department and throughout the reorganization has brought a great deal of the, the structure and discipline that's needed. Having the idea to reorganize and actually being able to successfully reorganize are two different things. DCM Wimbush has provided a, a great deal of the leadership that's getting us in that direction. I also, a number of the folks you see in the audience have just been really critical to that success. So I, I want to thank everyone. Mary Gray Stone King has been a project manager for us. The budget staff have really had double duty, creating a budget and also rearranging the budget in response to reorganization. The communications staff, the finance staff have all been fantastic. It has been a lot of work and so your, your compliments are appreciated, but not, not just for me. I send them to those folks who have made this successful. Thank you.
To the staff, when I say Mr. Manager and Team, I'm talking about everybody. All right. Well, that brings us to the end of our, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to echo those comments. I think you're absolutely right. I think, Mr. Manager, your first budget is, is exciting, aggressive and, and yeah, exciting. And I think it's going to bring a lot of good to the city of Durham, shows that how local government can be a force for good in people's lives, which is so critical. I do think, as I've mentioned earlier, and we've already gotten emails about like taxes potentially going up with the proposed budget, you know. So I think, so, so there's certainly some, some folks who are feeling that pinch and as we talked about at the last meeting, that's why we created the low-income homeowner relief program. So folks are having challenges with taxes that's there, the city and the county both contribute to that. But I think, you know, I think largely we're asking, we're asking residents to dig deep on this budget, which I think makes sense, you know? So I think it brings a certain amount of pressure to the manager and the staff to deliver on, on what we're promising. But I think of the words attributed to Billie Jean King, I think it's plastered all over the US Open in New York City, pressure is a privilege, right? This, it's a privilege. So I think, I, I feel the pressure and, but I also feel the privilege of being here, working with a great staff, and I know we can deliver on all this. So I'm excited to continue the process and look forward to working with my colleagues on the, on the budget and the manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook, close your remarks.
Yes. Yeah, I want to thank all the departments that presented today. I, I hear the, I hear that we're doing so many good things. And also, I am aware that federal funding is decreasing. We're looking at possibly people losing housing en masse. We're looking at a huge decrease in jobs, particularly impacting Durham and the Triangle area. And it's the most vulnerable among us who are going to feel those cuts, but also what we're seeing in a trend in Durham and across the country is just a wider differentiation between the top and the bottom, right? We're just watching the divide grow, we're watching the wealthy get wealthier, we're watching the poor get poorer, and, and we're losing rapidly anyone in the middle because there's just nothing there for folks. I, I am feeling, I am feeling a little strained about the increase that we've proposed, given the like just absolute chaos that is the, the economy right now. I, I am curious and I think maybe Councilmember Freeman had brought this up previously and, and I'm interested in looking into this. I know we haven't always used our low-income homeowner relief program. I don't think actually we've ever used it to full budget. I, ensuring first of all that folks know that it exists and I know we're doing our best to talk about it, but really thinking about how we get that information out for folks. And then also considering whether the standards for applying for that program might need to be looked at again. Potentially folks who maybe we wouldn't have necessarily thought needed to access that might need to access it now, given all these changes that we're seeing. So just something that I'm thinking about and a little bit of difficulty that I'm, that I'm holding truly, given, given what we're seeing. And, and I know that that's a reality. Yeah, it's, it's just a difficult position to be in, watching folks lose their jobs and worrying about how they will continue to live here and talking about which communities nearby Durham are cheaper, where they can maybe move out of the city. I also am concerned that we are, we talk about revenue streams coming from property tax, and I know that that is true, but I'm concerned that we're not doing a real deep look at the long-term costs of building so far outside of our city center, what that looks like in terms of providing utilities and services to folks and the impact that bringing in a lot more population has. We talk a lot about, again, the, the revenue stream, but it's not all revenue stream and there are a lot of costs associated with that. So a few things that I'm holding that I feel a lot of contention about. And I want to also echo Councilmember Risk's comments from the beginning, which is that I don't see anything about housing on here. And consistently, that is the number one thing that we hear from constituents every year in our surveys, the number one issue is about housing and affordable living. So that to me, I think is a missed opportunity. I am concerned that we are not doing enough in the immediate to solve that crisis, which is just growing and growing and growing. And I am, I just want to be really clear that I am not talking about the few people who are panhandling downtown, even though I do think folks need services as well. But what I'm talking about is all of the folks that we have in the community who are double, tripling up in single double-room apartments, folks who are sleeping in their cars, folks who move from couch to couch, their family members who are endangering their family member subsidies. We've got folks that are living in all sorts of just absolutely not appropriate circumstances. And, and so it, it feels hard to celebrate all the new expenditures and also like know that people's basic needs aren't being met. So I'm looking forward to hopefully having that conversation. For me right now, the priority is really picking up the slack because local government, I think, is, is more important than it has ever been as we watch a rapid decline of supportive services coming from other revenue streams. So those are my thoughts. I really want to thank everyone who came today to present and looking forward to another, another day tomorrow, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker.
Yeah, I appreciate, appreciate those comments. And of course, always we're operating at the local level in the United States and in North Carolina, two levels of government that operate entirely on behalf of, you know, billionaires. And we are, you know, in that context, a steady hand that is fact, working on facts and information and, and much more deeply communicating and engaging with, with residents and will be doing even better with the new community engagement department. To the question of the low-income homeowners relief program, that is Um, to, um, the question of the low income homeowners relief program, that is operated on by the county, correct? So if there was a desire to potentially, uh, expand the scope or expand who is eligible for that program, would that, and maybe this is, I don't know, um, Councilmember Riss, you know the answer, but.
Joint city and county, yeah. So it's both of us, yeah.
Okay. So it's joint, so we would need to work in agreement with, with the county on what that would look like? Okay. Well, I think that's something to keep in mind. I mean, that's our relief valve. I mean, and, and especially this year with the reevaluation, you know, I mean, um, yes, this budget proposes a, a, a tax, a tax increase. That combined with the revaluations means that there are going to be some people that get hit very, very hard. And so, um, making sure that we're working closely with our, our county colleagues so that there are some folks who might fall outside of the existing eligibility, making sure that they are eligible so that they don't get pushed out of their homes. I think that's going to be important as we move forward over the next few months. Thank you. And also, thank you so much to, um, staff. I know we have, we have tomorrow as well, but thanks to all the directors that presented today and all the staff that have been here, um, and for all the work that everyone has, has put into, um, the meeting today. And I look forward to seeing, uh, folks tomorrow as well.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just want to say thank you to all the staff and all the presentations. I look forward to the presentations, um, that we get tomorrow and then just continuing these conversations on the budget. We, we have some hard decisions to make. I will, I will just acknowledge that at least my understanding with the, a neutral rate would have been cuts on our side. So as we are seeing, um, um, cuts everywhere else, I, I, I do want to acknowledge that an expansive budget means we are also thinking about our workers and their benefits and the impact that we make as, as decision makers and how that ripples out across the, uh, city. So, um, th, this will be a hard budget. Every budget's hard. I don't think, I think, I have one easy budget. And that was my very first one. And I think it's just because I didn't, you know, it was 2018 and I, right. And so, uh, look forward to, uh, continued conversations. And, um, with the county, city government, I do want to remind folks that the county manager has already presented her budget publicly and they will adopt their budget one Monday sooner than we do because that's usually what they do. So I just want to share that timeline with colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Riss. Did you have any other further comments? Okay. May I approach him?
Thanks, um, Mr. Mayor, and I, I thank my colleagues. So I, I want, um, I want fare free buses. I want to increase our contribution to eviction diversion. I want to stay competitive by paying our workers what's in, uh, what the market says they should be paid. I want to pay all of my part-time workers Durham's minimum living wage and I don't want to raise taxes. That welcome to leadership. Yeah, I, I, I experienced some anxiety about that stuff as well. And I, you know, I'm waiting for that messianic municipal leader to come to tell us how to do all that, um, when we don't sell anything. We either expand our tax base or, or we raise taxes. So I, you know, the, 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 it's never easy thing and it's never an enjoyable thing to raise taxes and, but I think there are some things that are, that are celebratory and, and heck, about an hour ago, we want to put signs on our E G I products, uh, projects. That's celebratory. And I want to echo the words that Mayor Shul, uh, once said that, you know, when we, when folk kind of pushed about what we were doing for the least of these and what are we doing to kind of ease the burden that our, our residents, our constituents are facing? We're doing a lot. If you compare Durham to other cities in this state and indeed this country, there's a lot of things that we spend money on. The other cities look at us and say, how, how can you do that? It's not perfect. We've got a lot of work, um, to do. But, um, when, when I watched this staff consciously and, and doggedly and determinately come back with ways to, uh, improve the lives of our residents, ways to creatively move money around, uh, to make things happen, uh, I'm going to take time to, to, to celebrate that while knowing we still have to keep our head down and keep, uh, pushing. I remember, I, I smiled when we talked about the low turn, the, the, um, uh, tax, uh, program because I remember when we first rolled it out and we got our first numbers, there were a lot of people surprised at, at the number of people who didn't take advantage of it. And the exact conversation, I remember having the conversation was, do we need to send ambassadors out to let people know? And can we make the paperwork less onerous? That was the conversation we had years ago. And, and apparently we had tried to do some of those tweaks. We ought not be surprised sometimes that when we, we do things to try and help folk, that we don't get the response that we're expecting. And we keep pushing. We keep trying to tweak. We keep doing it, which is why I'm excited about this engagement department. Perhaps this engagement department, this new, this new org chart, um, tweak will help us get to more folk and, and, and inform them on the, the opportunities that are out there for help. So, so, and I celebrate that and I think that's celebratory. But yeah, I, I, I don't like to raise taxes, but the bottom line is until we figure out another way as a government, whether it's cupcake sales or lemonade, uh, or whatever, how we're going to raise money and how we're going to, we can either increase our tax base or we can increase taxes, something has to give when we do something in one area. Uh, and finally, you know, I'll say in terms of expansion beyond our, our city center, you know, if we establish an urban growth boundary and we still turn things down within the urban growth boundary, um, the conversation becomes a bit diluted as to what the city center, if we agree that we've drawn a line and we still are finding reasons not to do anything within that line, then what's the point of the line? Uh, uh, and, and what does the conversation about, um, our expansion, um, really look like? That was an attempt to concretize the conversation, to establish some type of guidelines, to make it less abstract, to make it more manageable, to actually do something measurable. We tried that. You know, and each successive generation of leaders will have to make up their own minds as to what lines they want to respect and what lines they don't, which lines are philosophical and which ones are non-negotiable. So that's got to be part of our mix as well. But as we stand today and as we close today, I want to again congratulate this, this staff and this manager on an incredible job. The manager does a great job in punting to his staff and, and, uh, pointing that as the team. So I want to honor this whole team for the work that they've done. I look forward to our conversations tomorrow. I think this, this budget's going to pass, I think, the $700 million threshold. Uh, this is going to be a historic budget. It's not a perfect budget, but I think it's going to be darn good. And the great thing is we get to start on the new one as soon as we pass this one and keep working. But thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, guys. Um, well, we're coming to the close of day one and I am also appreciative to all of the staff, uh, to the entire team that takes seven people, talking heads, policymakers, and find a way to have a singular way forward. Uh, it is a, a very difficult job. But that's why we get to rest and bask in the confidence of having an amazing team here at the city of Durham. I, I, I live in this constant, uh, contention of wants versus needs, you know? I am as progressive as you can find a progressive, but sometimes I feel like I'm just like, wait a minute, like, am I the conservative on council? Cause I just, I get, I get nervous and it's not really my own personal values. It's more so, or personal experiences rather, it's more so, I'm just thinking about the person that I literally talk to on the street, you know, and what their concern is. And oftentimes their concern didn't come from an organized group. You know, their concern just came from a, a lived experience. You know, right now, you know, there are very few things that most people in the city are worried about right now. Gun violence, housing and taxes. That's, that's what they're really worried about. Now we get into the nuance and, you know, this, we are the elected council at this time, so we are a reflection of the city's preference overall. So I also hold that accountability on the resident. This, we are who you put here, uh, and, and, and this is what you got for right now. But I also think about, you know, the model of this state. It's a quantum video, to be rather than to seem. And oftentimes I feel like we are selective on what we want to be philosophical about versus what we want to be practical about. And that is the contention that rests constantly inside of me. We seem to be philosophical about the things we can do to respond to gun violence, but not necessarily practical on doing something about it, which is one of the things I feel that this, that is missing in this budget. When it comes to housing, we tend to be very philosophical about the way people should live, but not necessarily as practical about what we need to do. Like it is about supply. That is a large part, not only that, but it is about that. And again, you know, uh, of a for-profit business, you have a, a commodity or something you can, you can sell. But a city government is like a jigsaw puzzle. You have a limited amount of capacity and you have to move things around within that capacity. But at the end of the day, it will be that balanced capacity. And, um, it's, it's all about prioritizing, you know? And, you know, people want to be able to feel safe and they want to be able to live somewhere. And I don't think we, you know, uh, I, I'm looking forward to the strategies. I hope that there'll be some, some way, some, somewhere in this budget that I'm not necessarily seeing boldly, but a housing strategy, a public safety strategy, an economic development strategy, a housing strategy, homeless strategy. You know, um, I look at our opportunity to do something and then I see the amount of encampments all over the city. I, I see a park at Long Meadow that is, the population of encampments and homeless people that are just increasing and it's in an actual park where kids are supposed to play, but they can't because there are so many needles in the ground. And I don't see the cleanup, you know, I don't see the things that are, that are, you know, that we should be, those are the immediate things. That's what a resident drives by and say, what is the city doing? You know, uh, so, so I, I think that we need to find some way to come back to reality between this philosophical approach to governance and this practical approach to governance. And, um, I, I have a lot of faith in, in you, Mr. Manager, and the team here and on staff, on how we're going to actually, you know, respond to those things. But I think that we also have to, have to constantly have a reality check, uh, on the fact that, you know, when we talk about gun violence, we, we respond with after-school program investment when people are dying on the streets. That what a statement that's still stuck in my head is, you know, there are two things that kill people in this city, cars and guns. One, we're responding, we're responding to cars by a vision zero coordinator, a vision zero plan, $200 million bond investments into conversion of streets. When it comes to gun violence, it's not even an investment, it's a takeaway. Gun, uh, Bull City United is gone, uh, Shot Spotter is gone. We have an operating budget of My Brother's Keeper at $11,000 a year. We have a community, Office of Community Intervention, operating budget of $132,000 a year and a hundred of that comes from the state. So I, I, I love the nice things that we have in the budget, but I also need to accompany those things with the, the needed things that we don't have. And so I'm just putting out on the record, uh, I'm glad that we are moving, we're in a, in a very progressive way on a lot of necessary things in this budget. But I do think we've missed the mark on some very big, bold, real life, everyday experience, lived experiences that folks are, are screaming out about. Uh, and we do a good job at, you know, floating around those philosophically. And, and we're quiet on it practically. And, and that is not my opinion. That is a very objective, um, viewpoint of, of our approach here. So with that being said, I am appreciative of what we have been able to accomplish, Mr. Manager. What gives me, those are the contentious things that I have resting inside of me. The fear is yes, the federal government is so unstable right now. We have no idea what's going to happen. I don't feel that we've diversified our revenue sources enough. Again, that's one of those things like, you know, we, we have this constant debate about zoning and housing. And yet that's the only way we can, that's one of the very few ways and the biggest way we can expand our tax base without raising the taxes and making it more expensive. Saying we want more affordable housing, but making it more costly for people to live here. And then we do a good job of talking about it, but what are we going to do about it? I, yeah, it all comes down to needs versus wants. The county just raised taxes again for the third year in a row after a $550 million bond, uh, necessary, but you know, we also raised taxes and now here we are again. But this is, this is where we are right now. I am appreciative, but I think it's important that we name, um, we, there are some major things and maybe it's not necessarily in a budget line item, but I do think we need to find a way to tell people how they're going to feel safer, where they're going to be able to live and, and be able to move forward, you know, uh, as a city. But I think we've made some very major moves, especially in the realignment, uh, and I'm appreciative of that. With that being said, it is 2:49. Uh, Mr. Manager, do you have any closing remarks?
I'd just, uh, thank the council for an important day of work. Uh, no one will ever accuse of this council of not putting in the hard work. These conversations are, are what you are hired to do and they're very helpful for us. Hearing what you liked, uh, what you were disappointed by, uh, hearing the information that you were looking for and also the information you didn't get that you're looking for all helps to inform us about, uh, how to build these sessions more productively. And so, uh, I just want to assure you, we've been listening today. Um, you know, I will too also say that, you know, we've tried to be very transparent with you, council and the public about where the new investments are in this budget. That's very intentionally to serve this conversation about, uh, the rate increase. There is a slide in your slide deck that breaks that rate increase down very specifically by uses, uh, so that you can have an informed conversation if, if, if you are uncomfortable with that rate increase about, about what it went into the budget to support. Obviously, um, you also have the option to suggest cuts to other areas in the budget and we stand ready. I know that's not a comfortable conversation for you or us, but it is an important part of budgeting, one that we're prepared to do if needed. So with that, I will close us today and say that we look forward to seeing you tomorrow morning at nine o'clock and completing this conversation. Thank you very much for a hard day's work.
Thank you. We'll join at, join at 2:50. So we'll see you in the morning.